Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Sacramento City Council. Please call the role of Madam Clerk to establish a quorum.
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shinier, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. If we could all please rise, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Warren to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay? Okay? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, Councilmember Ashby is also in attendance.
We have a full City Council. Let me begin by announcing that, without objection, without objection, members, File Item 23, which is the purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 936 Arden Way, is being continued. It's being continued. So if you're here for that matter, it is being continued. Yeah, I hear no objection. None? None? And we do not have a date certain, but we will return to this item. But for now, it's being continued. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. All right. Let us go through the agenda orderly here and begin with public comments for matters not on the agenda. And we have how many speakers, Ms. Cappy?
I have 13 speakers for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, very good. I would remind anybody who wants to come up and speak about the homeless issue that we have numerous items tonight on the agenda that address that matter. Of course, you're welcome to testify, either or both, but we've got a busy agenda tonight. And if you want to save your testimony for the items on the agenda, I'm sure the Council would appreciate that. But either way is fine. I know we have our hard-working city employees, too, from Local 39, and we welcome you, and we look forward to -- we see your signs, and we look forward to hearing from your representative or representatives tonight. And I speak on behalf of the entire City Council. We care about you, okay? And we see your signs. Go ahead.
Our first speaker is Sharita Adams.
Yes, Councilmember, hold on. Vice Mayor Jennings?
I'm sorry. Before we start with the comments, I just want to report that we did not have closed session, so therefore, we have nothing to report out.
Very good. Thank you for that reminder. Very good. Okay, let's go through the 13 people who are signed up to testify on items not on the agenda.
The first speaker is Sharita Adams, and then Wanda.
Ms. Adams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. My name is Sharita Adams, and I'm a business rep at Local 39. I'm here to tell you that the union is very frustrated with this process of negotiations. It's been a very slow, excruciating process. The contract expired in June. We've been negotiating since, I believe, April. We've met 14 times in six months with very little progress. In fact, it took the city over three months to respond to a proposal on COLA. So the delay is a big problem for us. We did meet today, and we did have some progress. So we're happy to see that progress, but we hope to make a continued progress and faster progress so that we can wrap up this agreement. You've got people here in the audience from Local 39. These are our members. These are your employees. These are the faces of the people who are impacted by the delay.
Good.
They have -- here they are. They have lost several months of benefits due to the delay and the slow movement of the city. Our members are here in silent protest to demonstrate how important it is to make some progress and get a contract. So our hope is that we will move forward at a much quicker pace in order to reach an agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you. And doing the right thing, petitioning your government. I'm glad to hear there was progress today, and let's continue that progress and get a good, fair contract done, okay? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay. Want to stay for the homeless items and the cannabis items? I think we're going to recess for three minutes here, okay? Just so people get up and stretch. Everyone, let people... Let us continue now with the public testimony.
Our next speaker is Wanda. Following Wanda is Kevin Carter.
Good afternoon. I brought this friend of mine, and Ms. Ashby has, I think, addressed the issue with me. This lady is having problems. She was working. She had a job. She had a home. She had a baby. And now she has a medical, life-threatening problem and needs a home. But I think Ms. Ashby has helped.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, and thank you.
Well, what I wanted to know is what resources are available? Like she said, I did work. I worked up until a few months ago, and my doctors actually said that I have to. And I'm wondering, where can someone go with has to chemo several times a week and blood drawn and has to be, you know, in the hospital several times a week? But I need a permanent residence so my son can, you know, basically be comfortable, because I can't have him in the hospital with me. So I was just wondering, what resources are there for chemo patients that are, you know, young myself, that have worked, have put back into the government, but actually now need your assistance? I physically can't work. I have several other medical conditions on top of the life-threatening one, and I just want to know what is available to me and what steps I need to take in order to get this assistance.
Yes, Councilmember Ashby, please.
So first of all, Tiffany, I'm -- Wanda, thank you for bringing Tiffany and her beautiful little child down here so we could try to step in. But I fully recognize that everybody's not going to know to, you know, everybody can't go this route. This isn't the right route. But the resource that we have put out there for Tiffany is that I made a call to Michelle Steebe at St. John's Women's Shelter earlier today. St. John's, as everyone knows, has a 400-person waiting list. But inside of their program, they do have a respite care program that is set up to be a week-long program where someone like you, who's staying at a friend's house, but it ends tomorrow, has a place that they can go. And during that week, St. John's has a navigator system. It's not the same as our navigator system, that helps you with the paperwork and the health care paperwork and things that you need to get you set in a better situation to be able to address your own health concerns and still be a great mom to that beautiful little baby. So in this instance, I'm hoping that that all goes well. She's got a contact. She's all ready to go with a phone number, and they're expecting to hear from her today. And I believe they have a spot for you that they're holding on to for you today. And she has my contact information. If that doesn't work out, to call me back. But these are the types of programs we need to champion and support. This council... Yeah, agreed. Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Give him two minutes, please.
Yeah. This council supported St. John's Women's Shelter to the tune of, you know, over half a million dollars to help them expand their services and add 90 more women and children to their docket. And I think those are the kinds of things that we need to do, because when Tiffany stands in front of me today, it gives me a resource to direct her to that makes me feel good about Sacramento's ability to serve her and her little one and hopefully help get her in a position where she can be independent. Thank you.
Councilmember, your office and our city will follow through and follow up with her to help her?
It's actually done, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'm sorry. It's the longest...
You know what? That's okay. We'll take that.
It's all right.
Sorry. Start from the top. She's -- I know. God sakes. I need, like, some coffee and maybe a bed or some sleep or something.
Some sleep.
She's set. She's set to go. I don't think she's going to have any hurdles. She's going to be fine. She's ready to go, and everything's -- the path is set out for her. But if there is a hurdle, she has my number. Yeah.
I just wanted to recognize Angelina Ashby for the help that she didn't even hesitate. And this is one of the reasons I like to bring people down here, because individuals up here in the City Council have better resources, knowledge of resources. And I want to thank each and every one of you guys for the help that you have, especially Angelina.
Thank you very much, Wanda. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for stepping up. Okay.
Next speaker is Kevin Carter, and then Richard Wake.
Good afternoon, City Councilmembers. Mayor Steinberg, I'm just here to reiterate on Indigenous Day. This day has to be the first day that we acknowledge when it comes to culture and the history. We look at things today environmentally, and who's on the front line for these things? When we talk about the history of the indigenous people, when we talk about our history in Washington, D.C., the Potomac, the Potomac River, when we look at the North Dakota, and we look at Standing Rock, but most of all, is when we come here, west of the Mississippi, the steamboat. Before that, before 1850, 1848, before James Marshall discovered gold at Sutter's Mill, the indigenous was here. And when I look at the history today and in the books today, when history is delayed, that means that history is denied. And the only way that this history can be brought to the forefront is when you truly pay attention to it. This has nothing to do with what Columbus did, but with the indigenous are still doing today when it comes to our water, when it comes to a clean environment and healthy living. The indigenous people hold that history, and we want you to hold that history with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Richard Wake, and then Greg Galvanovich. Is Richard here? How about Greg? Thank you.
I have a speech about homeless. The best you could say about the homeless, they are human beings and should be helped. However, we live in a society. I am an intellectual. I usually don't like chatting with a business class. I prefer talking with intellectuals. And I said something similar to a business owner at a synagogue, but I added, "If it weren't for the business class providing goods and services, we would not have a society." And I thanked him for doing his job. The homeless do -- the business does suffer in Sacramento, as the homeless drive away business. But -- and not all of them use dangerous drugs. Some fall through cracks. They were working or had college degrees. But after interacting with the homeless up close and personal for two weeks, I saw that their number-one activity is using dangerous drugs. They pay for it with prostitution and stealing. My conclusion is, offer free cigarettes to the homeless if they move to Los Angeles. Make cigarettes illegal in Sacramento. Offer them mansions in Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Malibu. The Hollywood actress can move up here. Can you imagine K Street Mall with beautiful actresses? Winston Churchill said, "If you want people to move to hell, then you got to make hell look attractive." Give them seeds, water, grow tomatoes, corn, marijuana, heroin poppy fields. Did you ever walk by a spot where there were homeless four hours ago and notice a large carton of milk half-empty just sitting there? They have no place to put their stuff. They need a house and to get off drugs. Encourage a truckload of pastors and Buddhist monks to go to L.A. with them. Make it illegal to smoke cigarettes in Sacramento, and they will leave. Make Sacramento a sanctuary city for nonsmokers.
Okay. Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
My next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then Robert Copeland.
Good afternoon, panelists. I'm here under fellow government freedom of speech. We looked at some -- your governor vetoed some information pertaining to show your tax return. You should take a look at something, people. We're going to follow you down. But now, I have asked for audits. I'm not asking for all your entities. Every penny, I'm asking for per quarter or per six months, what did -- how much money went to labor. Very interesting. Policy audit mean nothing to the public. You do that. You used to call that part of regulation. But we need to know where the finance from Sacramento going, because I have identified something here that we need a finance audit, because we -- I have identified something that I can't go into it until after Trump make his new law on tax, because we find that same money is being filed here with IRS. Same dollar, no new money. The same dollar is being filed twice, right here in the city, and nobody's saying a word. You got to understand the tax system to understand that. The same dollar is filed twice. No new money have came to Sacramento in the past 24 months. We talk about new money that pays big dollars. We're not talking about mom and papa stole money. We talk about big money. Understand the tax system, people, because that's where it's coming down to be. And black folks try to get something into business. Do something into business. That's where the tax system was set up. Enterprise. It was set up on socialism, capitalism. Get something in real or lease property. As I did Elgro. Show the people, you can't control nothing in your neighborhood unless you've got a business within your property. You can't do it. So people here, especially us black people, help Allen build a tent here over in the upper side. Get something on the boat, not one black man put anything on the table for economic development. People wake up.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Thank you.
My next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Sarah Michael.
Last Friday, I was at a homeless forum at the Capitol, which Mayor Steinberg was one of the people on the panel. And one of the other people said, "How about having a Citizens Committee, Homeless and Housing Committee?" And I think Mayor Steinberg agreed to that. I think that's a great idea. And whoever wants to be opting, there should be homeless people, advocates like from the Sacramento Tenants Union, some of the people that live in various neighborhoods, like the Woodlake neighborhood, if they want to be in it. That's a great idea. And today, I was at an informational hearing at the Capitol to repeal Costa Hawkins. If you don't know what that is, that's the Costa Hawkins. If we repeal that, that we can try to get rent control in this city and this state. So that's another great idea I think we should do. And they had the overflow section, and then another overflow section, four of people that were for and against that. And I was going to speak on a few other items. Let's say, a quarter of the nation's homeless population lives in California. Do people know that? I didn't know that until today. And 40% of the people in California live below or just above the poverty level. That is wrong. We should get more people living above the poverty level. And another thing is, what's caused -- one of the main causes of homelessness, increase in rent. And if you see this little sign here that says rent is too damn high, that's what the sign says, what the thing says. And I agree, rent's too high in this state. So let's get more affordable housing in California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Michael. Following Sarah is Fago Clark.
Mayor Steinberg, Councilmembers, an update on my fight with CADA, Capital Area Development Authority. I have email showing the lies. I have email proving retaliation. I have still photos of conditions, and I have, most recent, a video of my upstairs neighbors shower leaking into my bathroom. I also have an email from CADA assuring me that in the two months they put me out of my apartment, all of this was taken care of. Nothing has been done regarding my fight in against the termination of tenancy. November 30th, no housing. I am homeless on the street in a wheelchair. For all the help that everyone has done here, I believe that when I called code enforcement, the email that I received from a gentleman there summed it all up. When he wrote back and pointed out that my address is state-owned and they have no jurisdiction, CADA is omnipotent. I've been here. You know I've been here. I've been over at the Capitol. Over there, they tell me that they're very sorry that they create the laws and then they don't follow up on what happens. CADA was created to abolish slumlord conditions. They are now the slumlords, and they are also abolishing the affordable housing that they were entrusted with. They are tearing down places for high rises. They are putting us out. I'm not the only one they've done this to, and they are in the process of doing this to other neighbors as well. So we are making no progress. But again, November 30th, my cat will have to die, and I will be on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My next speaker is Fago Clark, and then Eric Frame.
So I'm going to start off today with a statement from the Sacramento County Green Party concerning Indigenous Peoples' Day. The Green Party of Sacramento is honored to stand with the indigenous peoples of this land in calling to abolish Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. To many indigenous peoples, Columbus Day represents the colonization of their land, the enslavement of their peoples, and the decimation of their way of life. To continue celebrating this genocidal slave trader is an insult to the original inhabitants of this land. Let us move forward instead by instead honoring our indigenous peoples and their history by acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day. And for the rest of my comment, I'll be speaking for myself, not for the Green Party. I do feel that it is very important that we do acknowledge the atrocities that have happened in the name of colonization by discontinuing the practice of honoring somebody that didn't even land on this continent. Like, he landed on the islands in the Caribbean, so he didn't discover America. He also didn't discover anything, considering the fact that you can't discover something that has already been discovered. Like, there's already people here. That's not discovering it, you know? So in light of finding out that Governor Brown just signed a bill into law today that would start teaching Native American history in classes with input from indigenous peoples themselves, I think we could take a great step forward by actually putting on the agenda the resolution that's been presented to you about creating Indigenous Peoples' Day and honoring it. And I think it'd be at least a small step to show that you are concerned about our indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Frame, and then Wes Elliot.
Hello, everybody. This city has spent our tax dollars on a $400 million arena, $100,000 additions to the memorial auditorium, $75 million to the zoo last week. You guys gave yourself a raise a few weeks ago, and that passed. Please use our tax dollars for what we, the people, demand each and every week, which is truly affordable housing. Frankly, I think it should be free housing at this point, since ignoring your constituents has led to the death of thousands of your citizens. Why can't we use some of the various vacant lots and vacant buildings in this city to start solving the homeless and housing crisis? These buildings are collecting dust. I hear the owners are getting tax breaks for these buildings collecting dust. Why don't we switch that up and give them tax breaks for actually housing human beings? You guys say often that you want evidence-based solutions and housing-first solutions. I and many others have brought you tiny home villages as an option. These are evidence-based solutions because they've worked in St. Louis, Portland, Seattle, even Yuba City, right down the road. I would appreciate if you guys looked at me when I was speaking. Perhaps we can use some of the various lots, vacant lots, to build the first tiny home village in Sacramento. Why did the city close public bathrooms with full knowledge that the homeless crisis was getting worse? That means more shit in the streets, and yet you closed public bathrooms. I was at the homeless meeting yesterday. Mr. Shinier, you asked a great question of the audience. Would they be willing, these Land Park folk and Oak Park folk, would they be willing to do shelters?
Your time is up.
And they all raised their hand and said, yes. So I look forward to your proposal for homeless shelters in Land Park and Oak Park. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wes Elliot, then Marcus, and Mike Williams.
Good evening. I was here last week, and my name is Wes Elliot Hoodnashoni, and I live in District 4. So I'm a resident here, Sacramento. I'm just keeping the awareness of the changes that we recommend and we suggest that this council look at. We're talking about doing the right thing. It's not very complicated. When you look at, there are five states that have made the change. There are 55 cities throughout the country, and that's why I have to change what we wrote in here, because we wrote 20, I believe it was 26 cities and 15 states. It is now 55 cities and 22 states that have gone for it and changed it. So we're not looking for anything that hasn't been done. We're looking at people to do the right thing, especially here in California, where Los Angeles, Berkeley, Santa Cruz, San Fernando, Burbank, Long Beach, St. Louis, Piscay, Watsoville, they have all from California, and they've all changed. So we're looking forward to, hopefully, in a few weeks, when this can get on the agenda and we can pass. It's not a very complicated thing, but we're talking about doing the right thing here. Other cities have done the right thing. It's time for this City Council, again, to do the right thing, and I'm very sure that you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Marcus, and then Mike Williams. Marcus?
Hello.
Mike Williams?
Hello, everybody. I'm Michael Williams. You know, I guess you guys all heard the atrocities, or you could just Google it. This whole thing's a lie. But I just want to say, from a indigenous person growing up or as a child, when you go to school and they're celebrating Columbus Days, and then you hear stories from your grandparents or parents of how we've been here forever, you know, a lot of our lives has been covered up, but some of the kids know about the great empires and all the contributions we gave into America, including the Constitution. But all people here and all these children think, oh, Columbus just came to America and made this bagel a great place for us. But that's a lie. It hurts our children. You know, it hurts. You know, it hurts. You know? So that's why we need to abolish this, you know? Instead, so the kids could have a day in school, they're doing it for the older kids, nine to 12, so the kids could have a day or a week at school where they could really get to know indigenous people, the original people of this country, and all their accomplishments. So that's why I'm asking for this. You know, this hurts our children. And it hurts, you know, you grow up with this lie, and it's like a slap in the face every year when you get older and you start knowing the truths. So we gotta stop this lie, please. Thank you.
My next speaker is Jeremy Turner, and then Michael Voy. Mr. Turner?
Right when I put a cough drop in, thanks. Mr. Mayor, Council, I want to give an explanation from last night a little bit and then talk about a proposal from Mr. Warren. Last night, we made an offer to RT to purchase Evergreen in Arden.
We? Who's "we"?
The Coolinsini Inc. We've been in business for over 50 years and at that location, 35 going on 36, we took on the croi, a radio station. We host the California Black Chamber of Commerce on the radio station we own, 97.5, which I cruise to when I'm working in my office. We host that radio station. We want a seat at the table. That's what we're asking for, okay? No one has come to us. We're your neighbors. We're your business. We have a vested interest. We wanted to purchase this property years ago, and we've tried to, but with zoning issues and whatnot, and it needing to be held for low-income housing, we understood that we weren't going to be able to get a hold of this possibly. But the waiting game on this property has been no good for Sacramento. We wanted to throw auctions through there. That would have been seasonal, possibly, year by year. It's over now, okay? And so is my time. And I wish I had more, I want to talk with you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, please look at the proposal from Mr. Warren here for the incubator lab at this particular property. We will step back and not try to purchase this property or even press any further, and we will talk to anyone else who tries to purchase this property if we can work together.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Warren would like to, we usually don't comment on public testimony on the agenda, but it's appropriate.
Yeah, but I want to, I mean, this property's been on the market for 10 years. And so, this is the first I'm hearing about an offer that you've made or a proposal that you're making. So I think it probably would be more effective for me if you would have presented your proposal so we knew what you were...
You should go see your council member.
Well, you know, I dropped by today too as well...
Let me just say, I really have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, and so this was news to me as well, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Warren. I didn't realize that we had interest in purchasing that property until just recently. I don't have all the paperwork in front of me, but what I'm looking for, I'm an educator. I've been throughout the state of California.
Hey, Sarah, I want you to go see Councilmember Warren, okay? And talk to him about your proposal, and that'll be, that'll be fine. We consider it.
Thank you.
See, now, the law works. If the Regional Transit Board chooses to declare the property surplus, the city then would have the right of first refusal. That's the way that it works. So you, what you're saying is that you have another idea for the property, might want to buy it? I suggest you talk to Councilmember Warren. That's the place to start.
Well, the idea would be for the city. Actually, the idea is not really for us, but the city.
The member for the district, please pay him the courtesy of going to talk to him, okay?
Thank you so much, Council.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Next.
My next speaker is Michael Voy, and then Joan Leonard.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I know that we're continuing on with cannabis regulation, various aspects of it that'll be on the primary agenda later on, but I wanted, somewhere way back in the early part of the year, when you first started formulating the cannabis regulations, there was discussions about public service announcements and education, educational program and outreach program for youth. And I haven't heard anything about that recently, but the other pieces keep moving forward on the agenda. And so I'm wondering if there's still support for that, because now I understand there are approximately 100 applications, so they're generating some money, so... They haven't paid yet. Well, never mind.
We will, I promise you, we will discuss this in detail in the agenda item, including some of the issues that you are raising that are...
Okay, so that, there will be some allocation for that. I hadn't seen...
We'll discuss what we intend to do once we receive some of the money, yes. Haven't gotten it yet.
Well, I guess in that case, and I don't want back and forth, but I would say that irrespective of the source of the money, I think the city does have some obligation for education and outreach, and we're approaching January 1st.
Yes.
Thank you.
Stay tuned for the next item, okay? Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Joan Leonard, and then Ron Emsley. Joan?
Good evening, Mayor and everyone. Pastor President Trump, Holy Spirit is with us. I said weeks ago, God gave USA President Trump his position. President Trump, I know you aren't bored starting World War III with North Korea. According to the Good Book, we don't want one world government. North Korea will be themselves, and USA will try to be ourselves. I remember former presidents, walk softly and carry a big stick, chicken in every pot, Reaganomics. You aren't stupid, as some people said. You make money. Remember, money, 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 the song. Have a good family. Former President Obama and First Lady Michelle, I miss. What if the bombs miss USA and hit Paradise Islands, the Caribbean, Bahamas, and other Paradise Islands? What then? I want to go there. You seem to me you don't care about Puerto Rico. Another subject for California, high rent. Please stop being, human being, greedy, who own properties? I know we must live within our means. I can't help it. I can't. I help, how can I help stop rates increase? Milk in some parts of Alaska is about $12 a half gallon. Don't be like the rest of the world and do the metric system. Some baby boomers don't want it. Hard to learn at my age. We don't want to be like the rest of the world. Europe don't want to travel to USA because we are shooting, not everyone, not all, everyone. Fires mostly everywhere. Where, mostly everywhere. I hate death. People, animals, living things, losing their lives, trying to save their properties. Those living, property's gone. All Christians dead, passed on.
Ma'am, thank you. Your time is up.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Ron Emsley, Richard Wake, and then Marcus, if he's returned.
Lights couldn't be turned down a little, could they?
No, sir. Once you begin, we can see it. We can see your, we can see it up on the screen. Go ahead, sir.
Well, anyway, for over 15 or 20 years, the park department has been mismanaged.
Can we help them with the mic, please?
Okay, they tend to be good at getting grants. And because it's not the city's money, it's basically the state's, which means it's free money, no one cares. And so, they don't design the parks that will last. Here's a picture of the basketball court. And, let's see, somebody, there was only a two-inch plumbing pipe barrier and a cable between the parking lot and the basketball court. Well, anyone that has any sense knows that a two-inch pipe is no deterrent for a car. So somebody decided to redesign it, and they backed into all of them and laid them at a 30-degree angle. Then they pull those up, which was a good idea, and then they put these barriers, which, this is a rough and tumble neighborhood, so you need things strong. And, let's see...
Ron, your time is just about up, so you probably want to sum it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Richard Wake? Did Richard arrive?
Okay.
I don't see Richard, and I don't see Marcus. So I have no more speaker slips for items not on the agenda.
Thank you. That's the public testimony on items not on the agenda. Let us now proceed with the special presentations. Councilmember Warren, we want to begin recognizing October as American Pharmacists Association Month.
Very good, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have some representatives from the American Pharmacists Association here. If they are, please come up to the podium. Have you been here before? I think I've seen you, yeah, I thought I saw you here last year, maybe. And so, Mr. President, would you like to say a few words first?
Mayor Steinberg, and distinguished members of the City Council of Sacramento's. My name is Hugh Train, and I'm the dean of the College of Pharmacy at California North State Universities. And it is my distinct pleasure and honor to be here today with my students to accept the letter of recognition from the City Councils of Sacramento's. I just take a few minutes to share with the mayors, the assemblies, and council members why it is so important to all of us. We, as pharmacists, have been fortunate in the backdrop of the communities to assure a safe and effective drug politics. The dream of the pharmacy profession, it is to reduce to zero the number of close to 100,000 deaths every year in the healthcare institutions. It's to continue, based on the last report, the 2016 report. But also now, like today, the newest that the pharmacists have been out there is San Diego to immunize against hepatitis A outbreak happening down there. So, we are California North State Universities in the backdrop of Sacramento areas. We are very, very honored to receive the recognition today, and we pledge that, over the years, we have been here for 10 years, and we also pledge that any time the city needs help, we are stand ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very, very good. Let me just say, and I mentioned this last year as well, so I'm very familiar with pharmacists and the career of pharmacy. I happen to be married to a person who is, she has a doctorate in clinical pharmacy from UCSF. And so I understand the role that pharmacists play in our society, and it's a very, very key and special relationship that pharmacists has with people when they have to go in for consultation and medicine. And also, if I would listen to my wife and believe what she says, you guys know almost as much as doctors, probably more. A lot, you know, in chemical reactions and things as it relates to, you know, treating various types of ailments. And so, it gives me great pleasure and honor to present the resolution to you that acknowledges that the month of October is here, it's Pharmacist Month. And so, I will say to, let me have the three of you, are you in school, or you, yeah. So you understand, the young man as well, you're in school? Right. So you guys are on your way to a fantastic career. And so I just want to congratulate you as well, okay? So I'll read the resolution, and then we can take a picture, and then you guys can go out and help heal the world, okay? All right.
Feel free to summarize it, please. Go ahead.
The end. How about that?
Oh! Come on, read some of it. Good.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Whereas the California Pharmacists Association was founded in 1869 and is the largest state association representing pharmacists, technicians, and student pharmacists from all practice settings, and whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest health professions concerned with the health and well-being of all people, and whereas pharmacists are specifically educated with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy, are ideally suited to work collaboratively with other healthcare providers and patients to improve medication use and outcomes by providing services through medication therapy management. And whereas it is important to promote the profession of pharmacy as an essential healthcare provider, and know that pharmacists provide both expertise and accessibility, which are crucial to patients fully, to optimize access to medication that are not self-administered, such as, but not limited to immunizations. And whereas the American Pharmacists Association and the California Pharmacists Association have proclaimed October to be the American Pharmacist Month, theme, know your medicine, know your pharmacist. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of this great city of Sacramento, that we do hereby recognize the California Pharmacists Association, Academy of Student Pharmacists, for their work in celebrating American Pharmacist Month for the month of October, and the exceptional skill and knowledge of medicine that pharmacists represent. So, thank you.
Thank you. One. One, two, three. One more. One. Yep. One. Okay. You're back. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Warren. We do have one more presentation tonight, and it's recognizing the bicentenary of the birth of Bahu Ula, which is a, who is the founder of the Bahi community. And this is a, this is a very important recognition. The, in the 19th century, Bahu Ula was the founder, brought a message of human dignity, capacity, and oneness suited the requirements of contemporary life. And on October the 22nd, 2017, just two days ago, the Bahi community marked the 200th anniversary of the birth of its founder. And in our community in Sacramento, the Bahi faith and its leaders and its members have always driven to apply this vision to the material and spiritual life of Sacramento, collaborating with others to promote unity. And there couldn't be a more important time in our nation's history and our community's history to thank those who preach peace and acceptance, and those who work every day to make sure that Sacramento remains the accepting, inclusive community that we take such pride in. And so, it's my honor as the mayor to recognize the bicentenary. Never heard of that word, actually, bicentennial, but bicentenary, of the birth of Bahu Ula. And who's here from the community to accept the resolution? Please, please come on up. And please, just two minutes, if you would, just a couple of words about the history and what it is the faith stands for.
Thank you so much. And first, I want to thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and the council for this acknowledgement of such a...
history to thank those who preach peace and acceptance, and those who work every day to make sure that Sacramento remains the accepting, inclusive community that we take such pride in. And so it's my honor as the mayor to recognize the bicentenary. Never heard of that word, actually, bicentennial, but bicentenary, of the birth of Bahu Ula. And who's here from the community to accept the resolution? Please, please come on up. And please, just two minutes, if you would, just a couple of words about the history and what it is the faith stands for.
Thank you so much. And first, I want to thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and the council for this acknowledgement of such an important celebration and an important anniversary as it relates to the Bahi faith and Bahu Ula, the prophet founder of the faith. Bahu Ula's teachings promote and really help everyone in the world to embrace the idea that there is one God, all mankind is one, and essentially all religion is one, whether people worship in temples or synagogues or mosques, whether they worship in their homes or under the stars. We all seek God's grace and mercy. We seek God's patience and kindness and protection. And as Bahis, we recognize that the earth is but one country and mankind its citizens. And as we begin to look at the world around us, and in an appreciation, again, for all the things that people brought that were on their hearts, this should be on all of our hearts, because we are indeed one. And I'd like to invite my fellow Bahis to come forward.
And let me come down to present the resolution. Thank you very much, everybody. We now move to the consent calendar. I would note for the record that File Item 15, the Housing Authority approval of lease for 1224 North B Street in Salvation Army is being continued to the 7th of November. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay, without objection. Are there any other items of the consent calendar that any member wants to either pull off or to discuss? Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 16, please.
Pull it to discuss it tonight?
Yeah, to take a separate vote, and I'm happy to move the balance.
I do have one speaker for item number seven.
Good, so we do have one item of public testament. Let's take that, and we can separate out 16 and take the rest of the consent calendar, okay?
I have Gary Martin speaking on item seven, which is the lease agreement portion of Coloma Community Center.
My name is Gary Martin, and I'm the executive director of nonprofit Access Sacramento. And for the past 31 years, we've been your anchor tenant in the Coloma Community Center in District Six. Like your own Metro 14 cable channel, Access Sacramento operates two cable channels and a radio station, KUBU, 96.5 FM, to allow public access and free speech messages by members of the public. We also provide training and equipment resources to residents who want to improve their communication skills using computer and broadcast technology, like cameras, video editing, and radio and television studios right there in the Coloma Center. We want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for its great relationship, for keeping us safe and working with them on the Facilities and Neighborhood Services Division. For many people, they know Access Sacramento because of its work with Hometown TV. We broadcast Friday Night Football, full-length coverage of those games. We also have Hometown TV grants that allow free event coverage for election candidate forums, workshops, panels, community events. It's creative economies, it is workforce development. Others know us for our film festival. Some of you may have been at the Crest Theater for our 18th Annual earlier this month, when we produced 10 new original films for A Place Called Sacramento, a film festival all about our city. We are also excited about our Power of Voice Award. Some of you have attended that event, and of course, the high school PSA competition. KUBU, our radio station, is broadcasting this meeting tonight, and all city council meetings, as always, is a continuation of the Metro 14 partnership. And we are delighted that 96.5 FM is the freeway to listen to these meetings. We thank you, appreciate the support of the city council, and for your three representatives on the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, who provide the money to us that helps pay for this lease in the Coloma Center.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warren. Thanks for all Access Sacramento has done and continues to do. Appreciate the update. Very good. Okay, that's the only item. We have no other public testament. Moved, well, we're going to, it's a question to Councilmember Ashby, and it's going to be Item 1 through 14. Moved approval, moved by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor of Items 1 through 14, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. 15 was continued. Now, Item 16, Councilmember Ashby asked for a separate vote, so we'll take a motion on that. Moved by Councilmember Chenier, seconded by...
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
As to why I pulled it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, happy to move it along on the vote, but I just wanted to state, from my perspective, that this item is substantive change to Title V on our marijuana ordinances, and includes an entire change to our permitting system, creating a three-tier system and lowering the bar on many types of marijuana sales in our city. And I don't think it's appropriate for a consent item. And I wouldn't, I don't want these changes reflected in our system, so I will be voting tonight no on this item. And I also just would like to say to staff, or to the universe, or whoever might be listening, I think something substantive should come to council and should be fully vetted by this group.
Okay.
Not just the lawn ledge committee.
Okay. I know Mr. Devlin wants to make a comment about this item. What's that? It's been moved, and it's been seconded. Councilmember Warren also has a comment. What do we hear from Councilmember Warren, and then we'll ask you to respond, Mr. Devlin.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, let me just say that I, too, have a number of concerns relative to our overall marijuana policy, and kind of the mixed signals we're sending to the community at large and applicants. And I have a number of things that have been brought to my attention, and I'd like to get some clarity, if not tonight. You know, I'm happy to get the information sometime this week, but I think it's extremely important. But, so here are my questions. One is, what's the status of the NEXIS study? We've said in what I believe to be somewhat arbitrary, a fee or percentage of 1% for you know, community impacts. So what's the status of the NEXIS study? The Neighborhood Responsibility Plan, we're getting calls from a number of applicants saying that staff, city staff, has not been accepting neighborhood responsibility plans and are forcing people into accepting this mandated 1%. And so I need, we need to get clarity as it relates to that policy. The way I understand it was that it was an either-or, and if we're forcing people down this path, and I think that, again, we need to be clear about what we have approved, and then what we're doing out in the general public and the applicants. And to date, my office has only received one notice of a decision from the administrator relative to this approval process of cultivation facilities. And, I mean, as you know, we only get 10 days to appeal these policies, and so if, you know, I don't, at this point, we don't know what's being approved, when it's being approved, and how much time we then have to respond to it. And as I've made, I think, very clear before, that I will be appealing every application in locations that I deem to be inappropriate for marijuana. And so I believe that if you're, if applicants are getting the approval and our office is not receiving adequate notice, then I think we have some very major issues relative to how this thing is being administered. Additionally, the information on the city website is confusing. It does not include site addresses or directions on how to access notices of decision. So it's not clear if we're approving, and then if, again, if we approve these applications, when they were approved, and just pertinent information that I think is extremely important. And I know that transparency is one of the things we want to definitely present to the community as we deal with this issue. And again, I had stated before that, I mean, this is still, it's, you know, it's legal on one level in the state. Federally, you know, there's still some challenges. You know, it's a big issue, and I believe in order for us to do this right, we really need to answer some of these questions, because it's a huge opportunity as well for the city, and for people to start businesses and to really have an opportunity to improve some of, you know, some of our more impacted communities. And, you know, and I'm not an anti-marijuana person, but I think we have to be more responsible in how we roll it out. And so I'm going to join Councilwoman Ashby tonight and vote no on what's being offered as Item 16, and subsequently on the additional items that come up as it relates to marijuana, until I can get clarity on these questions that I propose, so, thank you.
And there'll be a further item tonight, and maybe, Mr. Devlin, just for purpose of clarity, you can describe the consent item versus the item that's about to come up on the agenda, so that we can put it in context here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, the two items are somewhat, are different but related. The item that was, Item Number 16, creates a tiered type of manufacturing, and Title 17 deals with the land use requirements as it relates to some of our manufacturing items as well.
Mean Item 18, but Title, no, it's Item 18. Title 17, Item 18.
Correct.
Okay.
So to Councilmember Warren, I would love to sit down with you and give you a much deeper dive on all of this stuff, anytime you'd like. As it relates to...
And not tonight on this item, we're not going to...
Not tonight, not tonight.
Not tonight, so just tell, okay, I think you've answered the question for now. We'll get to Item 18 in a moment, Title 17.
So the item before you today creates a tiered manufacturing system, and this is, or process. And this is really to address the realities and needs of the cannabis industry, specifically the cannabis manufacturing industry. Creating a tiered-type system allows our permits to meet the industry where it's at. So there are a number of manufacturers out there that have, they're large facilities, they have multimillion-dollar investments. We have applications for, for some of those folks have applied right now in the city. We have a couple of those applications. There are also manufacturers out there that come in other forms, and these are smaller businesses. These are generally folks that are more local, that don't have huge market shares, that don't have hedge funds, investors, but have a product that they have been producing and selling in the community and in the region for a period of time. But they're not the big operator. They're really the small business person. And so the tiered manufacturing process before you tonight is really, was birthed out of the conversations around equity and market entry, and how to create greater opportunity for folks that would like to enter the market, but that $30,000 permit was too high a hurdle. And they weren't, they weren't into CO2 extraction. And so a tiered system is going to allow us to meet the market and meet those producers where they are at in terms of the size of their business.
And it's equity in terms of the communities of color and some of the other issues that have arisen around the marijuana issue, to provide access for people who don't have the large fee to be able to pay, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's Item 16. It's on the consent calendar.
Let me, if, Mr. Mayor, let me just add one item. That way I think we can, I can be quiet from here on out as it relates to this issue. But I think that the confusing part of what we have in our written documents and what we've been presenting to the public is just inconsistent with what the realities are. And let me give you an example. So recently, several applicants gone through all the proper procedures, and then recently they've gotten letters saying that their applications were going to be turned down because they were close to light rail. And yet, during our, all of our deliberation and our discussion, there was, I don't recall us having light rail as a disqualification for dispensaries or, you know, anywhere in this discussion. And so some of these people have spent, I'm told, in excess of $100,000 in terms of fees, deposits, non-refundable deposits on places and all of that. So my point is that we are unclear what we've been telling people the opportunity really is, and people are now being punished because they followed our guidelines, and then they get this letter saying they're turned down for some reason that we didn't even take under consideration, at least as a deliberating body. And so, I mean, to me, I would be, and some of these applicants are upset, and I'm even more concerned that then, you know, I don't know how to respond to an applicant that, you know, that says, "We followed the rules, our, you know, our community benefits plan is not being accepted, we want to do more than the 1%. This is what we want to do in the community." And they're being made to, is what I'm, what I'm told, doesn't mean it's correct, but what I'm told is that they're being made to sign this 1%, you know, agreement. And then subsequently, they're getting turned down because of some criteria that was something that we didn't have any, any real discussion or deliberation about. So if it's something different than that, I'm willing to wait and get your written response to my questions and concerns.
Joe. We're not going to, Councilmember Warren stated his piece, we're not, I don't want to go back and forth on this now, okay? It's a consent item, you've explained that it's a piece of it, it's the tiered manufacturing piece. We'll get to the other item, which is not on consent, in a few minutes. But let's hear from the members, and let's vote, so we can move on to the agenda, okay? Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, just one quick comment, sort of addresses one aspect that Councilmember Warren brought up. I would also like to be notified in more or less real time about the status of business operations permits and CUPs, so applying to Title V and 17 both, so that I can track what is happening with potential businesses in my district. So if you could do that, you know, just send an email notice to my office on some regular basis, so that we can track how the process is moving forward, be very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to that point, Mr. Mayor, each of your officers should be notified as a conditional use permit has been routed. So we've received 100-plus conditional use permit applications. Many of them are literally kind of sitting on a desk, and as soon as they're assigned out to a planner, those projects get routed, and you should absolutely be notified as soon as those projects are routed to a planner.
Understood, but even further, you know, just when the applications are received, it would be helpful to have notice in terms of working with those business people and thinking about density, location. It would help my office strategize, you know, how to move forward with the industry. So I, we do get the routings, we get, I don't think we're getting any notices of business operation permit applications. Happy to get that for you.
Councilmember Ashby?
Mayor, I'm sorry to belabor the point, I know you want to move on, but I just don't think this item should have been on consent, and let me tell you why. First of all, it references in its body the item coming later. In other words, it says, this three-tier system goes with Title 17 on a later item. That later item removes the CUP requirement. So everything you just told Councilmember Harris would be null and void for the smaller tiers. So you wouldn't have, some of these businesses will not have to apply for a CUP, which is why I do not think we should do this. You wouldn't even know they were coming until they were already in place. None of us would. You would have these smaller, lower-tier entities in your district without any notice, without any... without any opportunity to say you don't want them. This is why I think these items should have been on discussion. I feel sorry for the mayor. He's trying to get to substantive items that are on, you know, not on consent. This is not a consent issue. This should have been discussed. These councilmembers need to understand how this relates to the item that is not on consent and what that tiered system does to our CUP program. So I think this should have been done in tandem. If today was too busy of an agenda, we should have moved it forward to a different agenda. If somebody wants to make a motion to do that, to move both of these items to another day, I'd be happy to support it. And I don't think we should be moving so far ahead on marijuana without having answered Councilmember Warren's first and initial questions because it requires him to stay in the same place and not be responsive to the community, and he's been asking the question for over a year. But on this particular item, I don't see how you separate the two. I don't see how you take one on consent, and I don't see how you agree to, in the future, eliminate CUPs on at least one tier of potential marijuana usages in our community.
It's been, Mr. Devlin has now essentially presented it. We've had a discussion, and whether it's formally on consent or not, it's been discussed. And there's a motion and a second. So let's call the role on the, we don't have a second. Is there a second on the motion?
I'd like to ask the question before we proceed.
Councilman Carr?
What's the time sensitivity on this, Joe?
Well, we have adopted a manufacturing permit process, and we have that in place right now. What we've, what we've learned subsequent to adopting this is that there are a number of manufacturers that that bar is just too high. And the sooner that we can meet that, I shouldn't say the bar is too high because we have high, we're going to have high expectations of all of our applicants, but that fee too high, that fee is structured towards a large, very large manufacturing facility. I guess if there's a sense of urgency, it's because that these are businesses that are wanting to enter the legal market, they're wanting to enter the regulatory framework, and they're going to be unable to do so unless we can kind of meet them where they are at. And those by far are going to be more of the medium and small businesses.
I want to make a suggestion here, if I may, which is, you know, I think we learn lessons as these agendas are put together. I think anything dealing with the cannabis issue probably should be discussed, so why don't we do this? We're discussing it, by the way. That's my point. I think we, my suggestion is that we take the vote on item 16 after we hear item 18 in a few minutes. And that way, the two are together and we can vote on 18 first and then vote on 16, and that's more maybe the proper sequence, and it'll be fine. Discuss it, and we can decide 16 in the context of the presentation of 18. I got Councilman Chenier. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine with doing it that way. I just want to address Councilmember Carr and the urgency on this. And I have, and the mayor has also, over the last number of months, been meeting with a coalition of organizations who have come to talk to us about equity. I believe we all got a letter at one point, primarily African-American organizations. And we have been working very hard to come to a consensus with organizations about how we can do it, and that's something that we hope will come to Law &amp; Ledge November 14th and then come to the council, an actual program that promotes equity while also protecting the industry as well. This question, and we have been looking at kind of tiered rates or tiered permit processes for a number of the activities within cannabis, primarily because of the equity issue. We don't want to freeze people out of the business who may be very small and not be able to afford the $30,000, so.
I understand the issue, and it's really a moot point with the mayor's suggestion. We'll hear the other item first.
On 18, and then we'll vote on 16 if the council's-
I just want to kind of emphasize the importance of why this is, because people are trying to put in applications. We're talking today to people who really couldn't afford the $30,000 but couldn't afford smaller ones, and that's the size of their business. So that's a primary reason to move forward with some urgency because there are folks out there who want to gain entrance into the industry but can't afford the higher fees for the production that they're going to be doing.
I get it.
We'll get to 18. I'm going to second item 16 so that it's proper, you already did?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Hanson can then. It's proper for a vote, but without objection, we're going to delay the vote until we hear item 18. Okay. You have a comment. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to two things. One, on the substance, when we debated this at Law &amp; Ledge, there was no opposition. And in fact, what we had was an encouragement from small business owners and communities of color that we should lower some of these barriers so more people had access to participate in this new economy. And I think that we were trying to do the right thing here. Generally, the second half is the procedural comment that I want to make about consent. As my colleagues know, consent items generally are deemed non-controversial. If it is controversial, any member can pull it off, which is what happened here. They want to have a separate vote, which is all right. I don't necessarily have an argument about this being on consent because until this very moment, it was not controversial. So it would have been hard to know in advance, but I think the mayor's comments and proposed Solomon-like decision is fair enough, so. But I won't make any other comments on the other stuff, so I just wanted to explain that.
Okay. Thank you. It's all, okay, so we'll take the vote on 16 sometime later this evening. Now let's move to the non-consent items of the agenda and begin with file item 17. Who's presenting on file item 17?
Good evening. My name is Arwen Watt, and I was a project planner for the Greenbrier Project, which was approved by City Council in May of this year. The approval included a condition requiring mediation between the Greenbrier applicant and the Natomas Basin Conservancy to explore mutually acceptable options for the ownership and management of the Greenbrier mitigation properties, and also for city staff to report back to City Council on the status of negotiations and to obtain a recommendation from City Council to the wildlife agencies concerning a mitigation property operator. Staff received a letter from the mediator in August detailing the mediation efforts, and due to the inability to move forward with mediation efforts, a final recommendation that mediation efforts be ceased in this matter. Staff also received a response letter from the Natomas Basin Conservancy. Both of these letters were included in your staff report. Staff recommends the City Council conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion, pass a motion to make no recommendation to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife concerning a mitigation property operator. The wildlife agencies have jurisdiction to review and provide concurrence on an applicant's proposal and agreement for a plan operator, whereas the city does not have decision-making authority on a plan operator. Also, city staff has not solicited, received, or evaluated any alternate proposals for owning and operating the Greenbrier mitigation properties and have no basis for making a recommendation. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council make no recommendation to the wildlife agencies and leave this decision to those agencies. This concludes my presentation. City staff and representatives are available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. We have no public speakers on this item, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we can be very brief. I do want to thank Jim and Jude and Peter and Petraia and John, who are all here and were ready to speak if we needed them. There are no public comments. I also want to thank my colleagues and the mayor, and I think Drew is also here, for going through this exercise with us. I'm sorry that it ended this way, but I think this is the appropriate thing, and I would like to make a motion to move staff's recommendation forward.
Motion's been made, been seconded by Member Hanson, seconded by Member Hampton. He beat you in a close race. So we can now-
All right, I need to close the public hearing, too. Thank you.
Public hearing has been closed. Open and closed. Motion on the floor, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Let the record show that we are 7-0. Okay? Thank you very much. Next item, please. Did you want to weigh in on item 17?
Sure.
Is this item 18?
Yes, it is.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Good.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings and members of the Sacramento City Council. I'm Joy Patterson with the Planning and Development Department. On July 25, 2017, the Law &amp; Legislation Committee directed staff to prepare ordinances to amend Titles V and 17 of the City Code to refine city regulations and implement provisions of the State of California's Medicinal Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. The ordinance before you tonight modifies, deletes, and adds regulations for cannabis production, distribution, and testing in the Planning and Development Code. The proposed ordinance primarily consists of six changes. Cannabis is now the accepted term for the industry. The ordinance changes the word marijuana to cannabis throughout Title 17 to be consistent with the City Code and State of California regulations. Secondly, the Fire Department has determined if properly regulated, ethanol can be a safe method of extraction in the manufacturing of cannabis products. The ordinance modifies the definition of volatile solvent to exempt ethanol from the definition of volatile solvents. Third, the distribution of cannabis will require a state license. The ordinance creates conditional use permit for cannabis distribution in the heavy commercial, light and heavy industrial manufacturing, research, development, and manufacturing industrial park zones with a conditional use permit. It also allows the distribution of cannabis in the general commercial zones with a conditional use permit if it is not the only cannabis use on the site and the site is limited to 6,400 square feet, the building on the site. Creates a new category of cannabis production, which includes cultivation, distribution, and non-volatile manufacturing. This may eliminate the need for separate conditional use permits instead and have one use permit if the applicant proposes more than one type of cannabis business at a site. Fifth, it exempts, the proposed ordinance exempts small manufacturers from conditional use permit requirements. A small manufacturer is one that complies with the following. The use is limited only to packing and labeling of cannabis or cannabis products or producing edible or topical cannabis products using an infusion process. Extraction processes are not to be conducted by this type of manufacturer, and the gross revenues are under $100,000 annually. Sixth, the proposed ordinance would allow cannabis testing by right if certain criteria are met. The use currently requires a conditional use permit. No changes in permitted zones is proposed. A testing facility would be permitted by right if it complied with the following. The cannabis testing site must be 600 feet from a school. It must comply with applicable state and local laws, and it cannot exceed 6,400 square feet in the C2 zone. The Planning and Design Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance on September 21, 2017, and by a vote of six ayes, two noes, and five absents, voted to recommend that the council approve the proposed ordinance with the additional recommendation that applications be analyzed and staff reports be prepared such that uses are not, that are not applied for expressly excluded from approved conditional use permits, and that staff reports be developed in such a manner that discrete uses are separate and distinct, so the hearing body has the ability to consider and adjudicate each use separately as part of the combined production Staff would recommend that the City Council review the ordinance and adopt the attached ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Patterson. I know we have one member, the public wants to testify, and then Councilmember Harris is up to speak as well, so why don't we take the public testimony?
Josiah Young?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Josiah Young. I'm from the law firm Churchwell White, and Councilman Alan Warren has retained our firm in a personal capacity to represent District 2 in cannabis-related matters. Having this conversation now is important to avoid mounting illegal challenges later where we're discussing these issues and ordinances right here, right now. I think as a broad-brush theme of what we're looking for here, it's about clarity, mitigation of harmful impacts, and as we've heard over and over, equity. To kind of dive into some issues with this particular ordinance as we see it, Section 17 F2 holds or reads that a zoning decision-maker may consider if the proposed cannabis production will not result in an undue concentration of cannabis production establishments, but the problem is that undue concentration is undefined. Without a definition, that becomes too subjective and puts a blighted community like District 2 with no caps on the number of establishments and so many residential zones mixed in near the permitted zones that it puts the community at a disadvantage to less sensitive communities. And additionally, it, in my opinion-
Excuse me, Mr. Young, I just want to ask you, do you have a proposed definition? Do you have a-
No, not at this forum, but I really appreciate the opportunity to discuss that and move forward.
Good.
You know, and it, because it may subject the city to challenges without the definition as well. Another issue, when we look at Section 17I, when we're talking about process here, notice to council, I heard Councilman Ashby and Councilman Harris describe issues with notice as well as Councilman Warren. Well, part of that issue is that notice to council from the zoning administrator is, can be given in a reasonable, practical timeframe. There's no definition that's not five, 10, 15, 20 days. The procedure for call-up review is enumerated at 10 days. So we have to mitigate against a situation where the council member may not even get a notice of the decision until after their window to appeal has run. That may not be in practice, but we don't want to set up the council at a disadvantage from the outset. Rushing quickly through, the third issue is about the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan. Every CUP that I've pulled off the website has agreed to do the 1% gross receipts fee. What is the connection between that and the public health, safety, and welfare of the local community? We need to ensure that we're not subsidizing the city, and we need assurances that this money is going to flow back into the community where it's generated and in whole, not in part. And I know that fits into a larger equity conversation. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to continue discussion.
And we look forward to sitting down with you and obviously the council member and trying to improve all of this, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay. Councilman Harris, and then Councilmember Carr, councilmembers.
So, thank you, Mayor. Joy, I have a couple of questions for you. So first, were the Planning Design Commission recommendations incorporated in the ordinance?
The Planning and Design Commission recommendations were transmitted to you, and they were not included in the ordinance as, they were not, typically, we do not amend the recommendations of the commission as part of it. We give you the same thing that they saw, but we transmit to you what their recommendations were. A lot of what, also what they have is process on how we would write a Planning and Design Commission staff report. So we also take note of what they say, and any report that goes to commission to them, we will follow their direction.
So I get the equity piece, but what I'm not clear about is how staff would ascertain whether a small business was below $100,000 total gross sales or had exceeded it. So often I've found that we create ordinance that we don't have a mechanism to enforce. So what do we have in terms of staff availability to track these businesses to make sure that they don't exceed the $100,000 gross threshold?
I'm going to answer, but then I'm also going to defer to revenue because what we are going to rely on are revenue and how they're going to track the gross receipts through the year. So basically, it would be, a person would come to planning and indicate, "We're going to be a use, and we are not going to make this much money. Therefore, we don't need a use permit." They would then operate their business, and if they went over the $100,000, which revenue would be able to track, then revenue would be notifying them.
So my question then is to revenue, how will you track it?
So, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. Cannabis-
Cannabis businesses come in and pay their business operations tax, their four percent business operations tax on a monthly basis. So that is going to be our most direct and consistent method of tracking their relative gross receipts. Additionally, their permit is up for review annually, so if they exceed that and there's some kind of trigger mechanism if they've exceeded that, their permit would not be renewed for that classification.
So in any given year, if they exceeded a hundred thousand, they would then trigger a CUP process?
They would then have to go and find, right, correct, they'd have to go and obtain a conditional use permit or locate to a facility that has a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joy, I'm particularly sensitive to the issue of notification. When we voted to allow production in C-two zones, it was with my understanding that we on the council would, one, be notified, and, two, have an opportunity to weigh in on that particular site, because not all C-twos are created equal. If it's near a grocery store or if it's creating a blank, dark space in a shopping center, it's not where you want to have a production facility or a testing facility. So let's go over this slowly. What requires a conditional use permit and what doesn't?
What's proposed in this ordinance--
Oh, yes.
--would be for the smaller manufacturer, the under a hundred thousand, not to require a conditional use permit. All other manufacturers, so if they didn't meet those criteria of manufacturing, then they would be required to have a conditional use permit.
And the reason for that is we're trying to lower the barrier so that people who don't have a lot of capital can enter into the business? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yes, Councilmember Carr, that was the thought behind it. So a type P and a type N manufacturer, a type P is someone who's going to be involved in the packaging and the labeling. A type N manufacturer would be someone that could possibly do packaging and labeling but is also potentially involved in the making of an edible or a topical or a solve. The amount of cannabis extract that a producer with gross receipts of less than a hundred thousand dollars would have onsite throughout the year in total for a year would be the equivalent of about a water bottles full of cannabis extract. At that point, it was--
A conditional use permit would require more capital to invest or take longer or I'm trying to understand the rationale for why we wouldn't have a conditional--
It's an expensive, it's an expensive process.
So we have to weigh the potential harm to a C-two, a commercial district with dark spaces scattered throughout? And I'm uncomfortable with that. There are some C-twos that are very appropriate for dark spaces, and there are some that are not. And to give up the opportunity to be able to weigh in on a C-two that I know about, that I shop in, I'm having a difficult time getting there, but maybe somebody else would get me there during the conversation.
And could I add, there's another, the ordinance would propose also that testing facilities do not require a conditional use permit. The facilities end with also the manufacturing. They still have to be six hundred feet from a school, and in the C-two zone, for both the testing and the smaller manufacturers, the size limit of the building is sixty-four hundred square feet. Right now, as in regards to testing, every marijuana product in the state, the state will require testing of these products from cultivation to manufacturing. So tests, we only have two applications in now for testing facilities, and we feel that the impact of those are similar to other research testing labs and wouldn't have a detrimental impact and just should be treated like other labs.
Yeah, Joy, but the thing is, putting sixty-four hundred square foot facility next to Raley's doesn't work for me.
And I will say, the one difference is that labs are not currently allowed in the C-two zone, so this would allow a sixty-four hundred square foot lab in the C-two zone without a use permit.
You said we are not allowing--
Out of use permit for testing.
The other, the other testing labs in the city are allowed in the industrial and research and development zones. This would be the only type of testing lab that would be allowed in the C-two zone, but it would have a size limitation on it.
It's still a blank space. It's a dark spot in some of the C-two zones, and I'm still having a tough time. But let me listen to what other councilmembers have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Gosh. I would just urge my colleagues to hold off on this one. It just, it feels all kinds of wrong. First of all, people are-- I mean, let's talk about this. First of all, a CUP is a conditional use permit. Let's talk about other things that require a conditional use permit. A daycare center, a drive-through, alcohol sales. Are you telling me that people who don't have a lot of money never enter into alcohol sales? I don't believe that, and they still have to get a CUP. This makes absolutely no sense to me. Churches have special requirements. Drew, you're telling me they're all well-funded? They're not. It's not clear. There are so many pieces of this that are not clear. For one thing, there's lots of talk about things still needing to remain six hundred feet from schools. There's also a requirement that they have to remain a certain distance from parks, which hasn't been discussed at all in this, in this change. I'm disappointed that the issues in Council District Two are so unresolved. I've been on this council longer than anyone else. I've never in eight years seen a council member so offended that they hired a lawyer to represent their whole district to come in. That's disappointing that we didn't resolve that. I mean, that's just discouraging. And the mayor's acknowledgement that we look forward to working with you to improve it, I think is great, except for that, I don't, wouldn't we do that before we vote on the item? I mean, shouldn't we improve this first? And I'm sorry, but in my district, I want to know. I want to know. You want to open a small shop, a big shop, a medium shop, a testing shop? You want to sell brownies? You want to sell joints? I want to know, because I'm the one who's going to get the call, and so are you all. They're going to get the calls from the moms and the dads and the people who are mad as all heck that that came into their community. And taking away, taking away my opportunity to at least talk to my community about it before they come in is completely unacceptable, and I don't know why any council member would accept that standard time. This got worse since we last talked about sixteen. It just, there's no way that I think any of us should be agreeing to this. And as to the idea, I appreciate Councilmember Hanson's comments. It's very difficult to be on one of the Law &amp; Ledge or PMPE or Budget Not, and I've been on all three, and nobody comes forward to say anything negative, so you, or staff for that matter. They don't have, but the average person is not following our day-to-day discussions around every single step of what's happening with marijuana. They're trusting us to do that, and this is the first day I'm seeing it. This is the first chance that there's a mic in front of my mouth to talk about this particular item and this tiered system, and I think it is ridiculous and would be horrifying in implementation in any of our districts, and I will certainly do everything in my power to fight it out of mine.
Councilmember Warren?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd been clear before when this initial discussion about the legalization of cultivation and now testing and manufacturing about where, I thought it might be a decent fit for our community, and I expressly stated that in commercial zones, I didn't think it was appropriate, period. Cultivation, testing, manufacturing, we don't want buildings that have their windows blacked out and their doors locked in commercial corridors. If we allow that, how would, you know, communities that are fighting for their vitality to come back with more traditional retail ever be able to compete with marijuana cultivators and manufacturers? I mean, they're already driving up rents, I'm told, in some places, three times the market in industrial areas. And so, you know, as Councilman Carr said, you know, we don't want commercial corridors that are blacked off to the public without any opportunity to come back as traditional retail. And so, you know, I've fought to try to keep the commercial zones out of the allowable uses. I was unsuccessful with that, but I will not support, and I have to just, I want to thank my colleague to the right, Councilwoman Ashby, because she said that I was offended by the policy that went forth, so much so that I have hired an attorney, an outside attorney out of my pocket to help maybe make a better point than I was able to make to my colleagues here on the council. But I am extremely serious about protecting the best interests of our community as it relates to this issue. And I think, and I think that, you know, if we just were to look to, I mean, we recently got an audit about, you know, our dispensaries. And I'm sure my colleagues looked at the audit. It reflected very poorly on the city. And to think that we are now taking it to this level to allow some of these uses without any real community input or even, you know, direction from the council, I mean, I think it's disastrous. I think we're way out in front of where we should be. I do not think, though, that this is a lost opportunity because it could be a great opportunity, but I think we got to dial it back and get it right, you know? And I'm not prepared to support this item on the agenda, nor will I support any of these marijuana items until I get a comfort level that it's going to really help improve our community and not be a further weight on District Two, so I won't support it.
Fair enough. Councilmember Hanson, then I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listening to my colleagues, I just, I feel very differently than the people who've spoken in that I think our city made a very thoughtful but also bold choice to bring out of the darkness and back into a regulated economy the marijuana industry, which largely is thriving outside of government regulation right now. We have over a thousand houses in our community that are illegal grows.
Yes.
And that's not acceptable. We are devoting resources to that. Those resources will come from these fees. But also, as our state's voters decided to legalize marijuana use for adults recreationally, we as a city have an opportunity here to make good decisions, and, you know, the CUP process can be used in a variety of ways, and I think that some of the conversation we have is driven more by ideology and a fear of what we do changing communities, but also, these things are happening in these communities already. People are manufacturing underground. We want them to come into a regulated environment where we can ensure their products are safe, that their distribution is regulated, and so that we know where they are, so we can make sure that they're doing things the right way. The fact is that I don't necessarily disagree that the policy could be made better, that maybe the threshold is too high at a hundred, but that's around the edges. I do believe that the CUP process is meant, at its very nature, to reduce what are called secondary effects. Secondary effects are negative impacts, crime, traffic, other things that may lead to an increase in city services for the surrounding area. Drive-throughs, drive-throughs have an impact on pedestrians, walkability. Here, we're talking about potentially bakeries in commercial strips. There's no law right now that prohibits a video store, oh, God, that's antiquated, I'm getting old, that prohibits a business from moving into any of these sites and blocking off their windows. In fact, we have this fight all the time with retailers. They fill all the windows with stuff so you can't see in. You don't know what's going on inside. We have this with office tenants that occupy ground floor retail in commercial centers and elsewhere. They close the blinds. You have no idea what's going on inside. So some of the arguments I'm hearing today don't resonate with me, but what I do know is that we're trying to enable an industry that is already existing to come out of the darkness and into the regulated light. We know prohibition didn't work on alcohol. It has not worked on marijuana. That doesn't mean we should go whole hog and like not have considered reasonable rules. I believe that this policy, and whether we adopt it tonight or later, if it comes back with changes, it's heading in the right direction where manufacturing, cultivation are regulated, we get the revenue, because we also know that we have this operating out there, but unregulated and without the benefit to our citizens of the revenue. Many of you are here tonight about homelessness. We have had demands for millions and millions of more dollars to be spent from our general fund on homelessness, on city parks, on police, on fire. CalPERS is asking us to add an additional eighteen million dollars or so to our city general fund obligations. If we don't find new sources of revenue, that's not the only argument for why to do this. I think there's a true public safety reason, but that revenue is going to help ensure that we don't have to lay people off, that we can make good decisions, and I would support this and I would make a motion tonight, that even if we take changes later, that we make a motion to approve this item.
To move forward. It's moved in second by Councilman Chenier. I want to make a comment, though, and I have a suggestion that maybe will, excuse me, it's important that Councilmember Ashby and everybody hear my suggestion here. You see, I understand the passion on both sides, and I also understand the concern that if something is embedded in the city charter, for example, man, it's hard to change it. When you talk about an ordinance, an ordinance can be an evolving set of guidelines, if you will, as we learn from our experience. And so this notion, I disagree respectfully with the notion that, oh, my God, we're moving too fast, because Steve Hanson is correct. You're dealing with a crisis out there in every one of your districts around the issue of illegal growth, and we don't have the enforcement resources to be able to deal with it or to be able to address it. On the other hand, both Councilmember Ashby and especially Councilmember Warren in District Two, I think have raised a very interesting question, an important question, about whether or not the conditional use permit requirement ought to apply more broadly than what is currently contemplated. And under the current ordinance that we're asked to vote on tonight, it would not apply to testing, it would not apply to small manufacturers. So this is what I suggest. I suggest that we pass this ordinance tonight, however, pleasing, that we come back on the fourteenth of November and we do two things. Number one, we hear the plea from the diverse communities of Sacramento, mostly led by an African-American coalition, who want to assure that we have a pathway program to ensure that minority-owned businesses have a real shot at this business. We hear that. And at the same time, we hear and put up for a vote whether or not a conditional use permit ought to apply to smaller manufacturers and for testing, because the two issues ought to be joined together, and I think this, sometimes this debate is too disjointed. What you may hear from some of the communities of color is that if you apply a CUP requirement to small manufacturing, that you're going to freeze them out. That's what you're going to hear. We ought to balance that against some of the concerns being raised by Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Ashby, which, if I might summarize or paraphrase, is that the council members in the community ought to have a say as to whether or not one of these businesses, small or large, is located in their district. So let's hear those two issues together. If the council, and I'm open, by the way, I have an open mind about the CUP issue. I might agree with you in the end. I really might. But I want to hear that juxtaposed to the barriers to entry for the small businesses, especially the businesses of color that are seeking to get into an industry that is, that the fear is will be dominated by all the big players. So I think that's fair, and the question that you are raising, let's not only have a debate, let's vote on CUP as applied to testing and small manufacturers on the fourteenth of November at the same time we hear this equity piece. That's my proposal, and that way we can move forward tonight. You can still vote no, it's fine, but the issue that you have raised, I think should be properly debated while we move forward. That's my suggestion. Councilman Chenier? Councilman Chenier?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to second Mr. Hanson's motion, and I think that your suggestion is a good one. I'm happy to come back and do that vote. I do want to be clear that testing and small manufacturers are very different, and we shouldn't put them together.
We'll separate them.
Right. I believe we have two applications on testing. If we get five applications, if we get five testing sites, that would be a lot, and I don't think we're going to get that many. I would hope we do. So I think that we also have to be clear on what we're talking about when folks start talking about selling brownies or selling other things out of manufacturing. Those are not open to the public. Those are manufacturing, they're not retail spaces. So I want to be clear on what we're talking about when we're doing it. The other thing is, we are still ahead of everyone in the state of California. So there is no, there's nothing to actually look at that's doing better than us. So we will continue to tweak this, and we will come back and make improvements as we go and as we have more experience. This is not going to be perfect. We know that, but we need to work both with law enforcement and with the industry and with our staff to continue to make it better as we go and be a model, I think, for the rest of the state. I do have a question that Mr. Gara asked me if I can. We put in the original ordinances a council call-up, and that's on the CUP, I believe. I guess the question is, if we didn't have a CUP process on the small manufacturers or on testing for that matter, would there still be a council, would be a way for the council to call up that item, to have input on it? Because I think that the council was very clear that that was a critical aspect of this for me.
I don't know what, yes, it is on. The call-up provision is written, so items heard by the Planning and Design Commission can be called up to the city council.
So the small manufacturers would still have to go?
If a use is allowed by right, there is no call-up provision.
So are these by right, the small manufacturers?
If the small manufacturers would get their permit from revenue, the testing labs would also get their permit from revenue. And as part of that permit, they're still required to have a security plan.
I understand all that. I'm just asking about the potential for...
Yes. There's no call-up. This would be allowing those two uses by right.
I got it.
Right now, they need a ZA permit.
Got it. Thank you. So, Mr. Ruiac, is there a way that, if we do this, that we could have council action on an item? If the council member chooses to do that? I think this is an important point for some of our colleagues.
Under the current proposal as structured?
No.
No.
Is there a way to do it?
We can try to find a way.
Okay.
If that's the wish of the council, we'll work to see what process can be used.
So if we move forward tonight with the mayor's suggestion, I would like to provide direction in there that when we take this back up and talk about a CUP, that you provide options, if possible, for council interaction on non-CUP items on marijuana.
Okay.
Okay? Is that clear? I also want to address the notification issue, which I think is really important. And so, Mr. Devlin, how difficult, and maybe this, I don't, this doesn't need to go in the ordinance, but maybe it's direction or policy that you, that the council have access on a real-time basis to the status of applications in their district.
When a conditional use permit comes in and it's routed, it's routed...
I'm not talking about that.
Right.
Mr. Warren was very specifically addressing...
On noticing and where some, I was just going to say where something is in the process. So we'll send it to the council office when it comes in. All of our planning documents are on Development Tracker, so you can go to Development Tracker to see where it is. We do do the, when there's a public notice, the agenda's posted. Also, when the zoning administrator makes a decision, the decision is posted on the marijuana, or that a decision has been rendered, and we send that information to the council office.
Okay, but my question is, and I understand Mr. Harris's point, and I think it's a good one. For me, as a council member, if I had 30 applications come in in my district, and they were all in one area, but none of them had been routed yet, I wouldn't know, under the current system. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So my question is, is there a way that we can create a process so that, in real time, any council member could know where every application in their, what's the status of every application submitted for their district?
Well, I guess the...
This is a yes or no question.
Development Tracker does that.
From the day that the application comes in?
From the, it indicates that an application has come in.
Okay. And is that, I've had some experience with trying to find things in some of the Development Tracker.
You know, and that's, yeah, and it's a, it's a new process, but that's how, that's how any, any planning application would be.
I can look at, on any day today in my district, and I would know how many applications and where they are and what their status is.
The, you would find all the, all the applications. It wouldn't just narrow it down to the marijuana applications.
Okay. Is there a way that we can create a system here that makes it easy? These are one-time things. We have 100 applications, and I don't imagine we're going to have another 100 in the next three months. I think what I heard my council members, colleagues asking for was a way that they would know from day one when these applications come in and how they're moving through the process.
We could look at a system that would do that, but if the council would like us on marijuana applications, to when they come into the office, to write an email to your office, we can do that also.
Can Howard ask a question here? Howard might be able to clarify this. Go ahead, Howard. Mr. Manager, sorry.
You know, we can work with community development staff to look at the permit tracker system that's very new, to create that report that you're looking for, because it tracks the information. It's a matter of getting it disseminated.
Okay. I think that's all I'm asking for, is that when you come back again, that you tell us that you can do that and show us where it is. I think it's really important, and I agree with Mr. Harris and Mr. Warren. We want to know how many and where. I think it's a pretty simple thing. You've got 92 applications in. Do it for that, tell us, and update it on some regular basis.
I'm confident that we can put that together for you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate that. So, you know, I think, again, I just want to reiterate, there will be, so to address Mr. Carr's question, right, I think if we find a way on these, if we decide not to have a conditional use permit on the small manufacturers, which I do think is an equity issue, and we spent a lot of time on that, finding a way to have council have the opportunity, should, I would hope, take care, mitigate some of the concerns that you have about where a manufacturer should or should not go. Everything else will have a CUP, so everything over $100,000. And $100,000, I don't know how many small manufacturers we're going to get. You're not going to get that many. It's a pretty small amount, and it's a small amount of product that they're putting out. I mean, I've done some tours here, and I think Mr. Devlin said it's basically if it's an oil extract, it's a water bottle full for the year. That's 100, that's about worth $100,000. So I don't see that as a major issue. So I'm ready to move on this item, and I think the mayor, if he's still in the same place, his suggestion is good, and we come back and look at it with some of the direction that we've provided.
Point of personal preference, since Mr. Chenier called me out, I'm not married to a CUP.
Okay.
What I want is the ability or the opportunity to try to convince the rest of my colleagues that this particular use is not appropriate for this site. Now, if that takes the form of a CUP, great. If there's some other less expensive way we can do that, great.
And that's what I've asked Mr. Ruiac to come back with us, with an option on that.
Okay. It's not in the current ordinance, but we're asking for that to come back. Let's continue with the council comments, and we'll see where we go here. Councilman Harris?
Thank you again, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions for staff. I like the mayor's suggestion. Apparently, you know, there's some vacillation on CUP and by right for small operators. I have actually felt that as well. But, so here's the problem. If we pass this ordinance tonight, could it possibly happen that people apply for business operating permits for small manufacturing and testing? And then we come back and institute a requirement for a CUP? Would those people be grandfathered already? Would you actually have hearings between now and November 14th? Because I don't want to get caught up in that kind of a mess.
Thank you, Councilmember. The practical answer is no. We don't even have an application established for the various types yet. So creating that application and that application process would be the first step that we would need to accomplish.
Understood. So we won't get caught in that regard?
No.
Okay. So, thank you, Councilmember Chenier. You know, either we can get access to Development Tracker or the city manager, we can work it out by email, but I do think that that's very salient information. So as council members for our individual districts, we can be attentive to uses in our districts in specific spots, to Councilmember Carr's point, so that we can insert ourselves in the process. You know, if it's not working for our district, we would then have recourse to get involved in that permit process and, you know, work with the hearing administrator. And if it went to PDC, we would have a call-up. So we do have some recourse, as I understand the process now. Would you say that that's fair?
What I'm going to say is, right now, we have two applications in for labs.
Is what?
We have two applications in for testing labs. An ordinance isn't effective for 30 days.
Right.
So this would be less than 30 days. After 30 days, they would no longer be required to get a conditional use permit, so they would probably withdraw their application for a use permit if it didn't change. That's all.
Understood. Okay, that's all my questions.
I want to make a suggestion before we, because I might be able to short-circuit this. I'm going back and forth, you see, I'm shuttling a little bit here and trying to take the pulse of my colleagues. Look, making law, especially in a new area, it's, you know, they call it sausage in a way, right? It's never, it's never pretty necessarily, but where you do have the opportunity to answer all the questions clearly and then put as much of a completed project as possible before the body, I think that's better. I think it's better for the members. I think it's better for the public. And so there are key questions here. There's the question of how to perfect, if you will, a council member call-up. I say that in a generic fashion, so that the council member ultimately has a potential say. There's the issue of the CUP, especially as applied to small manufacturers and testing. That is not a clean and clear issue, I would submit to you, especially given the diversity imperative and goal that we have to not put another big cost, CUP costs a lot of money, on small businesses, minority-owned businesses, but it's a legitimate question, and it's not quite answered here. Marijuana becomes legal January the 1st. We need to get this body of work done before the 1st of the year. So in whispering back and forth with my colleagues, especially Councilmembers Chenier and Hanson, who have been, I think, you know, leading in many respects on this, I want to suggest that we do put this over tonight. Put it over. It's okay. But I'm telling you, we are, we are going to, no cheers, please. We are going to make these sets of decisions in the month of November and early December. We're going to put the equity proposal that a lot of people have been working on before the lawn ledge committee in the middle of November. We will then get back to the council, either in workshop form or in this form, with the equity piece, these two particular ordinances that we're being asked to take up tonight, which there shouldn't be a zillion questions about what we've already covered, but about the remaining questions, and then we're going to vote. And I will bet you that we are going to pass this. In fact, I'm confident we're going to pass this, and we're going to go forward with this. And maybe we'll pass it with unanimous or near-unanimous vote, maybe we won't. But we will squarely decide on this conditional use permit diversity question. We'll answer the call-up question, and we'll answer any other of the smaller questions that Councilmember Warren and others, and I'm not saying they're small, but any other questions that you may have. And let's do it all in one package, and we're going to get this done well before the 1st of the year. But let's do it in that way. Is that all right with everybody?
The only thing I want to add, there are a couple of other issues that will be coming up, but I think if we can do it all at once, that way people will have the context of everything.
I just don't want anyone to take away from my suggestion here, that I'm not committed to moving forward with it, which I think is a very important opportunity done right for our city, because I am committed, and I believe a strong majority of the council is as well. So without objection, do we have to go through the rest of the, the rest of the deal here? Let's, let's put this over. We do, okay, can we withdraw the motion?
Well, as the motion maker, I just wanted to say, I think that's a fair plan, Mayor. But for the purposes of our process, if we're trying for the 14th, is that what we're...
On ledge on the November 14th, on the equity plan.
I think Mr. Hanson, and defer to Mr. Devlin as well, I don't know what else is coming to law and ledge this year, but early December to do all of these pieces.
I'm sorry?
Early December.
I think we're, early December.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm trying to do is to continue to a date certain so that the public understands when to come back.
Through the first, the first meeting of December.
What's the first Tuesday in December, Madam Clerk?
May I ask?
November 14th is the...
Equity at lawn ledge.
Equity lawn ledge.
December 5th.
You want to go what, Mr. Devlin?
Just Mayor and Council, we do have items scheduled coming before you, related to cannabis, on November 28th. We're discussing background checks and deliveries.
November 28th it is.
So I'll make that my motion, that we continue this item with all the direction that people have been provided, even conflicting to November 28th.
And that could be a workshop or it could be a council meeting.
That's right. That's right. And let's make that, let's make...
That was only pertinent to 18.
Let's make it for 16 as well. Let's do both, okay?
Well, we need two separate motions.
You can't combine them?
I have different people who made the motion, and a second on next 16. So we need to vote on 18.
Just make the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let's do 18. All in favor continuing 18, on 18 to November the 28th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion for, on 16.
So I made the original motion. I'll amend it to move it to November 28th.
Seconded by Councilman Chenier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. That passes. Councilmember Brashby, you want to make a quick comment?
I want to make a quick comment. I know you don't want any applause, but I think that was true leadership. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I'm for going forward, I'm for going forward to do business in and with this industry, but this is the right thing to do. So thank you, everybody.
Could we also?
What?
Yeah. We also make sure that for Mr. Devlin and for all of us, that any council members with questions, make sure they get those to the staff in good time prior to the meeting so that we can answer all of these questions and not continue to have the same conversation.
Yes, I think we framed the issues pretty well, but if there are any other additional issues, the call-up, the CUP, call-up, the CUP and equity, those are the three categories that I know of. If there are others, please talk to the staff or forever hold your peace, okay? Very good. Let's move on to an easy issue, homelessness.
A couple more.
We got a couple before that, actually. Okay, let's move on to file item 19. Okay, we do have, I know Ms. Dozier is, is she here? We've got 19, what is, 20 is the PERS issue.
I think we're in 19.
So 19 is just a meeting schedule. All in favor, please?
Mr. Mayor, we do need one decision on the 2018 meeting calendar. I propose two different recess dates for July.
See.
Either July 1st through 14th, option 1, or July 8th through July 21st, option 2. And the feedback I've received is that there's a lot of activity in council districts for July 4th, which means that the council members may be in their district and would... July 4th, which means that the councilmembers may be in their district and would not be allowed.
I like the 8th through the 21st. Yeah. This is, this is a very important item, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that.
Moved and seconded. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain.
I have a, can I reiterate that? I have a motion by Councilmember Guerra. Is that correct?
This one.
Councilmember Hanson, and a second by Guerra?
Yes.
Jennings. Okay, see, I knew I was wrong, thank you. That did, and that was for?
Option two.
Option two.
Which is July 8th through July 21st.
Thank you.
Right, okay, you good?
I am good. I do have two speakers on this item.
Oh, we do have two speakers, so before we cast the vote, on our council recess, you really want to, people want to weigh in, okay?
I have one from Mac Worthy and then Lorraine Brown.
Oh, come on. Mr. Worthy, do you need to talk about our council recess here? Can you wait to the next item?
I can wait on all items.
Oh, very good. Thank you, sir. So Mr. Worthy will pass. Is Lorraine Brown here? Ms. Brown is not. Lorraine, can you wait on this one, because this, do the next one, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Good. We debate many things, but the date of our two-week recess, we can forbear, okay? Let's take item, let's take item 20. Let's take item 20.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We're here with a recommendation to pass an ordinance amending the contract between the City of Sacramento and the Board of Administration and the California Public Employees Retirement System. This is the final process required to amend the PERS contract and the city's legal requirement to implement the cost-share program outlined in the SCAIA labor agreement.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this item?
I have no speaker slips on the table.
Is there a motion? Moved and seconded by many. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. Let's move to the SHRA item. There is one item? Item 21. Item 21.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Jeffrey Ross, SHRA. Tonight before you is the annual action plan for 2018. In the interest of time, I'm happy to waive my presentation and answer any questions that the council would have.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Gueda did have a question.
I'll see if there's public comment.
Is there public comment on this?
There's no public comment.
There is not. City managers posted up, but we'll get to Councilmember Gueda. Here you go.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make sure that we had looked at the District 6 project to ensure that we're expediting and moving as quickly as we can the Lemon Hill and Logan, Elder Creek and Logan traffic signal intersection there. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, good, because?
We'll stay in contact with your office to provide you regular updates.
Perfect, perfect, because every, I mean, if there's anything, we're asking kids to go out there on Friday nights, and that intersection, those two intersections have been pretty difficult. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
It's already been moved.
It's been moved and seconded, now it's been thirded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. All right. Members and members of the public, I know most of you are here on the homeless-related issues, and let me talk for just a moment about how we intend to proceed tonight, and then if I may, Ms. Halken, city manager and members, just to give a little bit of a big picture as to how all of these pieces fit together, because that's important. So first of all, we're going to hear items 22 through 26 together, even though we're going to take separate votes on each of them. What that means is that we're going to have a consecutive staff presentation, and then we're going to hear public testimony on any or all of the items at one time. In other words, we're not going to take separate public testimony on each of the, each of the five items. I'm sorry, 23, let me reiterate, thank you, Councilman Warren, for running me. For those of you who are in the audience here to talk about item 22, this is the so-called Evergreen site, the permanent triage issue, we've?
That's 23.
What did I just say? 23. That is continued. We're not taking that up tonight. So if you're here concerned about whether or not the council is going to approve a permanent triage center on Evergreen, we're not taking that up tonight. The RT board has not yet declared the property surplus, so we're going to take that up at another date, and we'll talk about in more detail how and why, okay? Before I turn it over to Ms. Halken, though, I want to talk about the big picture for literally three minutes, because I think it's important. There are a lot of passions about this issue, and certainly I think it has become a defining quality-of-life issue in our community, not the only issue, by the way. I spend a lot of time on economic development, and hopefully we're going to have some exciting announcements in the coming weeks. We spend a lot of time on youth, we spend a lot of time on neighborhood issues, we spend a lot of time on other issues, but this has become the defining quality-of-life issue, and people are passionate and they have different opinions. We've got a lawsuit going on right now, you know? It's perfectly appropriate in terms, no, I mean, it's like this is, this is democracy around the issue of outdoor living or camping. We've got a lot of people here in the neighborhood, from the neighborhoods in North Sacramento who are very concerned about the winter triage site, as well as the potential longer-term triage site. As your mayor, I am focused on, I'm focused consistently on what I believe will make the greatest difference in the medium to long term for our city around these sets of issues, and I'm not going to lose that focus. And I want to describe to you the five elements that we are working towards, all trying to build capacity to be able to do more of the five following things. Number one, assertive outreach. Unless we are assertive and consistent, especially with people who are resistant out on the streets, we will not induce them or convince them to come in to get help. Whole-person care, our $64 million grant, in part will help fund more assertive and consistent outreach than we've ever had. Two, case management. What does that mean? When somebody comes in to get help and care, you don't just voucher them five different ways, to say, "Go cross-town to get help." If they're sick and they've been on the streets a long time, they need a loving, supportive embrace, case management, to be able to begin their recovery. Whole-person care, the $64 million grant, will help pay for more intensive case management. Third, permanent housing. In March of 2017, my first months of office, the County Board of Supervisors, together with the City Council, jointly redirected 1,750 of discreet housing units, vouchers and actual housing units, for the homeless. We were the only city and county in the state that did not prioritize the homeless population. 1,755 is not enough, and there's a lot of work to actually operationalize even those number of units, but at least we have the beginning of addressing permanent housing. Fourth, mental health services and substance abuse services, because you can house people, but if people are mentally ill or dealing with substance abuse, the housing option will fail. And so what are we doing there? We've been working with our county partners, made a specific request to ask them to contribute $54 million of their Mental Health Services Act resources, Prop 63, to partner with whole-person care, and if they say yes, and I believe we're making real progress here, we will have cumulatively $110 million of new capacity that we have never had before to get thousands of people off the streets over three years. What is the fifth element that brings us here tonight? It's emergency shelter and triage, because you cannot move people from the streets into permanent housing in most instances, especially those who are most chronically homeless. So if we don't have emergency shelter that includes this intensive assessment and referral and case management, then we won't be able to succeed on all the other pillars, and the 85% increase that the people of North Sacramento and South Sacramento and East Sacramento and everywhere in between, we will continue to see an increase in this population. So tonight, we begin to address the issue of shelter and triage. I know that took a few minutes, but I think it's important to put this into context and why this is so important. So Ms. Halken, I'll turn it over to you to take us through the five, six items that we have here tonight, and thank you for your great work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Emily Halken, your homeless coordinator. And as the mayor said, the council's really been spending considerable time over the past few years discussing issues related to homelessness, searching for new and innovative partnerships, pursuing new funding opportunities, and addressing the impacts of unsheltered homelessness on communities, as well as listening to the multitude of voices of concern from throughout Sacramento. Tonight, while there are five, and now four distinct items on homelessness on the council agenda, it's important, as the mayor framed, to understand that they all really speak to a broad goal and approach from the city, to offer a variety of services, to coordinate with our local government partners and nonprofits, and really to work with a sense of urgency to meet the needs of our most vulnerable neighbors. So I'm going to go through each item, maybe not necessarily in the order they appear on the agenda, but I'll try to note where I'm at. We are all too familiar with the rise in homeless, in the homeless population recently in Sacramento, and this shows it graphically. And despite some of the concerns about the point-in-time count, what it does underscores what we already know. Homelessness, especially unsheltered homelessness, is rising exponentially in Sacramento. And this graph shows inventory of beds that we have. Again, while our stock of shelter and housing options for persons experiencing homelessness has been steadily increasing over the past 10 years, many of these units are permanent, and that's a great thing. They serve to keep formerly homeless people housed, but they rarely turn over to accommodate the newly homeless or those chronically homeless folks who are still living unsheltered on our streets. So for those who are still unsheltered, those living on the streets, many of those with medical and behavioral health needs, and many of those living in very dangerous and violent situations, one of the sobering realities is the steady, and as we can see, recently rising, number of folks who are dying on the streets in Sacramento. And I believe in a few weeks, we'll be getting the update from the 2016 numbers to continue this conversation. And this is a little busy, but what I wanted to say here is, while the data is interesting and informative, and certainly we want to have evidence-based approach, homelessness, we have to remember, is a very personal experience and one that can't necessarily be boiled down to numbers solved with, you know, one singular plan or addressed by a singular government entity. The city has been working on a variety of programs aimed to address the root causes and symptoms of homelessness for quite a while. This only goes back to the time that I started at the city, which is just about three years now. And while this is not a comprehensive accounting of all the times the council has discussed this issue, what this does is pulls out some of the most significant actions that have helped to lead us to where we are today and with the recommendations you're considering. Oh, and this doesn't show up very well, I apologize. So the activities and discussions in the previous slides, those things you've been engaged in over the past three years, in general can fit into supporting or enhancing one of these four very general categories. I know the mayor had five, I've sort of squished two of them into one. The first is prevention and diversion, essentially keeping people out of homelessness. One of the most victimizing things somebody can experience is falling into homelessness, and we need to do everything we can to prevent folks from ever experiencing that trauma. Second, assertive outreach and engagement. Again, focusing on those most chronic and most hard to serve, and important to meet people where they're at with multitude of solutions that address their particular needs. Third, emergency shelter and triage, which we're going to talk about tonight. Again, offering low-barrier shelter and services, always with a focus on ending the person's experience of homelessness, pointing them towards housing and services, and not just on a safe place to be. And finally, the ultimate goal is, of course, permanent housing and ongoing supportive services, including the behavioral health and substance abuse services that the mayor touched on. And so tonight's conversation will seek approval of actions that really do support all of these pieces in one way or another. So recognizing that housing alone cannot solve homelessness for many of those people suffering on our street, the council approved a city implementation of the state's whole-person care program, which we have branded to be called Pathways to Health and Home here in Sacramento. This innovative program will allow the city and our partners in the healthcare, housing, and advocacy arenas to fund intensive outreach and engagement, to wrap around case management services and housing supports, with an ultimate goal of improving the health outcomes and reducing homeless, and reducing homelessness in our city. With our consultant partners from Transform Health, we have been hard at work over the past three months to get this program ready for a full launch in the next three or four months in early 2018. So I'm going to give you a little update as to where we're at. The Pathways Project is by design, a departure from what I would say is business-as-usual for a city in terms of addressing homelessness. Standing this program up is a very big lift, but we're grateful for the partnerships that we have with so many of our healthcare, housing, and other community partners, many of whom are here today, to support this effort. Starting in July, we formed a team of city staff, consultants, and community partners to rethink service delivery for those most vulnerable, frequent users of crisis services. And this diagram simplifies and provides a broad-brush overview of the work the team has been engaged in to develop the infrastructure for the Pathways Program. I can't emphasize how generic this is. Really, these folks are meeting every day, multiple times a day, and large groups, small groups, so this really doesn't do justice with the amount of work they've been doing. On the communications end, I'm very happy to announce, we have a live website, and I would invite everybody to visit it. It's www.p2hh.org, where the community can engage in the work we are doing. Also, very critical to the success of this program in the long term is to have a strong and engaged government committees in developing the infrastructure, all of which informs the service, I'm sorry, developing data infrastructure, all of which informs the service delivery. There's still a lot of work to be done, but tonight we are asking your approval to launch what we are calling the early engagement component of the project. So early engagement is intended to be limited-term contracts for services to help us build the program infrastructure, provide a light level of service in the community, refine our target population, and identify strengths within our partners. Early engagement will launch on November the 1st, in just a week and a half, with a critical partnership with Sacramento Covered, a community-based nonprofit who acts as a guide to connect people in our community with the medical care and the coverage that they need. Sacramento Covered, while historically a healthcare organization, has recently expanded their services to include behavioral health expertise and outreach and navigation services. In the past three months, they've been partnering with our Sacramento Police Impact Team to really understand the on-the-ground work that we're doing to address homelessness specifically. So for the early engagement phase, Sacramento Covered will be providing assertive outreach and program referrals. This will be in partnership with Sacramento Steps Forward. Enrollment and eligibility into, into the Pathways Program itself, as well as into Medi-Cal. They'll be providing comprehensive care planning for clients, and they'll be providing connections to housing in partnership with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, a longstanding housing partner in our continuum of care. We anticipate that through this early engagement contract, we'll be able to serve 125 to 250 people, and we will focus first on those unsheltered in the North Sacramento area, both to encourage them to come into the winter triage shelter we're hoping to stand up, and also to connect them with the services and housing while they're there, so that the triage shelter really is a step towards ending their homelessness. In addition to the Sacramento Covered contract, which is in front of you tonight, we'll shortly be bringing to you additional early engagement contracts with one or more of our community clinics to provide care coordination, medical support, and respite beds in this component of the program. So tonight's action marks the start of service delivery, but there are many other actions that will start coming really, really quickly now, as we approach what the state calls program year three of the whole-person care program, starting on January. I should expect to be back sometime in November with additional early engagement contracts. We'll be continuing to work with all of our partners to refine that, the service delivery with the evidence that we find from early engagement. Late this year, we'll begin the public procurement process for additional service partners. We're already working with SHRA, and we look forward to launching some of the housing initiatives the mayor referenced that were shored up earlier this year. We'll be bringing in front of you some additional funding agreements, both for our funding partners, as well as for incentive payments for those who are participating in service delivery. And then, most importantly perhaps, we'll be making our next transfer of funds to the state in early 2018. And this is a really brief And this is a really brief, high-level overview, and I do want to recognize that the Pathways program is evolving almost daily, and we will commit to continual updates, both on our website, and we now have a bi-weekly newsletter, which I'd encourage you all to sign up for. And we look forward to sharing some of the outcomes from the early engagement component with you early in 2018. So while the Whole Person Care program sets the framework for some of the intensive and comprehensive solutions, really housing and services, there, as the mayor said, there still remains a need to address the immediate crisis of unsheltered homelessness, and to provide safety and security for those who are suffering on the streets, as well as to address the community impacts of unsheltered homelessness, and also to provide places for folks to land and to then move on into permanent housing. We are recommending a variety of sheltering options tonight. There are three options now in front of you, ranging from financially supporting some of our existing shelters, as well as standing up a new winter shelter program. I do want to emphasize that regardless of the location, or the size, or the partner operator, all of the sheltering that the city is proposing moving forward will be supported and characterized as a triage shelter, with services onsite that are oriented towards housing outcomes and connected to broader programs, most notably our Whole Person Care program. So this is where I start going out of order. Item 25 requests the approval of funding to continue our existing support of both the Salvation Army Center of Hope Shelter and the Volunteers of America A Street Men's Shelter. As you'll recall, the city first committed to these, funding these programs last year in partnership with Sutter Health, in an effort to open them 24/7. Tonight's action is the second year of funding for these two shelters, using city dollars now matched by our Whole Person Care program. And in addition to providing safe 24/7 sheltering, both of these programs are now active engagement and referral partners for Whole Person Care, and they've been working to increase access and partnering with our city outreach and impact teams. It's important to note that our funding is in addition to other federal dollars that both of these shelters receive, administered by SHRA, as well as county dollars and private funding. Item 26, we're very excited about, is the, request the approval for $143,750 funding agreement to support a new 20-bed youth triage shelter operated by Wind Youth Services. We first discussed this with you about a month ago, when we knew that Wind was seeking some state funding. We are happy to report that Wind was successful in getting that grant from the California Office of Emergency Services, and we are providing the requisite matching dollars. This shelter will be operated out of an existing Wind facility located in District 5, and will provide 20 beds for homeless youth ages 18 to 24 who have been victims of crime. As with all of the other Wind programs, the shelter will be low-barrier, allowing people to shelter with their pets and possessions, and will offer an array of services to the guests. The shelter is slated to open as soon as the Wind Counseling Center relocates to their new property. Finally, item number 24, the proposed winter triage shelter located at 1900 Railroad Drive. Last winter, as you will recall, we opened a series of winter warming centers that, while were represented much more than we had done in years past, still left some gaps in terms of access and service delivery. As we work towards the development of permanent triage shelters in our city, we are committed to providing the efficacy of a true low-barrier, service-rich triage shelter. The proposed site at 1900 Railroad is ideal, in that first, it's available this winter and has the capacity to quickly stand up a single-site winter shelter. While the bid document that we released suggested that the site could serve up to 300 people, given the input of the community, as well as the county's choice to operate their 100-bed winter sanctuary program with rotating churches, the city is recommending reducing the maximum capacity at the railroad site to 200 people. We've also worked with the operator, the proposed operator, Volunteers of America, to develop both a ramp-up and ramp-down period, so there won't be 200 people on day one or on day 120. This shelter will allow us the opportunity to create a true triage shelter and quickly move people from the streets into shelter, and then ultimately into housing and services. Working with our Whole Person Care outreach team, we've committed to focusing outreach and engagement to people experiencing homelessness in the immediate vicinity of the shelter. The site will not be a walk-up site. The access will be via outreach and transportation from police, fire, or outreach teams only. The site will include 24/7 staffing, as well as case management and housing specialists, again, with a goal of not just being a temporary shelter where you're safe and protected from the elements, but a step towards permanent housing. Notably, we also still have aspirations and hope to pilot an employment program out of the shelter. Myself, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Schneer, on Friday, are accompanying the Volunteers of America staff to visit their shelter in Reno, where they run a similar type of program, which is an education and employment program that connects folks in their shelter experiencing homelessness to public works jobs to beautify and clean up the community.
So Emily, are you done with the winter triage description, or do you have another slide?
Only thing I have is a little bit on the operator, and then I'm...
Do that on the operator, then I want to make a comment before you proceed with the rest of your presentation.
I think I'm just about done. That's it. So while opening this winter shelter is a very tall order in the next few weeks, I'm confident that we have the best partner we can have in Volunteers of America. Amani Swears and Leo, I believe, McFarland, yes, are both here tonight, and would be welcome, any questions. I just want to share a little bit, Volunteers of America is well-known to you and hopefully to most of the community. They operate 53 homeless programs in Northern California and Northern Nevada, including 15 emergency shelters, seven of which are here in Sacramento. They were our partner in standing up our winter warming centers last year and did an amazing job with little to no notice, and we had a successful, a successful program, given the parameters. They also, as I mentioned, are the current operator of a very similar 24/7 triage shelter in Reno, the one we'll be visiting, that accommodates up to 300 guests daily and also has an employment component. The last thing I want to talk about was community mitigation. There's been a lot of conversation about impacts to the community and making sure that we are a good neighbor to the community. Those things which are currently included in the Volunteers of America scope include development with the community of a good neighboring policy, provision of onsite security and onsite security cameras. Again, as I said, commitment to outreach and services with both the Impact Team, as well as our Whole Person Care Outreach Team, leading up to the opening and then ongoing through operations in the North Sacramento community. And as I said, there's a proposal to develop a homeless employment program within the shelter to respond to additional impacts in the community, and I believe there's some discussion, perhaps from you, Mr. Mayor, about some increased community security. This is your cue for discussion.
Thank you very much, Emily. So you've done a great job laying all of this out, and of course, we've had several community meetings with the residents, leadership and residents in North Sacramento. A week ago Monday, I believe, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, and I were out there. There were several hundred people, and it was a robust discussion. And I know that there had been a number of conversations. I've been working very closely with Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Harris. Let's recognize one thing. I just think it's important to say that this site is actually Councilmember Harris's district.
What impacts are there?
Excuse me. If you're going to shout out, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Why? You need to tell the truth.
Please, you need to leave. Thank you, ma'am. You need to leave. Thank you.
I am a resident of this district, and I'm entitled to speak.
You're entitled to speak, you're entitled to speak when your, when your turn is called. I'll let you stay if you, I'll let you stay if you'll just...
I promise to not be rude like you, yet.
See you later. Bye-bye. You're out.
I'll teach you.
You're out. You're out. See you later. Thank you. Let me, let me, let me, let me concur to you what I had to say here. You know what? Stay and participate. I don't care. It's fine. Go ahead. I'm not going to take the bait. It's fine. All right. This issue is way too important to allow the little things to get in the way, and you'll have an opportunity to speak, as will everybody. So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, and Ms. Howkin has laid out, I think, our commitment to make sure that this winter triage site is actually good for the community. I was saying, I'm sorry, that the location is in Councilmember Harris's district, and yes, it affects the residents of North Sacramento. Of course it does. But as Councilmember Harris pointed out to me, I'm not stealing your thunder here, there are also, you know, North Gate Boulevard and the River District will also be affected by, by this site and, and this location. But primarily, the concern has been expressed by the residents of District 2, and so we've had a lot of conversation back and forth, and in consultation, mostly with Councilmember Warren on mitigation, but also Councilmember Harris, I want to suggest the following, and I'd be willing to make this part of the motion when it comes to winter triage, that in addition to the onsite security, which will be required as part of the contract with VOA, and with the specifics that Ms. Howkin spoke about a moment ago, I want to also suggest that we add a total of $375,000 for additional security and maintenance beyond just the, the site itself. And I want to tell you how I suggest we break this down, and by the way, this is all in consultation with our police chief and with our city manager. $175,000 to the police department for two full-time additional police officers for the four to five months that the winter triage site will be in effect. Two, $200,000 for the Del Paso P-Bid and/or other appropriate D2 neighborhood organizations for security and maintenance. To the degree that the resources go to the P-Bid, and that ought to be done in consultation with Councilmember Warren, the P-Bid will have to work both inside and outside the P-Bid boundaries, because the impacts you're concerned about go beyond just the P-Bid boundaries. So that's $200,000, a total of $375. In addition, Councilmember, under the leadership of Councilmember Warren, and with a community-driven process, the council set aside $2 million in one-time funding for economic development back in our mid-year budget. Might have been in the actual fiscal year budget. Excuse me. I want to suggest that we would allocate $500,000 to the North Sacramento community for economic development as part of what we want to begin doing anyways throughout the entire city, which is to invest in neighborhood-based economic development, would be $500,000. So that's a total of $875. In addition, a reporting and information package would be created collaboratively with the community to diligently show the shelter's impacts, okay? In other words, we can't just be anecdotal, as leaders have said to me. We need to actually develop a week-to-week way to, to assess the progress. Five, an ad hoc group would be formed to consider issues during the startup and operation of the shelter with representatives from the VOA, the city, Old North Sac, Dixie Anne, Woodlake, Gardenland, Neralto, Del Paso Boulevard Partnership, North Sac Chamber of Commerce, Twin Rivers School District, Sacramento Valley Conservancy, and the Woodlake and Riverhaven Mobile Home Parks, so that we've got a community collaborative working with the city from the get-go. And finally, and you made this point, but it's worth reiterating, because one of the tests here, and I will stipulate to this, especially as we evaluate this and make a later decision on permanent triage, is whether or not this improves homelessness in North Sacramento. And so North Sac residents must get priority at the winter shelter, since that's where it's going to be located. And we would provide dedicated outreach teams for that community. So those are the elements. Dedicated outreach to North Sac, security and maintenance at $375,000, in addition to the onsite security, half a million dollars for community-driven economic development, reporting and information package on a weekly basis, and the ad hoc group comprised of the diverse leadership of the district. I would like Councilmember Warren or Harris, when they make the motion, to please add these, add these conditions as, as stipulations, and as the public comes up to comment, I hope you will take into account these, these suggested amendments as you state your position. Okay? Let's move on to the next issue.
No, that, that concludes my comments. I did want to just note that we have a lot of people here, but in particular, we have three new partnerships contemplated in these actions, and so there are representatives from Wind, Sac Covered, and Volunteers of America, should you have any questions about the three new proposals that we're considering.
Okay. Very, very good. So, members, do you want to hear from the public first before you speak, or Councilmember Warren and, and Harris specifically, do you want to go before the public testament?
Yeah. We'll go after the public.
Okay. I'll call on you about 10:30 tonight. Okay. 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 Let it, let it, let us be, and we have 50-some-odd people signed up. I mean, so here's the deal. You can take a maximum of two minutes, but I'm going to ask you to do 90 seconds. That's what I'm going to ask. Okay? And if you can do less, I'd appreciate, or even 60 seconds, especially if it's the me-tos. The other way you could do it, those who are organized in, in opposition, you want to organize yourselves, if you wanted to do that, I'd give, you know, three people a half an hour, if that's the way you wanted to do it. I'm just offering. It's not, just, just offering. Okay? If anyone wants to be heard, I'm going to ask you to do 60 or 90 seconds, okay? So let's go.
Our first speaker is Rob Kurth, and then Ryan Lufborough.
Three. We'll do three.
Following Ryan is Hannah Ozian.
Okay. Mr. Kurth, Councilmember Kurth.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Thank you for this chance tonight, and for honoring my service previously on the council that I get to speak first. Just a few short weeks ago, we were greeted with a very shocking proposal, I have to tell you, to, one, locate a winter shelter at the entry to our American River Parkway, and to, two, put a triage facility on one of our safest routes to school, to the Woodlake School. And so I have to thank you for making that proposal, because it's been a great community organizer. It's brought all of us together around an issue that we truly deeply believe in. You know, for us in North Sac, it's, in many ways, been a lot of years, if not much, and when things come forward, they're usually an afterthought that probably don't help us much in the long run. There's been great intentions, but they somehow never work out. We need to be honest, there are shelters that are great for their communities. We've seen them in other cities. And there are, of course, shelters that somehow are not so great for either the residents or the community that is their host and eventually eats it alive. And so what we're looking at was looking at something that was pretty bad, and we know after many years being in North Sac, what was probably headed our way. So I want to, 43 seconds. But after what was probably a very bad start to community process, somehow we got things turned around. So I want to thank you, mayor. I want to thank you, Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Harris, for putting up with the thorough tarring and feathering at our community meetings, but indeed, listening to what we had to say about how to make sure that this is one of those great shelters that's a benefit to the community that's in.
I'm going to give you another two minutes.
Five seconds?
Because I think you're speaking, you, you, I'm doing, I'm sorry, that's, that's the discretion of the chair. I want to give you, I want you to finish.
I'll finish right up.
It's okay. Take, take two more minutes.
So these, you know, we can always look back and think of better ways to have gotten things done, but the key thing is that we get them right in the end. And so what you've got set up and proposed here before us is very likely, and in fact, I think worthy, taking a worthy bet on it, a worthy opportunity, to have one of these shelters that is a benefit to our community. You can't be in the American River Parkway near North Gate Boulevard and Del Paso Boulevard without, you know, seeing camps all the time. You can't be there without seeing really tremendous piles of garbage. The county works hard to clean them up, but it doesn't really make it. Pick a neighborhood anywhere around this shelter, and there are people sleeping outside tonight. And so that these could be our people, and the people from North Sacramento moving into this shelter, is a huge benefit to us. I'd also like to say that it's, it's always been difficult to find in shelter debates where honest information lies, and so I particularly appreciate the offer to create this type of information, a diligent reporting of facts that go on in and around the shelter and in the surrounding community, so that next year, when we have this debate again, in whatever neighborhood it's in, we can come more informed about what the city of Sacramento has learned how to do in running a good shelter. And I guess really, in closing, you know, if you pick a round number... And I guess really, in closing, you know, if you pick a round number, and we have 3,000 homeless in our community, and this shelter can house 200, and we've added a few more people in other shelters around the community, a good number, a positive number, but is it a long way from reaching the goal of having no homeless in our community? For us to get there, it's critical that there be more of these shelters. They have to be located throughout the city, throughout each community plan area. Because only then can we add up the numbers to make it happen. And there is, most communities are far stronger than us politically. They have the ability to fight these things off. I think you all know that. And so for this to succeed in other places, it has to succeed here first.
Yep.
If we can create an indelible example of how to run a shelter and how it can benefit the community that it's in, it'll be far easier to open these when people say, wait a minute, I'm tired of having folks sleeping in the neighborhood, let's open a door for them. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob, you're in favor. Thank you.
I'm in favor of this project, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Thank you very much.
Ryan Lufborough, Hannah Ozian, and then John Creets.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, Ryan Lufborough, CEO of SACNO Steps Forward. Proud to say that we're in line with your goals to end homelessness, not, instead of example here in Sacramento. I think it's important we stay on track with that goal. We ultimately know that the answer is affordable housing to make all of our best-laid plans result in having individuals housed at a scale that would show reduction on the street. Given the fact that we have about a 3% vacancy rate currently in the rental market, and our rents are the fastest rising in the nation, especially compared to our wages, we're at a crisis moment that justifies this response to add both the outreach as well as the shelter systems that we at the Continuum of Care, managing over 34 programs, will utilize for the placement of individuals into housing. This is the time it has to happen, and we cannot back down on this. So on behalf of SACNO Steps Forward and the Continuum of Care, we fully support these efforts, and we look forward to our ongoing partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan, you're a key piece of this. Thank you. Next. That was 60 seconds, by the way, 60 seconds, please. Let's do it.
Hannah Ozian, John Creets, and then Darrell Rutherford.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Ozian, and I am the Director of Friendship Park, the day shelter for adults at Loaves and Fishes. Each day, along with my wonderful colleagues and volunteers, we welcome hundreds of individuals into our park so they may seek some respite from their incredibly difficult lives on the streets. Our services are very simple but necessary. A place to go to the bathroom, to take a shower, a life-sustaining meal, and a place to simply be, a place where they are welcome, which unfortunately is difficult to come by. So in respect to these issues, my team and I are on the front lines. Not only do we understand the obstacles that homeless individuals face, but we know the members of our community by name. It is an incredible honor to work to restore their dignity and to remind them of their value. So there are joys in my job, and there is also immense sadness, from bearing witness to the intense suffering that the disabled and elderly population face, to the most difficult, the calls I get from the coroner's office letting us know that our guests have passed away. I'll quickly note some recent calls.
Hannah, you've got 40 seconds left, so please, are you in favor of the approach that we're taking?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. One of our male guests, he was 48 years old, he suffered from intense mental illness, and he was alone, he suffered a seizure, and was found on the banks of the river. Another call I got just last week was a 42-year-old man who also suffered from mental illness. He committed suicide and was found hanging outside. And another, one of our regular guests, was a victim of a hit-and-run accident and suffered injuries and died a week later. So unfortunately, this list goes on and on, and with the winter coming and the size of the community, the deaths are inevitable.
Thank you.
But tonight, we have an opportunity.
You're in favor of the proposal?
I am in favor, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's what we needed to hear.
Next speaker is John Creets, and then Darrell Rutherford.
I don't believe it. I just don't believe it. I want something to buy out here. I don't believe it.
Take your time, sir.
I was going to talk about one thing, but I think, now that I've heard what you guys have to say, I kind of have another direction, I might forgo it this. You know, one thing that I've noticed throughout the homeless people that I lived with when I was out there on the river, they can be amazingly resourceful, they have to be. Necessities for mother, right? So they come up with these ideas and these inventions. Has everybody here seen the television show Shark Tank? I'm wondering, somehow in this employment development situation that you've been talking about, you might include some sort of Shark Tank in that, to try to find some people with some good ideas and develop these things, you know? In our society at large, we're finding that robots have replaced a lot of jobs, and to create new products that we could put out there, this might be a way to help everybody. It'll make an asset out of something that we now consider a liability for homeless. And this is what I've always felt, is that there's a resource there that we haven't tapped. So I guess really, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell Rutherford and then Natalie Cuffel.
Mayor, councilmembers, Darrell Rutherford, Executive Director of Sacramento Housing Alliance. Pretty tough follow-up with John there, you know, speaking from the heart. It's a tough situation. We see it all. I've been in this field for nearly 15 years now, and it's been very disheartening to kind of see the lack of action that's taken place over this time. But where I do find hope is that over the last year, year and a half, there's been a lot more action done than what I've seen in 15 years combined. And I think we're on the right course. I think that there needs to be more effort put into this. I see the state with action, passing a package of housing bills that are going to trickle down and assist our communities in a number of ways. I see councilmembers and the mayor working hard to find ways to address the renter protection issue, to find new sources of funding for affordable housing, and I'm really thankful that this discussion is taking place. What we do need to see is more temporary action until we're able to get to the more permanent supportive-type housing that we need to see. This shelter option is in the right direction. A triage center such as this has proven to be successful in a number of ways. And to be able to shelter individuals on a temporary basis, even through the winter months, I think is going to benefit the city in the long term. Mayor, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Warren, your press conference today, I greatly appreciate it. I just wanted to do symbolically, I'm here to roll up our shirt sleeves here today because you know the Sacramento Housing Alliance is here to support you in your efforts. We are willing to work and do the hard conversations with you, with the community, with our members. We have a board that is dedicated to addressing this issue. We have many board members who are dedicated to address this issue, and I implore you to rally us, to bring you out, to bring us out into the community, assist you with these efforts, so that we can figure out some long-term solutions. With that, Measure U is on the table. We need to make sure affordable housing is a component of that, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Got it.
Next speaker is Natalie Cuffel, and then David Flag.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm here tonight as a resident of North Sacramento, and my views do not represent the views of my employer, any boards or committees I serve on, including the Woodlake Neighborhood Association. I previously worked at a homeless service provider for four years, and I remember being shocked as a naive 22-year-old that emergency shelters weren't like emergency rooms at the hospital. No matter how much you were in need of services, they were not guaranteed to you. And every night in Sacramento, I know that we turn away hundreds of people that are seeking services, and that needs to change. Despite that view, I was not originally in favor of this proposal. I studied the triage model that was developed in San Francisco. I actually went on a tour of a facility with Darrell Roberts. And what I was struck by is the idea that in order to have this low-barrier shelter, it needs to be a small community, and it needs to be drawn from the surrounding community. So North Sacramento homeless, stay in North Sacramento. And they're served in a small group where they don't have to have as many rules, and they are treated with more dignity. I'm concerned that some of these proposals were trying to fit as many people as possible in a warehouse just to get our bed numbers up, and that is inappropriate. These are human beings, they are not farm animals. I don't want to hear any more about economies of scale. We need to think about...
But they're out in the cold. I mean, now they're out in the cold.
Oh, I definitely, now that the shelter is 200 beds instead of 300 beds, I can support that. But as we move forward and we look about expanding this model, I hope we'll consider smaller shelters throughout the city, instead of trying to put as many people as possible in one place. So that being said, with the changes that I've heard tonight, I am in support of the proposal, but given that we are in need this winter, but I hope that there will be changes made as we think about permanent shelters.
Thank you, Natalie. Thank you.
David Flag, and then Howard Lawrence.
So I guess I'm the first one to actually oppose this ordinance or this proposal.
You're not with Mr. Kurth on this?
No, he's just sitting next to me. I really didn't want to get into...
So, wait a minute, hold on, I'm going to let you speak, but the $200,000 P-bid for maintenance, this is what, I want to just be clear, Mr. Flag, you can say whatever you want, but this is the stuff you've been asking Councilmember Warren and us to provide.
I still don't like the whole proposal.
Okay, just want to be clear.
No, but...
Both ways here.
That's part of the problem, though, is that there is mitigation. I don't like what's being proposed here, because it just doesn't work. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different things within this contract that I've really outlined. Let me just, you know, kind of go through a number of different things. First of all, in the staff report, the open bid process was open for 16 days. Who, who, who does that within the city?
VOA you're talking about?
No, the bid process, the opening from September 20th to October 6th. That was the whole period in which you could apply for the VOA, I mean, to become a bidder. One bidder applied.
You're a great provider.
I know, but one? What does that tell you about how the process works? The second thing is that, in the staff report, it talks about the fact that this facility will have no impact on the American River Parkway? I mean, come on, it's a half, you know, it's a half a mile.
No, you got to finish.
Well, I think it's really funny is that in this particular contract, you mention the lessor, right? But you don't tell who, you know, who that is. They're going to offer free rent for 151 days. What are they getting back for that? What are they getting for that? I mean, seriously. The second thing too, which, or not the second thing, but is, in the contract, you talk about a code of conduct. What is that code of conduct? What is that going to be laid out? The three is, or, the other point is that the length of the agreement, on page 12, page 20, and page 40, you've got three different periods. So I need that clarified. The last point, or the number of last points, is the fact that I need some kind of a matrix that shows exactly what, how you want to do that.
Thank you.
Wait, can I just?
No, you're trying to... She was trying to read names of people who...
Excuse me, you're not shouting out from the audience. I'm going to, that's not the way this works.
One more point.
I interrupted, just take 30 more seconds. Go ahead.
Okay, as...
You interrupted her as well. I'll leave, but you interrupted her as well. She was reading...
Excuse me, you need to leave. Okay.
One more point, okay? You talk about the fact that if these individuals...
Those are the people that died. They committed suicide and fell on the street.
Excuse me, you're not...
Can I just, just one more point?
Make one last point, please.
Okay. You talk about the fact that if these people have options and they don't follow through, then they can be removed. You guys are in a court battle dealing with the camping ordinance. I mean, where, where are we with that?
Okay, you made your point. Thank you.
All right.
Next.
Howard Lawrence, and then Kevin Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm a representative of Sacramento area congregations together. My colleague, Mike Jaskey, will give exposition regarding the specific items. Could tell you that act stands in support of the proposals as presented tonight. I'd like to focus my remarks on two issues. We have talked to this council and to other governmental agencies in this community for years about the need to establish a strong functioning triage center. And we're happy to see that we're beginning to take some small steps in that direction. Without establishing this type of function, we can never begin to turn the tide against ending homelessness. The second thing that we'd like to talk with you about is the need for a comprehensive plan by this entire community to end homelessness. We commend the city for taking the leadership position and being more or less the point of the sphere. But we all need to come together and bring the city, the county, and all our other regions together into one comprehensive plan and one legitimate community effort to end homelessness in Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard.
Kevin Carter, and then Robert Copeland.
My name is Kevin Carter, and I'm the organizer of the Poor People's Campaign. And tonight, I am highly disgusted because of how people have been treated in here. This is about humanities. I've been out here since 2009. I have a bad heart now. I've sacrificed for the poor, because I am the poor. One of the things that I want to say about this program that you've put up here on the board to illustrate, it's only good for the moment. It's like fleeing a coin to a beggar. It's ethic is only creates a beggar. Because at the end of the day, when the funding runs out, what do you do from there? Because none of you folks will be sitting up there, you'll be gone. And it'll be another city council trying to figure it out again. What we need to do is get with the county and the city, and get together and create a poverty sales tax, to where we're investing in one another through blind faith and progress that represents the footsteps of our state capital for change and for change's sake, so that we don't go through this again. The elements right now are at the fierce urgencies of now. The homeless is on trial right now. Trial because they cannot sleep. And let you know today that those that cannot sleep, that causes shortness to their lives. And every lives matter.
Yes.
And the lives that you are illustrating today to do something for must continue. We don't want payback, we want get back.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Joan Burke, and then Noel Cameron.
I would say something, the plan that Emily Halcon proposed and Mayor Steinberg attitude is still incomplete.
Okay.
Because how are you going to prevent people from becoming homeless that are just this close to become homeless? There's no plan for that. And where this housing is going to come from, for the Housing Choice vouchers? Are they going to come, that's going to come out of thin air? We need more housing now, that's affordable. And why isn't every district here in a surrounding county, in Yolo County, Placer, El Dorado, well, they join us in coming up with a plan to end the homelessness? Can, can, nobody, I don't hear nothing, I hear crickets. You fumble the football, as I like to say. Or as our former Mayor Kevin Johnson was, passed out of bounds.
Okay.
He did nothing for the homeless. At least Mayor Steinberg's trying to do something. It may not be perfect, but he's trying to do something. Now, why was Emily Halcon not at the Capitol today? Because there was an issue, and homeless came up several times. You're not doing your jobs. None of you are doing your jobs effectively. Get on with it. As far as this shelter, I like to see it in all districts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joan Burke, and then Noel Cameron.
Good evening, Joan.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to briefly thank you for what you're doing. You're not mandated, I'm sorry, you're not mandated to do this. You're making a choice to help the least amongst us this winter. Thank you for doing this. I also particularly want to thank Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Harris, who have welcomed shelters into their districts. And I think the process that you have gone through to meet community concerns and also make sure this shelter is a path to housing for people is exemplary, and I look forward to the results. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Noel Cameron, then Elena Perez White.
All right, good evening, council members, and I guess the mayor's behind the stage there. I'm Noel Cameron, I'm the executive director of Loaves and Fishes. I'm here in support of the proposed 24/7 winter triage and permanent triage shelters at Railroad Drive and hopefully Evergreen and Arden. Our current reality is that homelessness is everywhere. Shelter in the winter months is critical, and what has been proposed is a significant step in the right direction. I applaud the city in taking this step, and it's my hope that these steps lead eventually to permanent housing in the community. And I encourage other nonprofits, the faith community, and government entities to also come to the table in coordinating and leveraging services in an effort to move everyone experiencing homelessness to a home. Thank you. I'll keep it brief.
Very much.
Next speaker is Elena Perez White, and then Flor Griselle, and then Mike Jask.
Good afternoon. I'd first like to start by thanking you guys for adding the community mitigation items on this. We really do appreciate it. Last week, I recommended that we all work together and sit down and form a committee. And I'd like to reinforce that it's really essential for the city to work actively with a North Sacramento Committee on Homelessness, that can be comprised of neighborhoods, businesses, and service agencies with individuals who are truly invested in helping develop a solution that will work for North Sacramento and work with you. This step is quintessential to the success of the project, and now is really a truly ideal time to start working together in preparation, as these deadlines are coming, you know, sooner and sooner. There was a forum yesterday in Land Park with a dozen panelists, city, county, SAC PD, other agencies, to discuss the homelessness issue and provide answers to written questions. One of the outcomes of this meeting was that many of those in attendance supported a shelter in their area. I would like to work more like that. Part of the reason that we're all here today is that we have not had an opportunity to engage you to that point. We have not had an organized approach to work with the city, and we really want to work with you to determine all of these aspects that will work for us. Mr. Warren, you have a lot of attention on you tonight, but I really want to look at all of the other districts' representatives here and say to you all that you all must identify areas, locations, and capacities for all of their shelters before establishing anything permanent, not just a 70-person floor and road one. There are over 3,500 homeless in Sacramento, and given the current scope of your proposed shelters, simple division tells us that you'll need 10 or more to address the issue successfully, or 35 shelters with a manageable 100-person capacity. All districts need their own shelters, and it is your job as our representatives, and I'm not looking at Alan Warren, I'm looking at the rest of you, to represent every, it's every single one of your jobs to represent every single one of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Elena Perez White, and you have my contact information.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you because of the clapping, but thank you very much.
The next speaker is Flor Griselle, and then Mike Jask.
I'll talk real fast. So I'm opposed to having mega shelters for the homeless in District 2, District 3, North SAC, whatever area you want to talk about, the neighborhood. And I was told by a representative of the city council that this area was chosen for homeless shelters because, they said, they're already here. However, I thought the denser population was in Midtown and Downtown, which led me to feel as if they weren't wanted there, and there was, no one looked for facilities there for them, so instead they want to remove them into North SAC. There are about 150 homeless people in North SAC, but now for the winter triage, I think you're talking about transporting people from, I don't know, Midtown, Downtown, I don't know where from, into this small area, and I really don't understand the logic. As far, as far, I'm talking too fast now. As far as the winter shelter goes, when people are in there and they want to leave, what will you do? Or if they don't want to go, what will you do? And if someone's asked to leave because of their behavior, then what happens? Do you just send them out into the neighborhood and the street? I don't know if that's been thought out. I am very proud to live in District 2 in North Sacramento, but I am concerned by what the city is doing to an area that's already trying to be revitalized. It's trying to revitalize itself, and it's my understanding that 40% of the city's marijuana cultivation is in North SAC, 48 pot permits in District 2, I could be wrong. The lowest income is in North SAC, a psychiatric hospital's on its way, and now we have mega shelters for the homeless, and I just think it's too much. And I feel like North SAC is an outcast, an experiment in governance, a landfill. That's my opinion, coming from the outside looking in, because I live there now. Anyway, but Mayor, you said that you were dedicated to bringing more economic opportunities to Sacramento, and I hope you also meant North SAC. And to me, pot cultivation and mega shelters are not positive economic opportunities for the area. And you also said in the past that you didn't want homeless segregated to one part of town, and you talked about a fair share approach to the homeless population, but I'm asking, is fair for whom? It doesn't seem fair to me.
Thank you so much.
Not, no, I want to go a little bit more.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Other districts are silent, and I would like to hear from other people, and it makes me wonder why everybody else is saying, "Well, it's in the north, let's just be very, very quiet."
So, just so, hold on, just, I'm sorry. Just so we're clear on the time that's allowed for every speaker. We have, how many speakers tonight?
I have 52 speakers.
So we have 52 speakers, which means that we're gonna be here for approximately two hours for speakers. You can make it three hours by continuing to go over, so I'm asking everybody to be considerate, take your two minutes or less, and then we may all be able to get home and watch the news tonight. Okay? So you can go, please.
So Mike Jask, and then Susie Dotson.
Please don't yell from the audience, please.
I'm Vice Mayor Carr, Mayor Steinberg, and council members. My name is Mike Jasky, and I represent the Homeless Local Organizing Committee of Sacramento Act, a multi-ethnic, multi-faith social justice organization. You heard representatives of the Baha'i community express their way of saying, "All human beings deserve dignity and compassion." And the Christian tradition, and the Jewish tradition, others, all share that same view. We've previously testified before the county and city in the support of expanded emergency shelter capacity to bring relief to the thousands of people who are in need of that compassion and support, and today, we support all five of the contracts that are still before you tonight. It's well-understood that some of the local community oppose this location because they fear adverse impacts. They don't know there are going to be adverse impacts, they fear them. But we believe the city has developed and can expand safeguards to minimize the impacts on the local community, and Mayor Steinberg rattled off today five items that would expand upon that mitigation. Despite these neighborhood concerns, and even to the extent there are some limited neighborhood impacts, helping the people who are homeless in our midst outweighs these fears and these smaller impacts. We understand that this incremental capacity is not nearly enough to deal with all of the 2,000 people or more who are currently unsheltered. People who are unsheltered. When the city finds the funds, or the county finds the funds to identify additional locations, it's clear that greater outreach with the local community is going to be necessary. So we ask that you go ahead, adopt these contracts tonight to begin the implementation of whole-person care and to expand this emergency shelter capacity for the wintertime. But it is really important that these near-term implementation processes be consistent with an overall plan that lays out in advance what the various steps are, and so that local neighborhoods can understand and get ready to accept them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Susie Dotson, then Andy Hernandez, and then John Longo.
Okay, I'm gonna go really fast. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, city council members, city manager, Susie Dotson, executive director of Wind Youth Services. I'm simply here to say thank you for your leadership and recognition of the homeless crisis in our city. While there is clearly still a lot of work to be done, we are thrilled to be opening 20 more shelter beds in District 5. Let's be clear, it's a different district for young people in Sacramento. We continue to believe that with strong leadership and ongoing political will, we can end youth homelessness in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Hernandez, John Longo, and then McWorthy.
Andy?
Hi.
So, just for a second. So when your name is called, it's okay to line up, and I think we can get through this a little bit faster if we do so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Andy Hernandez, I'm a resident of the Woodlake neighborhood in North Sacramento. Since this plan was announced last month, I have been steadfastly opposed to it. I think Councilmember Warren can attest to the fact that I've sent more than a few not-so-placent letters over the last month. Sorry about that. Most of my concerns have largely centered around the impact that this site could cause in my community and how the city will work to mitigate those impacts. After hearing the mayor's comments, I feel that my concerns have largely been addressed. So, I therefore feel I can, therefore feel that I can, I'm cautiously optimistic that this will not impact us negatively, and could actually help to house the homeless people already present in our community. I think the ad hoc committee representing all parties near the proposed shelter is a great step. I think reducing it from 300 to 200 is also a great step, though I would have rather had it be 100. I think the additional resources for police and security will help tremendously to mitigate any impact that might come up. And I think working with the ad hoc committee to look at all the data transparently so that we can determine for ourselves next spring if this facility ended up being good for the community is also something critical. My one remaining issue that I'd like the council to commit to today is to work with communities like Woodlake in an open and transparent manner in the future, as we begin to discuss any longer-term plan for permanent triage throughout the city. And I do mean throughout the entire city. I want a plan that asks each and every one of you to collaborate on a plan that truly spreads the responsibility for housing the homeless fairly in smaller, rather than larger, facilities throughout the city, rather than concentrating services in a few communities, as has been the policy stated or otherwise for decades. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Longo, McWorthy, and then Elaine Jackson. Is John here? I don't see John. McWorthy?
Come on up.
McWorthy? And following Mr. Worthy is Elaine Jackson.
Good afternoon, panel. When you first look at this, you know something wrong. Suspend competition bidding. People, I don't know where y'all at. Could you get this up on the podium? To what you all are saying now, I spoke to it 36 years ago. How are we here? You will never do what you say you're gonna do. It's pitiful. But one thing jumped out at me is when we, when Mayor Steinberg, you had spoke to black businesses. Why wasn't that spoke to on housing? Why you didn't speak to black businesses on housing? Why did it have to be for drugs? You know, that's a slap in the face. I don't think you think, you should talk to me. You should sit down and have a long conversation with me, because this ain't going right. Then, too, how many days does a person have to be in one of the shelters for that shelter to get paid? These are the things you gotta come out with. How many, you know, somebody gotta know the number of days to get paid. Who gonna be, and when you transition of your health? Somebody gotta know what, who's, the treatment this person. See, the pattern is here, the welfare department is here, so this is another mini welfare in between. You're going to have to give a record, because you will be open up for a lot of lawsuits. So I urge you, Mayor, I'll pay for the dinner. Sit down, and we talk. You need it.
Elaine Jackson, and then Paige Madden.
Can I ask a quick question before I get started?
Please.
Is this shelter gonna be open from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the evening for the homeless to come in and out? Okay, so they will not be coming out of there once they go in. I'm talking about the shelter on Railroad Drive.
Please.
So the shelter is a 24/7 operation, guests are invited and encouraged to stay the whole time. However, they're not locked in, so they, you know, obviously people can come and go. There will be services and activities on-site, and we find that when those happen, people avail themselves of those, especially during the cold winter months, and will mostly choose to stay there.
Well, first, I'd like to say that I think that people here are just concerned about their neighborhood. I went door-to-door speaking to the people who live there, I talked to many, many people. We have a lot of elderly people who live in our district, they're very concerned about this, especially if they are allowed to leave and come out of the shelter. These people do wander around. And also, when you do take people out of our district, more people will come and backfill them. These are transients. So if you don't open a lot of shelters all over, this is gonna occur. You have to open a lot of shelters. San Francisco's model of the navigation centers that have people between 20 people to 120 people are the best model. As a matter of fact, Seattle is now modeling San Francisco's after them with the navigation centers. You guys originally said that you were gonna have 200 to 300 people at this shelter on Railroad Drive. You're not actually reducing the amount of people, you're just saying 200 people now. I believe that it should not have over 100 people. The impact to the neighborhood will be a lot less. You won't have as many mitigation problems in the neighborhood if you do do that. $500,000 is not enough to secure the neighborhood for this. It costs probably several million dollars to actually secure a neighborhood. San Antonio's model, if you've ever looked into that one too, they have a very large facility there. It took them seven years to mitigate the problems in the area because of this. They actually have 40 security personnel there, and full-time police officers there too. So, I know you said you're going to do that, but unless you actually do it, and Sacramento Police Department is also, does not have enough patrolmen at all. I recently called them-
I need to get your final thought. You're on a roll, so I need to get your final thought.
Okay. This police department does not have enough people, I recently called them, two officers showed up, they said that's all the patrolmen they had for the whole North area. How are you gonna come up with the police officers to secure them?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Paige Madden, and then John Fiero.
Good evening, I am Paige Madden, and I am the communications coordinator with Loaves and Fishes. I'm gonna keep it very short. I just want to say thank you for putting all this effort into finding ways to create more shelter access for so many unsheltered homeless in Sacramento. And pretty much honestly, we just need to start somewhere, so thank you.
My name's John Fiero. Question, please. Are they gonna have showers? Are they gonna feed them there, Tulsa? And bathrooms?
Yes.
They will have showers, and they'll have food and bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I live right across from Woodlake Park in Woodlake, and we get a lot of people in the park. We used to have a nice bathroom over there, we had a fire station on the corner. It was a well-maintained building, but since they've closed the fire station down, whoever's in there now does not maintain the property. It's unsightly, and it's right at the center of a big intersection. Anyway, I'm in the park, and we don't have a bathroom. This is gonna be the living room for these people when they're tired of being inside this facility. We're the closest park, they're gonna come and they recreate, they hang out there. We need to have some facilities so they can wash up and be clean. We can't just have, we can't have a place without outhouses. We had two outhouses there, they were tipped over, they were destroyed, and they disappeared, and they don't appear to be coming back. We've got Light Rail Station there that serves over 3,000 people a day. They aren't required. I don't know any other business that's allowed to have 3,000 customers and not have a bathroom. I don't know why we don't have healthcare out there. We've got an epidemic going on, and I really, I have to live out there in the area, and I use the same facilities, I use the same ticket machine at Light Rail, I use the same handles at the grocery store. So if they aren't clean and we're spreading disease, I feel like I'm being put at jeopardy also, and I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Ellison, following Ms. Ellison.
Excuse me. Sorry, you said you'd give me an answer in writing about my bathroom question last week. I don't know if you need my address or not, and the question about-
We have your address on the sheet here. Thank you.
Right?
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kelly Ellison, then Wanda Cleveland, and Michael Rudick, or Michelle, excuse me. Okay, Kelly Ellison, Wanda Cleveland, Michael Rudick. Michael here?
Michelle.
Michelle, excuse me, Michelle.
Who's after Michelle?
And after Michelle is Patty Taylor.
Is Patty Taylor still here?
And after Patty is Michael Hernandez.
Michelle Rudick, Woodlake resident.
Michelle Rudick, Woodlake resident, and currently opposed to the project in that it's already been stated, opposed to the large shelters versus the smaller, more numerous facilities throughout the city. However, I do have an added comment, and this has to do with bathrooms that John just addressed. A different tack here, though. Infrastructure. We've got substandard infrastructure, big time, in Woodlake neighborhood, and I'm hoping that the underground is being addressed. It's sewer, and we need, we have a combined system. You're probably well aware. I know, I'm sure Ellen Warren's very well aware. Combined system that produces nothing but problems. I've had raw sewage backing up into my home regularly, and I mean sewer gases. City's already, utilities is well aware, they're very familiar. They've heard from me at least 10 times in the last 10 years, but I can tell you it's happened probably five times more than that, that they don't hear from me. And in essence, just please, please, improve the infrastructure because the toilets that are going in with the, with the triage unit facility, the, with the affordable housing units, 77, right there next to this problem area, are all going greatly impact the sewage system, and it's a combined storm and sanitary, but it's a sanitary that is absolutely, it has to be addressed. So, please pay attention to that, and I'll look forward to hearing back that it is being included in that utilities. As of two months ago, they're not aware that there are any new improvements proposed. They do address that there's a major issue. So, and it may have been just, again, the rep that I've talked with. I'm always, I'm calling, but I haven't talked with the director there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[710.44][710.44](APPLAUSE)
Next speaker is Patty Taylor, and then Michael Hernandez. Michael? Is Patty here? I do not see Patty. Michael?
Hi, my name's Mike Hernandez. I'm a resident in Woodlake. I was there the last meeting that we had, and unfortunately, I had to leave early, didn't get a chance to ask my questions, so I'm going to pose that question here. Actually, I have two of them. I'm wondering, has there been a social-economic impact report? Any study on this at all? And if there hasn't been, why not? We have communities that will definitely be impacted by this, and our boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard, is going to be impacted. So, if we haven't had one, I encourage to get a independent study before we move forward. The second question I have is, in one other meeting, it was stated that you're not going to go forward if it doesn't turn out right, being that the winter shelter, if it turns out to be a disaster, that you're not going to move forward. But Evergreen, you want to purchase that property, and if you purchase the property and it turns out to not work the way you think it should, now the city is holding on to a piece of property that shouldn't be developed for that.
Can I clarify that, sir?
Please.
Okay. The Evergreen site, which, again, we're not deciding on tonight-
Exactly.
If the city were to acquire it, remember, the vast majority of the, of the parcel is sought to be developed for housing and retail, for housing and retail. The so-called triage center would be on the back end, and it would only be a small portion of it. So, if the city does end up buying-
What are, I'm sorry.
Buying the property, it's a transit, it's a potential transit-oriented development, development, as Councilmember Warren has said, and we would go forward with developing it, with or without the triage center.
But if you, if you purchased the land, and it turns out not to be what you thought it was going to be, and you didn't want to go forward, now isn't the city kind of, you're holding a piece of land? I mean, it's been empty for, I think Mr. Warren said-
There are worse things. We'd put it, we'll put it to good use. I'm confident in it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
My next speaker is Faygo Clark, then Eric Frame, and Amy Pierce.
I'm going to start off by saying it would be nice if there was equal treatment of the speakers, not some speakers getting to go well over four minutes while others are being asked to reduce their time. Or some respect towards the speakers would be nice also. For the most part, while I see this is not a perfect, a perfect set of proposals, I agree with it being better than nothing at this point in time. So far as the allocation of the whole-person grant funding, I wish that you weren't waiving the bidding process because that's how you could ensure that you get better deals and better prices, as well as more participation for potentially even better options. This is becoming a kind of a trend within the city of waiving the bidding process. I don't like that. It's disingenuous. I do love that you're going to be giving more money to youth services, allowing them to be able to better house our homeless youth. Currently, they're the only one that has housing for homeless, or shelters for homeless youth, and while 20 beds is not very much, it's barely even a drop in the bucket, that's still 20 more youth that's not going to be sleeping outside at night. So far as the shelter size, I, too, am not a proponent for believing that warehousing people is the best approach, but considering the fact of the situation where we're losing, I think last year we lost around 89 people, from what I was reading last year's data. So, if we can help save some of those lives by putting them into the shelter while we work towards a better practice where it's not huge like this, but still has the same number of beds spread out evenly throughout the city, even talk to some apartment owners, see if they can subsidize a room for, for a person in each of their complexes, you know, spread it out a little bit so it doesn't become something that will cause a knee-jerk reaction with people. Also, for my final comment, I do want to go with you guys to go see the triage center in SF, if you can allow me that, and I would love to float the idea that we need to do a shelter crisis. It is a shelter emergency. That would lessen a lot of the red tape, as well as free up federal money that can help fund a lot of this, and all you have to do is declare a shelter crisis.
So, Faygo, 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 so when I let you go over 20 seconds, is that okay? Or should I be consistent?
You should be consistent.
Okay, all right. I just want to know. How you doing, Eric?
Frame, and then Amy Pierce.
All right. Where to start? Well, we have 14,000 homeless in Sacramento County. That's based on folks that signed up for food stamps and then registered for homeless. So, that's 14,000. It's going up, as we know, since SacB, the lovely SacB, has said 85% increase in the last couple of years. So, yeah, 500 beds here and there, that's okay. The more shelter, the better. You know what you could do? You could repeal the inhumane and unconstitutional no camping ordinance, and then that way, you can give people back their right to shelter themselves, and then you wouldn't have to worry so much about, you know, providing shelters. I know you guys don't like providing shelter, but if you just give people their right to shelter themselves back, then they could do it themselves. You know, we heard from a brilliant homeless person over here who told us about the innovativeness and the creativity with the homeless community. Allow them to shelter themselves, again, as a human right. The goal is to prevent death, correct? So, a lot, let, Mr. Steinberg, you mentioned ordinances can be changed and shifted. Why don't we just, let's repeal the no camping ordinance for the winter? How about that? So that people don't die on the, on the steps of City Hall, for instance. We do need each and every district to provide shelters because, again, we have 14,000 homeless. Mr. Schneer, I saw you last night. You asked a great question of a roomful of your constituents. You asked them, would you be interested in providing, in a shelter in your neighborhood? And the vast majority raised their hands and said yes. So, I'm looking forward to your proposal for shelters in Oak Park and Land Park. Homeless youth, Sacramento's called the hub of child trafficking by the FBI. I have a bad feeling, you know, call me crazy, but I feel like the city council, as Mr. Worthy has pointed out, for years and years have made homelessness worse-
I need your final thought.
-while child trafficking is swept under the rug.
Eric, I need your final thought.
We've got some bad actors leading this city and pulling your strings, so-
Thank you.
I don't know what to do besides replace you. Let's do that.[1188.41][1188.41](APPLAUSE)
Amy Pierce, and then Kristen Perry.
Hi, my name's Amy Pierce. This is my third, I'm sorry.
The next speaker is Amy Pierce, and then Kristen Perry.
Thank you. Again, my name's Amy Pierce. This is the third council meeting I've attended. I've listened carefully to what you've said about your program, and I have to admit that I am completely and wholly opposed to a mega facility being constructed in any of our neighborhoods. They have time and again been proven to not be successful. One of the things that you said that I thought was interesting at the outset is you think this is an innovative solution to a complex problem requiring a complex solution. As part of this, you referred to the county being a partner to this. Is that correct? The county has declined your friend request, and they have declined to partner with you on this, and so that leaves a huge flaw in your, your plan.
That's, excuse me. I do, I do want to respond to that. I think it's worth responding. The county is taking up our city request on the 7th of November. $54 million request. They're going to be considering that and hopefully approving that on the 7th of November. So, that's, what you just said is just plain not true.
That's, I apologize for interrupting. I didn't mean to interrupt you there. The most recent correspondence from them is dated October 17th, and in the October 17th, they are confirming that they have not partnered with you, and they've confirmed that there is not this joint vision for a plan. And so, to have a vote today on something where you don't have the county agreeing to partnership with you, I think is a mistake and premature. So, what does that leave us with if you don't have the county partnering? Because the county is going to be the one that's going to be providing some of the housing and the services that you're looking to triage these individuals to. If we don't have it, we have 200, what has been referred to as hard cases, people that have been difficult to place in facilities, people with pets and pit bulls and that. So, we're going to warehouse 200 people that are virtual strangers together in a warehouse setting? Residents of the facility would be encouraged not to leave, but they are permitted to leave at will and to go into the community. Within 1,000 feet, there is a trailer park housing elderly and low-income individuals. I read the FAQs on SacCity's website, and there are no restrooms in this facility. They are contemplating how they will deal with providing restrooms for these 200 individuals, but there is no restroom solution in the existing facility. There are no shower facilities in the existing facility.
Excuse me.
There are no laundry facilities.
No, you've been waiting a long time, but I'd like to give you the last 10 seconds for your final thought.
So, my concern is this plan is not well-conceived because it isn't complete. This is a game of checkers. We're going to get this facility, and we're going to decide our next move once we get there.
Thank you.
There have been many omissions that you have made which have made this false.
Next speaker, please.
It is not a complete plan.
Thank you.
And I ask you to reconsider.[1379.65][1379.65](APPLAUSE)
Kristen Perry, and then Fong Lee.
I think I always follow Amy in these three, three times in a row. I think by now you know my position against warehousing people, the mega shelters, using trains to get them, to concentrating them in one area. I, I do think we're kind of left with no choice, though. Unfortunately, at this point, we've had one community meeting. There hasn't been a lot of community engagement, but like I keep saying, I know you're working at it, and I get that. I, I did have a chance to review the lease and funding agreement, so I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about policy and the policies that have been laid out inside the general plan, as well as the North Sacramento Community Plan. I found it interesting and sort of strange that you chose to list the good neighbors policy of how you're encouraging businesses, which would be the, the homeless shelter located within adjacent to residential developments, to conduct their business in a courteous manner by limiting disturbances and nuisances. I, I'm confused about listing that policy, and I'm confused about listing the policy of sustainable, stable, and integrated communities in support in this, in this lease and funding agreement. I found several other policies that actually we weren't meeting and goals, and I wanted to quickly go through some of them. The, the goal, 1.1 growth and change, I'm actually going to skip because I don't have a lot of time, but let's just go to city fair and equitable, ensure fair and equitable access for all citizens to employment, housing, education, recreation, transportation, retail, and public services, including participation in public planning for the future. Now, under these are listed, high-impact uses. The city shall avoid the concentration of high-impact uses in facilities in a manner that disproportionately affects a particular neighborhood, center, or corridor to ensure that such uses do not result in an equitable environmental burden being placed on low-income or minority neighborhoods. LU 2.8, 4, sustainability for all. The city shall identify and work with existing groups such as schools, neighborhood associations, and nonprofits to identify issues and opportunities for engaging them in sustainability efforts to ensure that all possible segments of the community are included in the city's sustainable efforts and outreach. And there's, community outreach is the other one. There's several others. I'm happy to share the many with you that somehow weren't addressed in the funding process.
You'd like to leave that with us, you can give it to the clerk. Thank you so much. Thank you.[1526.41][1526.41](APPLAUSE)
Fong Lee, and then Alicia Sebastian.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say that one of the things that, when I was working with MHSA, and one of the things that was so, was proposed and promoted by Darrell was the fact that nothing without us, nothing about us without us, that was one of the things that you really pushed for, and I appreciate that. And I do think that when you make a plan about a group of people, it should be nothing about that group of people without getting their input.[1581.41][1581.41](APPLAUSE) So, one of the things that I've heard so far tonight, it's a bunch of professional people who, people who say that they do work with the homeless, and I appreciate that. But the, the main thing here is you're proposing a plan that is, I don't know how long it will take. It'll probably take about a year or two years to put in action, but the, what we're talking about here is that we do need a plan that happens right away because people are dying. People are dying every year. The, right out on the step of City Hall, we had two people die. So, that was just last winter, and I don't know how many other people have been dying because we don't have accurate numbers. We have people who are in this position to make programs about other people, objectifying them, and then not asking how to do it. I do believe that we do need shelter. We need sustainable living conditions, living shelters for people, but we also need immediate action before more people die.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments.[1665.13][1665.13](APPLAUSE)
Next speaker is Alicia Sebastian, and then David Andre.
Good evening, Alicia Sebastian. I am a resident and homeowner in Old North Sacramento. I, too, question the social equity of concentrating shelters, cannabis cultivation, or other industrial uses into underserved, low-income communities of color. First, I understand that the city and the county own other property and land, and if the proposed location of the winter shelter is truly the only location that fits the shelter ordinance, we need to change the ordinance. Second, I see an impending storm approaching in a neighborhood with three specialty coffee shops, an upcoming brewery, a walkable commercial corridor, ample public transportation, and relatively affordable housing, in a time of an unprecedented housing shortage, and the most rapidly increasing rents in the nation. I see gentrification and disinvestment. Even in expensive, gentrifying neighborhoods where people can no longer afford to live, we can still find blight, struggling businesses, reigning slum lords, and a fear of walking alone at night. We run the real risk of losing this community to this perfect storm. We can, you might want to wait on that. We can continue to draw lines in the sand, or we can come together to say yes and seize an opportunity to lead with compassion, to recognize one another as partners in addressing the greater issues at hand, and to hold one another accountable for creating strong community benefits that protect longtime residents of all income levels, that create social worker-led impact teams, that expand local services like our library, and that provide subsidies that support local businesses in mitigating the possible impacts of the shelter. I know us all to be compassionate people, and when faced with the well-being of our families or our livelihoods, or with the daunting task of balancing the needs of constituents, we find ourselves staring down the eye of this storm. I am asking us all to dig deep and act with compassion, to hold ourselves and each other accountable, and to see this temporary shelter as the beginning of a greater solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Andre and then Ed Harris.
David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This city has a lot of prejudice and suffering in its past. And I say this as somebody whose, whose father's great aunt came to this area in the 1860s. Light silence is violence, and until we address the issue of this Columbus Day problem and change it to Indigenous people today, we're never going to be a compassionate city and hold out our hearts as we want to do. We're going to have to acknowledge these past discrimination and the fact that literally our streets are still being paved with blood now as the police continue to go after unhoused people whose only crime is being poor and alive in Sacramento city limits. So with that said, the plan here is great, and I want to support it, and I sure hope it works. It seems to be awfully complicated to get this done, any of this done by December 1st, that we should have been doing this and having these conversations last spring because some of us have been coming here for years and asking for things. So a little bit of hope is good, but we want to make sure we're not just getting railroad that this is going to work. One of the things off the bat that I saw that's not going to work is it said there's only two ways to enter the shelter, either through the police, the impact team, or through wraparound services as a mental health patient. So on the one hand, you've got the criminal justice system going to take somebody into this, or the mental health system. Seems to me the right people weren't, weren't talked to. There was no discussion about that because, I mean, that's not going to work at all. That's just for the first thing. We need to, we need to make this low barrier so that people can get in, but they don't have to go through the police or the mental health. If it's just somebody who's, they're down and out and they need help, we've got to make sure we, we, we help them. Another thing is...
No, 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 no. I'm sorry.
Wind Youth Services is only 18 to 24. We've got kids on the streets, 16-years-old tonight, who may die in the cold.
Thank you, Dave.
So think about that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ed Harris, then Sandra Betancourt.
This is called the Faygo Rule. That's why I cut you off.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for letting me speak here. Yeah, I agree. We need, we need, we need this shelter system right here. We need something, anything, anything. Triage center. I wanted my own drop-in center for years, but this will work for starters. I disagree with some of the rules and regulations and, and things that are proposed, but for starters, we need anything. And then input. We should have had input from many people. We need new ideas because what's going on in the country, probably in the world, are people, people that are too old of making decisions affecting us. We're getting too old to be sitting there making decisions that affect everybody else. We need new ideas, new ideas from people, five-year-olds to 95-year-olds to make things work. And I'm glad to be here, and there's so much to say, and let's keep moving on. Some other things can come forward from this. Some good can come out of this. Some new ideas and some good productions, and maybe a new business will come out of this or something.
Right, right. Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris, you didn't call me old, did you? I mean, seriously. Oh, you did, didn't you? Look at him, you laugh. All right, Mr. Harris.
Our next speaker is Sandra Betancourt, then Jane McCauley and Pat Yanes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and it's, I come to you tonight with very mixed emotions. Before I start, I would like to say thank you. On a previous item, I heard things that I never expected to hear. So Councilmember Warren, thank you for that, and Councilmember Ashby as well. Thank you. Okay. We've heard some great speakers tonight. We've heard about people that have Shark Tank ideas and all of this, and I value all of that. And Faygo had some great ideas as well. So I'm not here to say, oh, no, don't do this, but I am here to say, oh, don't do this. Warehousing people is not right, but that's not going to be my objection. You've heard it all already. I want to ask you a question, and the question is this. You have made some statements tonight about dollars, dollars going out to help, about additional law enforcement. We've been hearing additional law enforcement for about the past three or four years, and I want to make really sure that when we talk about additional law enforcement, we already have those boots on the ground, not a future hire. Boots on the ground, ready to work. That's one. Secondly, I was reading through the council members' memorandum today, and there was a statement made about dedicated city crews to clean up. Do we already have those people in the workforce, or are we planning on making hires? Because if we're making hires, the hiring process takes a long time, so we better have them there. And if we do have them there, at what cost do we have those services being provided? Are we going to start losing out in other areas of the city? If everyone from every district took this on, this would be divided out to 12.5% per district, not 100%, or not 50/50. So I encourage you all to get those shelters ready, and let's just tackle this problem and get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Betancourt.
That's it.
Thank you.
Jane McCauley and then Pat Yanes.
Hi, my name is Jane McCauley. I'm a resident of District 2. I'm opposed to the mega shelters. Today is my son's 16th birthday, but instead of being out with him, I came here with you for the fourth week in a row trying to preserve our neighborhood and our home values. The city has thrown District 2 into a 30-day tailspin because you were not able to come up with a fair solution to homelessness, and you had a pot of money to spend. These shelter, shelter proposals have far more questions than answers at this point. We have had one community meeting and no discussion with an operator. They are too close to too many people. Railroad is two blocks from 170 neighbors and a few blocks further from 400 Woodlake neighbors. This interaction with the city has not been right. The process is broken. You are not hearing the people of District 2, and we have spoken loudly and clearly. You ignore us. Our own councilman has completely ignored us. As you saw in his memorandum today, he certainly supports a few neighbors financially, but the problem is it was done behind closed doors. This offer of money and trade for supporting the shelter has pitted neighbors against one another. We have neighbors that were adamantly opposed to the railroad shelter and now suddenly have flipped. You will hear them tonight speaking, you heard them, tonight speaking in favor of the shelter because they needed something and got it. After the RT meeting last night, Councilman Harris's, Harris threatened imminent domain when two great offers were made to purchase the Evergreen property. These are projects that we believe would enhance our business district and neighborhood. Why, Mr. Harris, would you not, and Mr. Councilman Warren, would you not be thrilled that Evergreen and Arden finally has some interest and that our business district would be improved? We know why you are continually placing social services in our fragile districts. It's easy. The question I have for you is when will it stop? I heard Land Park had a chummy meeting last night.
You're getting ready to turn to another sheet of paper, and I know it's longer than the two that you've already read.
Okay, no, it's shorter, but I won't do it. I'm in favor of declaring an emergency and letting FEMA take care of this. It'll cost a lot less money, and that's what I would do.
Thank you. And Jane, tell your son happy birthday for us.
Next speaker is Pat Yanes and then Warren Myrie.
I just need some clarification on a few items from the memo that was sent out this morning. One, again, why all of it in District 2, not all of Sacramento? Item two, why are the people, who are the people that are going to be picking up, for example, handling the trash pickup? I hope that these jobs are going to be going up on the Public Employment Board. Three, shelter. What do you have planned for people who do not want to, who want to do their own thing and not join a shelter? Four, why is District 2 Representative's Office in line to receive a percentage of close to half a million dollars? On a separate issue, I understand that Iceland is getting a new roof. Is this part of the mitigation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Warren Myrie, Willie Mincy. Is Warren here? Willie Mincy.
Mr. Mincy? Okay.
Following Mr. Mincy is Sarah Steinheimer. We have no, Mr. Mincy? Sarah? Thank you.
And who's after Sarah?
After Sarah is Tracy Rice Bailey.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Steinheimer with Legal Services of Northern California. We are the legal agency for Sacramento County. We provide free legal services to people living in poverty. Too many of our clients are homeless or at risk for being homeless due to not being able to, not having affordable housing. We are here tonight to say that we support the city's proposals around this general plan to address homelessness, and we definitely agree there's an immediate need to open a winter triage shelter, and we hope that these proposals are a first step in helping people find permanent housing. And we do, we also hope that this temporary shelter is the beginning of a model that we can replicate throughout our city and hope that you do continue to work with the neighbors so that this can be a successful shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rice Bailey. Okay, Bob Erton Bush, and then Paula. Bob Erland Bush, excuse me.
Paula.
And following Mr. Erland Bush is Paula, and then Nancy Kits.
Good evening. Bob Erland Bush, Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. First of all, applaud the leadership across the board for moving expeditiously on a, on a clear crisis that we have in our community. I was, have been here for a couple hours and am pleased to hear that some who objected have changed their minds, so that's encouraging because it did seem like the city, through your leadership in particular, Mayor, addressed many of the, or most of the concerns of a particular community. I am still shocked to hear some of the statements in opposition, as Mike Jaskey said, some driven by fear, some driven by stereotypes, some driven by misinformation. Emily mentioned we do do a homeless death report every year. Since 2002, we have lost almost 800 people. That is one person, homeless person, every seven days. Week in, week out, month in, month out, year in and year out. And it's stunning, and it's shocking to me that we are not approaching this proposal in the spirit that it's meant, to save people's lives. That's what it comes down to. It's not a mega shelter. If you are opposed to a mega shelter, then support repealing the anti-camping ordinance because that puts people in a mega shelter, i.e. jail and prisons. At the end of the day, we need to, this needs to be about divide by eight. It needs to be equitable. This is a first step. We need to start somewhere. You've addressed the community concerns. Let's move on. Let's save lives. If you're in this audience, and you're female and over 47, you would be dead. If you're a male over 50, including myself, you would be dead. That's the average ages of homeless people who die in our community.
Thank you, Bob.
You're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Lamazi, Nancy Kits, and then Amy Smith. Is Paula here? Okay, Nancy Kits, is Nancy here? And following Nancy is Amy Smith.
Amy Smith still here? Is Amy still here? Okay.
Hello, Nancy Kits, District 3, and I'm the committee chair for Eye on Sacramento's Open Government Committee. The challenge of leadership often is to unite constituents in a difficult time, when we are facing tough choices. Is it times such as these that in the process of deciding the best plan to expand shelters requires reaching out to all stakeholders, not just providers, not just funders, not just nonprofits, not just other government agencies, but to everyone, especially the homeless, and especially the folks living in the neighborhood where shelters are proposed? They are the most impacted. This plan cites 400 of 424 beds in North Sacramento. Stunning is the best word to describe the city's lack of participation on this plan. Just think what it could have been tonight if the city had done proper outreach. You would have had the benefits of all various viewpoints, opportunity to work out issues and concerns beforehand, create community buy-in, reduce the need to revisit this issue, build a community trust. What a concept. The mayor's late offer to sweeten the pot, encourage neighborhood support is dramatic. I thought I heard the theme from The Godfather playing. However, what the city really needs to do is enact an ordinance that requires every department to conduct public participation and outreach on every kind of policy that requires the citing of these shelters throughout the city. And believe me, every neighborhood after this one will thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Our next speakers are Amy Smith, Jeremy Turner, Jennifer Feening. I don't believe Amy's here. Jeremy Turner. Jennifer Feening.
Fury.
Fury. Following Jennifer is Brian Talcott, and then Lorraine Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Jennifer Feering, I'm an Elmhurst homeowner. Thank you for your leadership on this. I support all of these proposals, and I urge your a-vote. I work a few blocks from here where I have daily encounters with our neighbors experiencing homelessness. I don't feel unsafe. I don't worry about my property. What I worry about, actually what I'm sick about, is that so many of my neighbors are enduring such trauma and insecurity in our city and in such shocking numbers. And I voted for you, Mayor Steinberg, to tackle this head-on, and that is why I am here to back you up. While we take the absolutely essential steps that Emily and Mr. Mayor have outlined to ramp up comprehensive services and address the desperate need for thousands more affordable housing units in this region, we cannot leave people out in the cold. Emergency winter sheltering is the first and the least that we should do, and the research that I've seen shows that fears about declining property values and crime are unfounded. We must be humane. These are not others. These are us. Please approve these proposals, and then please call on me and my husband to support similar proposals for more shelters and for affordable housing in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final three speakers are Brian Talcott, Lorraine Brown, and then Larry Glover Mead.
Jeremy Turner, I got, I was trying to get up here and someone got in front of me. Sorry. You guys, I've been in Sacramento my whole life. I've traveled California. I'm an energy auditor, building scientist. I'm also a roboticist, right? I'm a teacher. I've helped build programs here in Sacramento. CTE is where it's at, right? We need to educate. We need to innovate. Sacramento is the leader, and I love what this council is doing for the homeless. Love it, okay? But we need to work together as a community on this issue because we are a community. It starts there. We, we own six properties collectively in North Sacramento, Old North Sacramento. One of the properties Mr. Warren is really familiar with, and we've talked about it a little bit, and this is the old plantation building there on the corner. I share the block with, with Mr. Bob Kurth, right? And we get to see firsthand and to deal with firsthand. And when I say deal with, in ways that the city just can't deal with right now. We understand this. The city police, they're just impacted, and we understand this. So we, as the businesses, business owners in the community, are helping. So we, as the businesses, business owners in the community, are helping with whatever we can. I've cleaned up the poop. I've scrubbed down the urine. There are no facilities at the park next to us. Tell them, hey, can you use the bathroom over there? The police say it too. Can you go over there? I have seen impact people walking around. I love it. Just a couple things really quickly, okay?
Gotta be quick.
I know, I know. It's gotta be quick. I have come religiously here and listened, and I really, I applaud the council for what you're doing and how you are moving in Sacramento.
You just gave me your last comment. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, thank you. Your time is up.
Monumental, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Talcott, and then Lorraine Brown.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Brian Talcott. I work for Women's Empowerment, which is a job readiness program for homeless and formerly homeless women. I would just really like to thank the mayor and the city council for moving forward. This is the most movement I've seen in a very, very long time on the issue of homelessness. I'd like to recognize the city staff who have worked diligently with the community to continue to move forward. One of the things I will say, I've been doing program development for many, many years. The thing I always tell folks is let's start small. Let's try some things out. Use our best judgment. Get our best people at the table. Let's get some success under our belt, and then let's expand. Let's do shared across the city. I think that's very, very wise, but we gotta start somewhere. You know, 18 months ago, one of my graduates, if she had had a low-barrier shelter with her two dogs, she wouldn't have spent 18 months in her car, being victimized several different times during that time. She fortunately just got into housing. That wouldn't have had to have happened had she had the resources that she really needed. Women's Empowerment doesn't do housing. We partner with folks to do that. We are in a crisis. You all know that. So I really, really see all of the things the city is doing as really, really good steps forward to creating a roadmap. There's a lot of work to be done. This is not a small problem, but we're all on board. I have a woman today that's two weeks into our program. It's nine weeks long, doesn't have a place to go. Guess what number she is on the shelter? Number 77. She's the 77th woman waiting in line for a bed. Is she gonna make it through my program? I hope so, because she's dedicated to her sobriety of 53 days, and she wants to get job-ready and get her life back on track. Low-barrier triage shelters are gonna be helpful for her and a lot of other folks. And as has been said before, the folks are already out there. Let's help them. My parents taught me something very important when I was young. You never need a reason to help people. Thank you.
Thank you.[776.38][776.38](APPLAUSE).
Lorraine Brown, and then Larry Glover Mead.
I want to commend Mayor Steinberg for going after the county for the community block grants. I'm disappointed that they now have put that together with community development block grants because as a psychologist, the problem we have with homelessness, that money was diverted for jobs, and it was, it was unskilled people. And we had NGOs, and we have nonprofits, and I hear more of the same. You know, I've been back in California 13 years, and these programs did not work, but they created jobs for themselves because we had a recession, because we had bad leadership. But I would like to wring their necks. Everybody knows that that's how I feel. So it's not you guys. It's the ones that have been, you know, I don't know, goofing off, just irresponsible, put us in this tight. And we were trying to keep government afloat, but I'm concerned that it's a false flag, this homelessness, and I'm concerned that it's a poster child, and I'm concerned that we're gonna again give a priority to the criminals that are con artists. I'm being vandalized every day. I've been vandalized for 13 years since I came back here. We used to have affordable housing, but big industry, defense contractors came in and decided to get into the housing and social service business because what a nice way to embezzle money when people can't defend themselves. And that's what they did. And so the rents went 300% up, and they don't care. They're not fit. We need professional people that are dedicated, that have invested 10 years, you know, training themselves, and then another 20 years working with a good record to oversee these programs. Okay? Make sure it's not self-serving, please.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Larry Glover Mead, and then Christine Dugger. And our last speaker will be Erin Taylor.
Hello. I apologize. My voice is a little hoarse. I coach four and five-year-olds playing basketball, and today was our first practice, and I underestimated how much I'd have to scream. So I apologize for that. I consider myself a leader in District Two. I'm very active in our neighborhood association, and I think so many folks have already said what I wanted to say, but I do want to mention a couple of points. Community engagement has been mentioned a lot, and I didn't see any community engagement in this process. I'm a graduate of the City Management Academy. I'm a graduate of the City Planning Academy, where we learned a lot about community engagement. What this process has shown me was there's a lot of talking to, a lot of saying, this was the problem that you have, these are the solutions you have. There wasn't a lot of opportunities to provide feedback or input of what we could do. By doing that, it created an environment where all of our arguments were heard as NIMBYism, and I think what you would hear from the majority of people in my neighborhood is compassion. What we're concerned about is the magnitude and scale. I'd also like to point out that this, through this entire conversation, something hasn't been mentioned, and this was a strong point of contention for me. We recognize there's a huge problem with affordable housing. I think most folks would recognize it's difficult to get done. If you remember back in May, we were here working with the Volunteers of America to build affordable housing on Del Paso Boulevard, and two neighborhood associations in Woodlake supported that. We worked with our neighbors to convince them of why this was a good idea. We were able to get people who were against it immediately and understand that. We weren't even given that opportunity here. And so what I hope from this point forward, both with this project and others, is that engagement is a true, you engage people. You don't talk to folks, you engage them. The other thing I'd ask for District Two, and our neighborhood specifically, we're concerned with the additional affordable housing. There's current hotel on the market in our neighborhood, the Canterbury Inn. I would ask that as part of this, there's some type of moratorium or something that that not be used for supportive services? From my understanding, that hotel was previously an escrow to a provider who wanted to provide homeless services, which would be yet another addition to our neighborhood. And so I would love for that to be somehow introduced, or somehow the city to find an alternative use for that hotel.
Thank you, sir.
Because I think that's an important thing to do. And thank you for waiting to hear me talk.
Thank you.[1052.23][1052.23](APPLAUSE).
Christine Dugger.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Christine Archibald Dugger. I'm a resident of East Sacramento. I just want to say that I applaud the leadership that is being taken on this issue and your commitment, your equal commitment to your unhoused constituents as much as you are to your housed constituents. I very much support the items on tonight's agenda, and I even more support a more robust plan for siting of shelters throughout our community, including in my own neighborhood in East Sacramento. I have homeless, I have neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. This is not a problem that doesn't transcend all of our communities, and I very much welcome it so that my unhoused neighbors have access to shelter and services, mental health care and addiction services, and all of the wraparound care that needs to, to be provided so that we can solve this issue. Recently, I have borne witness to the varied faces of homelessness as I have been working with a young mother and her four children, the youngest of whom is two months old. And I've heard a lot tonight about fear, and I hear that fear and I understand that fear, but I also think that the fear is blinding people to what the varied, the varied outlook of what homelessness actually is. It's mothers, it's children, it's babies, it's grandparents, it's families, and it's youth. It is not just, it's not always what it meets the eye, and it almost never is rarely what meets the eye. So I just applaud these efforts. This is a first step on a very long line of many steps that need to be taken, and I hope to be a part of a community solution so that we can stop this crisis and be a model for communities everywhere. Thank you.
Erin Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, for your leadership on this issue, which affects far too many of our community members. My name is Erin Kaufman-Taylor. I am also a resident of East Sacramento, and I work a few blocks from this building. As so many others have said tonight, these are the first steps down the long road of establishing long-term innovative and comprehensive solutions for all community members experiencing homelessness. As a concerned citizen, I look forward to working with you to be a part of the solution in addressing Sacramento's homeless crisis, both tonight and in the long run. I support these items on tonight's agenda and encourage your, your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin. Thank you.[1202.76][1202.76](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, I hope you have one other speaker, Michael Williams.
Okay.
It appears his slip was misplaced.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Williams. I just want to say as a long, my family's been there probably seven blocks where you're proposing this from the railroad place, and I've watched that for, I'm gonna be 57, almost for six decades, watched that neighborhood transition. My family was there, but when they see natives, you gotta remember, that was basically all-white neighborhood. Maybe the early 80s, it started transitioning over, and then all the minorities were down the road in Del Paso. But I have a, my, a long history with that neighborhood. To watch it grow, it, it needs some help. But I, I'm all for the services there. I mean, I wish we would go there, but I would like to see if you could add it, you know, maybe long-term services, or put in, you know, a lot of drug rehab services, even outpatient services from that neighborhood, because they really need help in that neighborhood. And my second thing is about the youth services. Haven't been involved with a lot of homeless youth, especially like young, one young man last year who's artistic, and the help that Wood Youth have gave this man. You know, anywhere else he probably would have been a danger, but it took him about three, four months to get into the Wood Youth. And I see there's a proposal, it only comes up to like $70,000 a year or something, and these people been around for decades. They know what they're doing. I, I can see if you can see it in your hearts to find some more money for them. They know how to take care of the youth. They need a bigger budget, at least in half million or a million dollars. You know, our youth need help. Not all of our youth are out there all crazy running around. We have a lot of youth that are truly needing help, especially the people that come out of foster care. These are good kids with nowhere to go. You know, we can't just throw them to the streets. But that's where they're going, and there's no services. Like you said, the triage or the service, but I mean, are there really services? They can offer that service, but there's usually six months a year waiting list. So thank you.
Thank you so much.[1334.08][1334.08](APPLAUSE). Appreciate it. Well, that is the public testimony on these sets of items, and I want to thank everybody for, for taking the time really and coming to express yourselves. It's very important. It's the essence of what we do here in our democracy. And now it's time to turn it over to the council members for discussion and decision. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have a little bit to say about this, so don't start the clock. First, I'd like to thank Emily Halcon because I know how hard you work, and I appreciate it every day. Mayor, I want to thank you. And the reason is this, and we've mentioned it many times at council, but without the whole person care money, we wouldn't be having this conversation. You know, it was, it was you and your connections that offered us that opportunity, but without wraparound services, we cannot have a successful triage center. It doesn't work. This is a great opportunity, for the first time, for us to have services matched to shelter in, in a way that is robust and can create the pipeline finally to housing solutions for the homeless. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate you working with the county because the combination with the Mental Health Services Act money is really the secret to this. And I think we can get there. And obviously, you authored Prop 63, so I offer you my thanks for that as well. A lot of people here don't understand the nature of service provision within the city of Sacramento. We have incredible providers who do amazing things every day. We heard from a gentleman from Women's Empowerment. It's a dynamic organization, but I want to extol the virtues of Volunteers of America. So Amani and Leo are here from VOA. I have seen them work minor miracles on a daily basis for the last three years. These are people who understand the homeless population, who understand how to run shelters, who understand the needs and the practicality of running a shelter like this. For them, for us to have secured them as the provider, principal provider at this shelter, is very dynamic and frankly assures me of, of success. You know, I've heard a lot of fearful talk about the impacts to the community, about that it's an equity issue, that we're over-concentrating in North Sacramento. I have to tell you, as representative for District Three, I represent the River District. The River District has been dealing with the impacts of homelessness for two and a half decades, on the order of hundreds of people daily. I can tell you from their point of view, doing a shelter in another part of D3 is actually spreading it out to different areas of the city. So they have a very different view from North Sacramento. I also want to make this very clear. If you look at the homeless calls for service citywide, in 2016, we had over 36,000 calls for service to deal with homeless issues for Sacramento Police Department. 3,800 of those calls were in North Sacramento. 19,500 of those calls were in District Three, largely because of the River District, Alhambra, North Gate, South Matomas. So when it comes to impacts from homelessness, I know a little bit about the impacts from homelessness. This shelter is going to help. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even propose this if we didn't feel that we had a reasonable assurance of success and lessening the impacts on communities. When you work with people who have severe problems, and many people who live outdoors have a multitude of issues, when you start to work on those issues, amazing things happen. Some people self-resolve. Some people don't need huge inputs. Some people don't need permanent supportive housing. Some people do. We can suss that out, but as we move people into housing solutions, the impacts on the community citywide will lessen because I believe we will be very successful at this. Another thing, a concept that people don't get is that this is not just sticking people in a warehouse for four months. This is bringing people in, working on their issues, and hopefully doing a pass-through, even in the temporary winter triage, to help some people self-resolve and help some people get into housing and create space for more people who are unhoused on the streets to avail themselves of that shelter and those services. This triage shelter can save lives. I also want to thank the warehouse owner who was that selfless that they offered us a four-month lease gratis. You know, that's stepping up. I also want to thank the fellow who has the business across the street from this warehouse on Railroad Drive, who said, you know what? This might impact my business, but I was homeless for three months. I welcome this thing. You know, there, there are lots of disparate opinions about this. Shelters do work. People have characterized this as a mega shelter. It's not. It's, it's a winter triage shelter. It's not a lot of people, and I can tell you this, North Sacramento, those 200 people are on your streets right now, causing you impacts day in and day out. And by bringing them indoors and stabilizing them, we have a chance to lessen the impacts not only on your community, but the River District and South Matomas, North Gate, and Gardenland. And we fully intend to do that. That's the only reason we're doing this, is the mayor said, saving lives, creating opportunities for people to elevate their situation, to get them out of living in poverty on the street. So, you know, there, there's, this is long overdue. I've wanted to do this for years. Many of us who work in, in the homeless continuum have wanted to do this for years. This is a real opportunity, but the really great piece of this is matching services. Our, our impact team is really dynamic at dealing with the homeless population. They do it in a very compassionate way. They don't just rush people off to the jail. They try to solve issues. This will be the first time that they will have had a site to navigate people to. Currently, they try to do and deal with issues on the street to triage as best they can, hoping to find a shelter bed that night for the individuals they encounter. We need capacity. This is a capacity issue. This is a start. For all of you who say we need to do 50-person triage shelters all over the city, that's difficult, and believe me, we get this kind of pushback in every single area that we suggest that we do a triage center. We have to start somewhere. We have the exigency of winter coming on. We've got a lot of people with great needs on the street right now. We simply need to do this. Now, Mr. Mayor, with, with all due respect, I really appreciate the money that you allocated for, for impacts, but I have to tell you this. As much as North Sacramento worries... Sacramento worries that people will wander up Del Paso Boulevard, it could happen that they would wander up North Gate. It's actually easier to walk and closer. Or they can walk over to the River District, which is already deeply impacted. And frankly, throwing two hundred thousand dollars at the P-bid, I can make a very strong case that you—we should have two hundred thousand for the River District P-bid, for downtown Sacramento partnership, for Midtown, because all of these P-bids have already expended more than two hundred thousand dollars on clean and safe. You know, all of these areas have deep impacts, and you know, I'm a little worried about this, that if we start throwing money down, we're going to run out of money. So, that's a conversation I want to have with you. That doesn't deter me from wanting to move this thing forward with all haste, because this is absolutely essential for the city to move forward. If we do nothing, our homeless population will grow exponentially, and the impacts in the neighbors—neighborhoods will deepen. Our ability to deal with public defecation and urination will get much more difficult. You know, the drug issues, the needles, the—the lack of safety on the parkway, all of those things will deepen greatly unless we seize this opportunity to work with the homeless population and solve some issues. So, you know, I want to move all of these items, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, because we have to seize this opportunity. I can also support your initiatives to work with North Sacramento to ease their fears of mitigation. Frankly, I think their fears will not be borne out, that we can manage this shelter well, that there will be very minimal impacts to both District Three and District Two, but we have to prove that to you. I get that. I—I know what VOA can do, and I know what our police department can do, and we can manage this. This is going to be something that I believe very strongly will be successful. So, that being said, I'll move it with—with your mitigation items, but I say to you, we're going to have to negotiate for the River District, for District Three, because our impacts, as I mentioned, just with the numbers, are five times any other district in the city, and they have been for two and a half decades. So, I—that being said, one more piece, with the additional two officers, as I said, we can't control where people go, but it's very likely that if there are impacts—and I don't—again, I don't think there really will be anything significant, but they also have to patrol North Gate, because, you know, it's—it's just as likely that people might migrate north and affect Gardenland, North Gate, South Natomas. That being said, I—I just want to end with this. This is long overdue. This—is—this is so utterly necessary. I can tell you, in my three years on council, I've dealt with homelessness every single day in all parts of District Three. It takes fifty percent of my day to work with this—we—we work with this problem. This is the first potential solution that we've had in my term on council. This is a moment of opportunity. We have three years to use the whole person care money, and if we can match that with MHSA dollars, we have a winning combination. We need the collaboration with the county. We're working hard on that. I believe we can secure it. This is our time. This is our time to make it or break it. As Emily said, we're going up to Reno to look at a VOA shelter of three hundred potential people nightly. That—those kind of numbers actually work. Now, some of you dispute it, but quite frankly, you're not experts in homelessness, like the people at Volunteers of America are. So, I'll go with the sure bet on this. Mr. Mayor, I think I've about exhausted it. Thanks for listening.
You've done a great job. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Been moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Ca—Councilmember Warren's next, so let him—
I would like to speak my piece.
Let him speak, and, uh, speak in second. Okay.
I'm going to try to do it in a little bit shorter fashion, but what I'd like to do is to really, first of all, thank—
I'm going to time you.
Please. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you, obviously, for your leadership. I know your commitment to this issue. This is a big issue. This is not a small, unconsequential or inconsequential issue, and this is, in my opinion, is probably one of the largest issues that are facing this—this council today. And—and this is by no means solving the problem. But what it does do is it gives us an opportunity to put something in place, and then to test it out, to see if we can then duplicate this in other parts of the city, or make changes where we see that we can improve. So, I—I think this is—it's something to be commended. I want to thank Councilman Harris, because even though I believe, and I think most of the folks here, and most of the people from North Sacramento believe, that most of the impacts will be felt in and around District Two, in and around the homeowners in District Two, and the business owners, it is technically in District Three. So, you know, just to be clear, so I want to thank you, Jeff, for—for finding the site and working with the property owners and—and coming up with—with a proposal. Um, I, um, you know, when—I don't know, may—maybe, I think, two or three, four years ago, um, this issue was a big issue, but it wasn't—it—it hadn't bubbled like it is now. And I—I remember numerous constituents saying, "Councilman, what are you going to do about the homeless issue? We got a homeless problem. We got people walking around our streets, going through our garbage, going through our recycling bins. What are you going to do about it?" And so, we started talking about a variety of things. We talked about a tent city, a temporary solution for people that could then give them a more dignified way to exist, and then allow us to focus and concentrate resources to help, you know, nurse them back to, you know, a better way of—of existence. And—and obviously, you know, that's something that I believe that is still viable. But we come to this point today, and—and, you know, it—it's—it's really part of—of what we do is—is we tackle tough issues, but—but on every tough issues, there are people on both sides of the issue. So, I have people who have been friends that say we don't want it in our community. And then I have other people who are friends, some are not, say, "Alan, it's the right thing to do." So, I'm listening to all of the constituents, and then I have to try to make a decision that I think is best. And so, what we've laid out is a—is what I believe are appropriate mitigations for known and potential impacts for this—this facility being located near or in and around District Two, but it's in District Three. And I—I—again, I just have to say that when I express my concerns to the mayor, and we started talking about mitigation measures, I—the mayor, you know, really—he—he—he said, "Alan, you know, I think this is fair, considering, you know, you're really taking the brunt of the calls, the emails," and I know Jeff gets a lot of them, but, you know, our office gets a ton of them. Wood Lake community is very active and—and has, uh, you know, and has expressed themselves. And this is the type of issue where—I—I have no issue with that. I have no issue with people being angry and upset. And if this issue—if this project does not work, I expect them to be outraged, to be more upset. But if it does, then I expect them to acknowledge that as well. And then I expect this council and—and our city to really take this model and to see if we can use it somewhere else. I mean, this is a problem, and it's not getting better. By not putting it in or around your neighborhood, that does not make it better. It's going to make it worse in and around your neighborhood if we do nothing. So, I say that to say, this is an initial step. I'm going to second Councilman Harris's motion, and I'm going to monitor and work very hard with Councilman Harris, and the mayor, and the rest of the council and city staff, to try to make sure that we analyze this in a way that we can come back to the community with very honest results, and we can say, "Here it is. This is—this is the impact we had. This is how many people were able to transition from homelessness into housing. This is how many people we potentially saved lives." I mean, there—there's a whole human decency and a whole human element to this, and it's not about—I heard some people say they're concerned about their property values. Pro—and—and that's extremely important, but this is intended to improve the community, which should improve property values for businesses, opportunities for businesses, well as the residences. And—and I think, you know, relative to that, I have as much to lose as anybody. And so, you know, but I am committed to trying to find solutions, and with that, I'm going to second, again, Councilman Harris's motion, and I look forward to working with my constituents and others to help improve this situation where we can. And I—I think we're on the right path. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren and—and Harris. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everybody sticking with us tonight. I know a lot of people left because they had to probably tend to their families or other things to prepare for the workday tomorrow, but I—I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, the engagement from the Wood Lake neighborhood in North Sacramento, I think, is a really impressive display of your belief in your community, how much you value your community. And overall, the idea that a responsive government needs to attend—to those concerns that you've brought forward, I think, is what we should be doing. And I know that many of you have felt that we haven't maybe done a very good job of that. I will say, though, that your engagement has made this project much better. And I think that as it goes forward, particularly the winter shelter, which we're talking about tonight, I think we'll have a chance to hopefully set a standard for what the best kind of facility can look like. And the—the proposal here, as I look out in the audience, I see our providers, Sacramento Covered, Volunteers of America in particular, they do a phenomenal job at these things. But we've got some insurance built into this proposal, and that is the mitigations that were suggested, not only the Good Neighbor Policy, but additionally all the other items in case—in addition to what the mayor mentioned. Before I came on the council, the county used to run a large shelter at Cal Expo. It was a very large winter shelter. It didn't have the wraparound services, but it was a shelter nonetheless. That got closed. And then, in the years since, about five years, we've relied on churches on a nightly basis to house about thirty to fifty people, depending on the church. Volunteers would come each night. People would be transported to that site, then taken away in the morning. Meals would be served, and that was it. And the next night, it'd be a different church. And so, people are being shuttled all over the place. That probably is not the best way to get people who are vulnerable from the streets into housing and into services. Last year, we had some winter shelters open in my district, in addition to all the services we have. I live, as many of you know, in Alkali Flat, probably the closest to some of those nineteen thousand calls that Mr. Harris mentioned, because of the impacts there, but they come over into our neighborhood all the time. And what was interesting, what we saw happen at the winter shelter, the two sites we opened, is that the people who tended to show up, and Amani or Leo might vouch for this, they were very old. They were disabled. There were people who were extremely medically fragile. And as—as we work on this, I believe the—the approach we're using is our vulnerability index, run by Sacramento Steps Forward, which will take the most vulnerable people from the streets and move them into care, hopefully stabilize them so they don't die, so they don't continue to de—um, to—to get worse. I think that is probably, as a society, the least we can expect. But this rolling crisis that we have across the state, San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, and beyond, has not yet been solved. When the federal government cut off shelter funding and transitional housing funding, it plunges deeper into a problem. When the county closed the winter shelter and relied on this church model, it was—it was an—it was the worst—it—it was not a helpful approach. And I—I would say it was a dereliction of duty. And we've been working hard with the county to change that mindset, because your property tax dollars go to them to provide these services. This is not a traditional city function. Your dollars that would normally go to parks or other services are being diverted here, because in this crisis, we haven't—we have to act. And while it would be nice to have other partners step up to the table, we don't have a choice right now. And for North Sacramento, and for the other neighborhoods that are going to be asked to step up, that's going to be the constant check on us, is what are we doing when we don't have another choice? And hopefully, that means we're doing something. And through our mayor's leadership, through Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Harris, these are very difficult things. We've taken an additional set of services in—in my district, Wynn's new respite shelter, which will be going in South Side Park, um, the South Side Park neighborhood. And—and we'll take more, but we already have a tremendous amount. So, while you feel burdened and impacted already, just know that we have a tremendous amount of burden that we're shouldering in the central city, and it's continues to get worse. As our county sheriff, everyone are released countywide, is released into our central city of Sacramento. That ongoing adding to the population without services is really hard. But what we're talking about tonight is not people who are former offenders, likely. They're not people out there who have chosen to stay outside for whatever reason, or maybe aren't ready to come in yet. These are the people who probably, in your neighborhoods, you worry about. You see them in a doorway. You wonder, "How is that person going to make it another day?" They're old. They're a woman. They're a disabled man. Why are they on the streets? Why isn't somebody doing something about it? And this two-hundred-bed opportunity is—is really primarily focused on them. And while, yes, we have a terrible crisis, we have people doing bad things on the streets, I believe the mayor's given us some insurance that other neighborhoods are going to now demand. Rightfully so. But congratulations, I think North Sacramento, Wood Lake, you did a very good job. Just a couple other quick things. We are working on some of the things that the commenters mentioned. I want to, though, on number twenty-five and twenty-six, those two items, those two shelters, make sure that we have our Good Neighbor Policies in those leases. And I know that we have not been consistent in enforcing Good Neighbor Policies. I think that if we're going to retain the trust of our residents and the neighbors who are in these areas, and continue to encourage our providers that have high standards to stay in the game, those are the kind of things we need to have. Secondly, while I'm really proud of Wynn getting the grant from Cal OES, I'm also equally proud that the LGBT Center in Sacramento got the same grant. And I'd ask that we come back and provide the same matching funds for the LGBT Center that we're providing for Wynn. On restrooms and syringes, several weeks ago, I called for a plan to be created by our city staff that looks at restroom access, location, hours of operation, so we could fill in the gaps. We know that there are some available. We know that there are some that are not. And I'm interested in looking at innovative strategies. One of them that's come up is a model where we help open restrooms across the city through partnerships with small businesses. Many of our small businesses are already allowing the public, including homeless folks, to use restrooms in their businesses. And they're maintaining them. They're—they're providing that service. I think this is a way to leverage our small business community into providing this access, because we do, with our unattended restrooms, have—have a very difficult challenge maintaining them and ensuring the—the safety and the health in the community around them. And then finally, just on syringes, the state several years ago allowed up to a hundred syringes to be purchased without a prescription, and that was meant to reduce public health impacts from communicable disease. Since then, we have seen a tremendous growth in discarded syringes around our community. Harm Reduction Services, which is a local provider, has brought a—proposal forward to me, and I've forwarded to our city staff, including our city manager, to look at how we can engage the community, the homeless community, and providers in cleaning those up, so that—so that while we attempt to provide drug and alcohol treatment through the county services, which, again, are—are challenges, we'll try to engage in helping to clean up our community from these—these needles that are being discarded, and hopefully make a positive impact through that as well. So, Mr. City Manager, hopefully you can follow up on the syringe item and the restroom item. We're also looking, of course, at parks and which—where we can add restrooms and how to do that appropriately. But, yes, Emily?
I just—I—I just wanted to add on the—the first two comments on the Good Neighbor Policies. I agree, and I would actually recommend that we add those to all of the shelter contracts that we follow, not just the two highlighted here. We also have shelter contracts with the Detox Center and some others. So, I will work with all of the providers to make sure we have Good Neighbor Policies. And then on your question about the LGBT Center, we have met with them, and I do—I spoke with the city manager today, and I think we'll be back in front of you shortly with—with that funding agreement for the—a similar type of program they're planning to open. So, we look forward to that.
On—the Good Neighbor Policy and the syringe and restroom stuff, just the direction to staff, I'd like to be added to the motion that Councilmember Harris made.
I have no problem with that, so I'll accept those.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. Before I call on Councilmember Carr, I'd like to also suggest a friendly amendment to Councilmember Harris. For when I described two-hundred thousand dollars for the Del Paso P. bid and other appropriate D-2 neighborhood organizations for security and maintenance, I want to continue with that commitment to the two-hundred thousand dollars, that's fine. But I'd like to be more generic and keep open as to where that money actually goes. We need to make sure that we're working with with a partner or partners who believe in what we're doing here and who wants to work to make this make this happen. So I just want to make that generic. Consultation with Councilmember Warren and the city staff will make sure that that money is put to the right use for maintenance and additional security, okay? Jeff? Alan? Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, excuse me, can I, I don't want to interdict, but just to be clear, and Ms. Cuppy might be able to help me, there is, if you put the screen up, there's actually four different actions you have to take, so I'm not sure if, you might have to work on.
Oh, on the on the on the one motion that's already been made on the triage center, we'll get to the other motions as well when we when we vote, okay? But it's, that's now the motion, as I described with the friendly with the friendly amendment, in addition to Councilmember Hanson's friendly amendment as well, okay?
Mr. Mayor, as far as motions go, I thought I was moving all four items since.
Oh, at one time, can we do that?
Yes, he did move all four items.
Then all the better.
The amendments refer to different items. Okay, and just note, one of the items, I don't know if this matter needs a two-thirds vote, okay?
That's okay. They're all gonna, we're gonna vote as one package. One of them requires a two-thirds. If somehow we don't get a two-thirds for the entire package, well, then I guess we're going to have to separate them and break them up, okay? But I don't think that's going to happen. Okay, Councilmember Carr.
That was one of my questions, I want to make sure I understand it, because there are, there's the Franklin Road P. bid, there's the Mack Road P. bid, there's the Florin Road P. bid, Stockton P. bid, Broadway, Oak Park, River District, as well as Del Paso. So if we're going to allocate.
We're not.
How are we doing it?
We're not. It's two-hundred thousand dollars for additional security, which is good, that's the that, I think, the right commitment, but not not specifying it to the P. bid. We want to have a discussion about how, who can who can partner with the city in good faith to actually make this work, and that's what we want to do, so.
First of all, I want to thank everyone who's been thanked, and I want to thank, I want to even thank the people who haven't been thanked, so we don't have to do that anymore. I got more mail, as much mail on this issue than I did on the Coon statue. I just got, and it's not my district, I got so many letters from all across your districts about this issue. And it mainly centered around, because no one was really objecting to the concept of triage centers and helping people who are homeless, but it was mainly centered around, is this the right place? Is this the right place to have this center? And not being familiar with the district that well, I trust that my councilmembers, Harris and Warren, have really searched this out and come to the conclusion that it is the right place. So I'm going to defer to your judgment on this. This is strictly a your council district, and I would expect the same thing, same courtesy would be extended to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do want to, again, commend you and commend Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Warren for for this work. And I reflect back about a year ago when Councilmember Warren brought forward his first proposal that I I clearly could not support, and, well, but I I can support it now today, because the main issue that I brought up at the time was, what are we doing about mitigation and monitoring? Every every type of program that comes through our planning commission or city, we require that a mitigate mitigation and monitoring program be be put in place for whatever it is. So I I think that that there's been a lot of thought in in this, on top of the the issue of onsite security and everything that the mayor put out today, I think even even more assurance is that we're doing the right thing and and dealing with the unintended, and I think, as Councilmember Warren put it, things we don't know may happen in the future. And that 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 forethought, I think, is critical for for this, for us moving forward. You know, this past Friday, Councilmember Ashby and and the mayor joined me in District Six at the St. John's Women's and Children's Shelter, where we opened a hundred and ninety new beds for homeless women and children. And and, you know, to hear the story of a one of their women who had, a few months ago, been living on the river, had some heavy, heavy challenges, and to now be on a path moving forward, you know, and that's, that's, I think, on that whole property, they have a little over two-hundred spaces. To hear that 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 level of success and that that focus, I mean, I'm proud that the city and through the also supportive Councilmember Ashby has helped that program move forward. And this shelter is adjacent to a high school. It it is, they share the same wall, Cristo Rey High School, and next to Transit, and I think that that shows that that we can, we can figure out ways to coexist. It's never an easy challenge to figure out where we're going to locate things, how we're going to deal with all the all the issues of of security, safety, and and solid waste. I mean, we see that on, in my district throughout Power Inn on Florin Perkins and La Riviera, where we see a lot of trash that's that's brought out because of some of the impacts with the homeless. And so I I think figuring out, how do we resolve these issues and look at some of the root causes, some of it is illegal, just straight-out criminal behavior. So, but some of it is on this issue, and, you know, I commit to you, Councilmember Harris, I know you're concerned about the River District. As on my other hat, as the Chair for the Solid Waste Authority, I'll work with Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Ashby to make sure that we're working, at least on the commercial corridor areas, how we work with the Solid Waste Authority, our city code enforcement and solid waste staff, and the county solid waste staff, to to figure a long-term solution on that challenge, so that we're not just here figuring, you know, putting out two-hundred thousand dollars for willing partners each time, that we figure out, how do we look at making sure that those franchise fees are put to that appropriate use in that area? So I I commit to you to working on that, on that role. I know we feel it in in District Six, whether it's on Power Inn, whether it's on South Watt, whether it's on Stockton Boulevard.
Entire city.
It's the entire city, everywhere. So glad to support you on that effort. And with that, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think if we all do a little bit in our different roles, with our different resources, we can, we can move the needle. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I too want to thank everybody that's already been thanked, and I want to just let you know that for the last ten years, a part of my ministry with my church has been the Winter Sanctuary Program. And it's something that I take very seriously, it's something that I do at least once a month during the winter time, and we are able to, at that church, house up to two-hundred people, if that's the amount that show up. It's a ministry that I, it's near and dear to my heart and my wife's heart, and all the volunteers that we get to work with us. To feed them when they get there, to allow them to sleep in a warm place, to be able to give them breakfast in the morning, and to let them know that they are welcome to come there for any kind of services that they need, gives them a sense of hope, because they know they have to go back on the street. And so, it's a ministry that that I I do every single year, and I commit to it. And and the problem with that ministry, which is different than what we're getting ready to do right now, is it is strictly a shelter. It is not a triage center. So there is no hope that one day they will leave that shelter and then move into permanent housing, or into employment, or get wraparound services, or those types of things. And so, I I feel very strongly that what we're doing right now is the right thing to do, to really have the kind of lasting impact that we want to have. I also run a nonprofit that's on Del Paso Boulevard, and I remember the time when they didn't want nonprofits on Del Paso Boulevard. And my nonprofit being on Del Paso Boulevard, I get to see every single day, I get to see the homeless walk up and down Del Paso Boulevard, and get on the light rail, and everything that they do in North Sacramento already. I get to see them when they vandalize my property, whether it be my trash cans or my tough shed that's not so tough, or or the fences that they cut in order to try to get into a safe place away from the street. I also get to see them come to the door and ask for help. And whatever we can do to help them, whether it's clothing, whether it's a place to stay where they can sleep in in the building over the night, whatever we can do to help them, to give them services, food, we do whatever we can to help them. And I know we're not doing enough. And so, again, I say that the program that we're doing will do more, and I think we're on the right track. I know also with VOA and Leo McFarlane, that we have the right vendor, and that's probably not the right word, but the right organization, and they have a proven track record right here in Sacramento, and even beyond Sacramento. And so, all the fears that I know the community has, I know VOA can help to eliminate and address those fears. You have an excellent organization. I go to their fundraiser every year, I watch the success that they have, I watch the people that they turn their lives around, I watch the impact that they make every single year. And I give my money to that organization, because I can see the impact that they're making in the lives of those who need it the most. And so, we have the right vendor, we have the right organization that's working with us to make this thing happen. So I'm I'm in support of this entire proposal. If I could do more, if we could do more, that would be my my biggest wish. The twenty bids for the Wynn Youth Center, it's twenty bids that are much needed, but we all know, as teenagers hop from house to house to house to house, and you can't even get an accurate count of how many are homeless, we don't always know how many kids really need the help that they need. But twenty bids is more than we have, and I'm I'm willing to go twenty bids, but I know we probably need another hundred. I know we need more than what we what we're getting right now. I know the the Winter Triage Shelter at two-hundred, that's a good number, it's gonna, it's going to take two-hundred ki people off the street, but we know we need more. And so, if I had my, if I had my best wish, Mayor, I would say, the community has talked a lot about equity, and about making sure that there are triage centers, or shelters, or centers throughout the entire city of Sacramento. And if I had my best wish, I I would like to see if there's an opportunity for the city to work with a real estate firm that can go into each district, and based on the requirements that they have, that we have, in order to have centers throughout. And I'm going to get in front of this thing, I just, right now, we've already decided what's going to happen in two thousand seventeen and even potentially two thousand eighteen. But I want to get in front of this thing, because we know we're not doing enough to meet the need, and we know that the community is saying, we want to see equity in all the districts. Why wouldn't we work with a real estate firm to see what other possible locations are available, so we can have future conversations in the future about those opportunities? And that would be my 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 request, is that we give the city manager direction to work with a real estate company that can identify locations like the Royal Yard, and see what else is out there that we potentially could look at and have a conversation around. And we can get in front of engaging the community and maybe do a better job than even we did this time, so that that way, that way, the next community doesn't feel like this community has told us they felt, that there wasn't enough conversation with them.
Thank you for bringing that forward, you know, and it doesn't have to be, you know, one in every district, doesn't, it's not a cookie cutter. But your idea about engaging the private sector to help us find other appropriate locations that represent geographical diversity throughout the city, I think is a very wise idea, because we've tried, you know, and and we've told the public what we've been able to look at, there's the redeveloped motel on Stockton Boulevard, there's the Florin site, there's a few other sites, but we could use some help in identifying these other sites. And so, again, it doesn't have to be cookie cutter, I don't want to say it has to be one in every, no. It, we, you know, we want to look at north, south, east, west, and as much, you know, as much capacity as we can gain, I think it's a very good idea. Okay, Mr. Manager? Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to be supportive of you, Mayor, on the two-thousand dollars that you want to give to address sort of the impacts in the community. I'm sorry, did I say two thousand? It's just late, I'm tired, sorry. Two-hundred thousand dollars for mitigations. I I just, I think it's really important that we have the right partner when we're doing mitigation work. And I think, you know, Councilmember Warren, even though this is in District Three, and, you know, so probably the combination of the two of them, will know best whether that's, who that is, who that partner is, and how we address these impacts, and make sure that we serve the community, and we make good on our promises around economic development and public safety. Those are just, it's just critical that we make sure that this and or anything we do anywhere in the city doesn't negatively impact public safety and economic development, it's just not worth it. So we have to make sure we take care of that. I too am very impressed by the North Sac community across the board, everybody involved. Councilmember Warren, you have a strong district on your hands, with a lot of very intelligent, well-spoken people. Ultimately, on this temporary winter shelter, the couple things that I really like, by the way, are lessons we've learned even from last year, are no walk-ups and no lines outside. I mean, Councilmember Hanson, unfortunately, was the guinea pig on some of this, and had to deal with the brunt of a lot of really very difficult impacts, which we're not going to allow to happen again. And I think that is important, that that we get better at this every single time that we that we try it, no matter which community it's in, it is really important that the community doesn't feel that they're being trampled on to and from every day. And while you did state, Emily, that it will be an open shelter in the sense that people can come, they're not locked in, it is not an open campus, so it won't function like loaves and fishes. It is not intended to be a place that people can walk up to and just and hang out in front of, and we're not going to allow that to happen. I think that's really important, and if that does start to happen, that's a failure on our end, and we have to fix it immediately, because that's unfair to the community. I cannot even stress this enough, and normally I wouldn't repeat what another council member says, but it's so freaking important that Councilmember Hanson said this, now and in the future, the county has got to be our partner. This is just, we don't have these resources, it's not what we do, and it's just incredibly difficult for the city of Sacramento to stretch ourselves across these distances. And I want to do it, I want to be helpful, I want to help, and I want to be a partner, but I think we have a very strong mayor, particularly on this topic, and he stepped into a leadership role where perhaps there's been a vacuum and a problem has grown, but we we have to bring people along with us, the community too, but the county, the service providers on this, or we're, we will end up in a spot where we can't maintain it. So I think that's critically important, and I just want to reiterate it. I'm going to vote yes to support this today, but my vote is, my yes vote is contingent on the idea that the building owner knows what's happening here and is a partner in this process. That piece is a little confusing to me, and I don't think it needs to be discussed any further here, other than to say to you, Emily, and Jeff and Alan, or whoever, it's not in District Two, so I guess District Three, whoever has been speaking with the business owners, to make sure that that, or Arturo, or whoever, the Assistant City Manager, that that piece is is clear, because right now, that's a little murky for me. But assuming we get that all worked out, and that we put these Good Neighbor components in place, and that, as the mayor has stated, we have the right partner. in place, and that as the mayor has stated, we have the right partner on our $200,000 partnership for addressing any negative impacts, I will support it tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shanier.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, I, I think this is great work. I think that, you know, it's, we, we should take this in stride tonight and, and celebrate a step forward that we have a lot more to go. And I don't know, Emily, and we'll talk about this, if we're still looking for other places for this winter, I would hope so. I think the capacity that we need to have is still there, so, and I know we're looking, as the mayor just said, we're looking at two sites in my district. I just got a text from somebody going, oh yeah, really? That's good. So, which is fine. You know, I, I do want to make a suggestion, and, and a couple of people mentioned this today. We had a community meeting yesterday with the Land Park Neighborhood Association and Sierra Curtis Neighborhood Association, and I'm guessing at least 300 people in the room? It was standing room only in, at Sierra 2. And I did ask the question about 50-person shelters and said, how many people in the room would have one in their, in their district? And about 2/3 of the people raised their hand and said yes. And so we immediately got the TV crews to tape them all so we can come back with that. But, but my suggestion, and this isn't for this year as much, I mean, we'll continue to look at the other sites, and I think most of you all have these. We have once a year kind of a community leader summit where we bring all of our neighborhood associations together to talk about the issues that they're facing. And so I think what we'll do is, one of the issues that we'll put on the agenda is where in your district, where in your neighborhood could we look? And so I, I think Rick's idea is great about getting some realtors to help us take a look. I think we need, and I, I will do this, and I hope everyone can do it, is go back to our neighborhood leaders with this discussion and say, where, where do you think this helps? So I, I think we can start engaging now for next winter on that. So I think we're, we're running parallel processes where we're still looking for some more beds for this winter, but we can start the discussion about next winter. I, I want to point out one other quick thing, just on the data piece. I mean, a lot of people have continued to talk about 3,500 as a point in time count. I do want to point out that that's the county. It's not just the city. We have probably 2/3 of the homeless in the county who are in the city, but this is a, a joint problem that we have. And even, I know someone was saying today that we don't have cooperation from this, from the county. We do. And I think that this has been a discussion. We're changing cultures here about how we work, about how they work. We did cooperate on the 1,755 vouchers. That was a joint decision that we made with the county. I think we'll get there on mental health and substance abuse services as well. The, the need is as critical there as it is for us, and I don't think we have a choice but to work together, and I look forward to that.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you. Final comments before we clarify the motion and vote, you know, thank yous are important because there are a lot of people who work really hard on this. My staff and city staff and, and the members, I mean, you guys are all, men and women are warriors here. Because, and, and a special shout-out tonight to Councilmembers Harris and Warren for, on this one, you know, the easiest thing in the world would be to do little. Really, it would be, oh my God, we, it would be, there'd be far less controversy, there'd be far less consternation and, and anger. But we all know that that wouldn't be the right thing to do, not just morally, because this is a humanitarian issue, but for the overall quality of life in our community. Because I would tell you, this issue is affecting not only our conscience, but also our aspirations for everything that we want our city to be. I mean, whether it's a story of a major restaurateur who chooses to pull out of a, a major deal in downtown Sacramento because they send their national representative here and they look at what's happening on the street and they say, no, not here. Whether it's the challenges in some of our struggling business corridors, including Del Paso Boulevard, and the impact on homelessness of trying to revitalize some of those struggling corridors, whether it's the public safety issues that Steve Hanson especially, you know, hears about, and I hear about all the time with, with, you know, there, you, this is not a monolithic population. There are a lot of people who are really down and out suffering, and then there's a lot of drug abuse, and there's a lot of people who are acting in ways that are not appropriate and antisocial, and so it's a whole combination of things. So my fear is, your mayor's, still relatively new within my first year, is that if we do take the attitude that, you know, we'll just sort of manage it and hope it goes away, that it will grow worse, and it will make our plight that much more difficult. You know, Malcolm Gladwell Turning Point book is really important to me because in some cities in California, we've crossed, we've passed over that, they've passed over that turning point.
Tipping.
Tipping point. Sorry, it is late. Tipping point. In Sacramento, I would argue that we haven't yet passed over that tipping point. That if the number is 2,052 chronically homeless, and I know the, the numbers of intermittently homeless are larger, and I know that the count is probably understated, I agree with that, we still have a chance. But let me tell you, I'm not saying up here that we are creating anything magic. I don't say we will cure this problem, but we must make it much better. And we must not falter. I want to talk for a second about what 200 beds means when it comes to triage, whether it's winter shelter, or if and when it becomes permanent, and as we do triage throughout the community. 200 beds is 800 beds. Because the idea here is that people, these are not long-term shelters. The idea, it's triage. The idea is to help move people from the street, the emergency shelter triage, into more permanent housing. If that's a three-month average stay, which is what we estimate and hope, 200 becomes 800. So if we do three or four of these, and we find the right sites, we will make a big impact together with whole-person care, the mental health resources we're seeking to gain in partnership with the county, and permanent housing. We are going to have to do more on triage, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Jennings' suggestion. We need to get aggressive about this. That's what the people of North Sacramento have asked for, and that's what we have to do because we need more capacity. You know, one of my favorite books, or series of books and, and documentaries, is the Taylor Branch Eyes on the Prize here. And I think as leaders, we all have the obligation to keep our eye on the prize. Lot of distraction, and not distraction, a lot of real day-to-day issues here, and people suffering in real time, by the way. But the eye on the prize for me is $110 million of new capacity, multiple triage centers throughout our community, the ability to do assertive outreach for over 3,000 people, case management for the same number, mental health and substance abuse, wraparound services for the same number of people, housing, permanent housing for the same number, and enough triage shelter for the same number. If we do that, we will not cure this, but we will make it much better. We have a big meeting with the county on the 7th of November where we're seeking to follow through on our requests for about 50-plus million dollars worth of mental health resources. That is going to be key. But tonight's a big step, and we should be proud of this step. But we don't stop here. We make this better. Let's clarify the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to clarify the item, the motions on each item individually. So on item number 22, the motion was by Councilmember Harris and second by Warren. On item number 23, consensus of council was to withdraw the item. On item number 24, a motion was made by Councilmember Harris and second by Warren with amendments. On item number 25, the motion was by Councilmember Harris and second by Warren. And on item 26, Councilmember Harris made the motion and Councilmember Warren second.
Okay.
With friendly amendments to item number 24.
Okay.
Direction to staff on 24, 25, and 26.
And 26, right.
Thank you.
Yes, and my cleanup as well. Okay. So it, one of them requires a 2/3 vote, but let's vote on all of them at once, but see if we can, by acclamation, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. That's nine to nothing, which is unanimous. So thank you very much. Members of the public, appreciate it very much. All right, that's our agenda for this evening.
One item.
We do have one more item? What?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one board and commission appointments to read into the record. The, to the Sacramento Youth Commission, District 5, Solana Torres.
Solana Torres. Okay, very good, and we'll vote on that next week. Are there council ideas and questions before we, we adjourn? Well, we got a couple others up here, Jeff. Councilmember Geta, Jennings, and Harris.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thanks Councilmember Shanier for appointing Solana Torres my intern as the youth commissioner. All right, then, three quick announcements. Again, the District 6 hotspots at the George Sims Community Center is on Friday, October 7, 27th, at 7:00 PM. And want to thank the SHRA staff and all our city staff for...
If we can, I'm sorry, I know everybody's, hold on a second, Eric, if you would, please. Thanks. What's that? If we, if we could please file out quietly, we, we appreciate it. We just want to wrap up here. Go ahead.
And I do want to thank our SHRA and city staff for their work on the CDBG funds to get that intersection at Logan and Elder Creek and Lemon Hill to help these kids out there. Last, the last Tahoe Park Food Truck event will be Friday, October 27th. Bring a sweater, but it'll be a, a fun way to end the, end the season. And the 20th Annual Goblin and Ghoul's Halloween Event at the George Sims Community Center that's been put on by the Neighborhood Association is going to be Monday, October 30th, at 6:00 PM. So the 20th Annual, and they've, it's been growing every year for 20 years. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and we'll see you all.
Thank you, sir. Goblin's. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick announcements. The Common Ground Covenant Church is celebrating a fall festival where kids have the opportunity to paint their faces and enjoy a free community dinner. For more information about that, you can call Common Ground at area code 916-689-3010. And then if you want to get involved in the best community cleanup, it's called Let's Team Up to Cleanup. And Larry Carr, Councilmember Larry Carr, and myself will be at the Susan B. Anthony School on Saturday, October the 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00. We're going to join the sorority, the AKA Sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and the Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, along with the Detroit Community Association, to clean up the Detroit neighborhood. So we encourage you to come on out there, 9:00 to 12:00, Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. Come join the cleanup and make a difference in a community that would love to have you there.
Councilman Harris.
Yes, sir.
That's me.
Okay.
The Glen Hall Cleanup Day is this Saturday. I'd like to point out, this marks the beginning of our eighth year that I've been running Adopt a Park at Glen Hall Park with volunteers maintaining our park four to five times annually. It's been a great program. It's kept our park clean and tidy and a very happy place for our kids. We supply the tools and refreshments. You bring a hat and a smile. That's this Saturday, October 28th, from 9:00 till noon, and I'll be there running the show. So if you can make it, it's usually a very fun event. The River Park Community Tree Canopy Project, which is a community tree planting organization, will be planting more than 30 trees in River Park Saturday, November 4th. Again, it's from 9:00 till noon, and we meet at Glen Hall Park, which is 5415 Sandburg Drive. And you can sign up to volunteer on the website, thecityofsacramento.org, District 3 website, you'll find the link there. Finally, Mr. Manager, I have a little item here, and, and it may seem insignificant, but it's very significant to some people. So it's basically this, the city and the state of California celebrate Cesar Chavez Day with a day off. Unfortunately, we celebrate on different days. This creates a problem calendar-wise. It's a small issue for some, but it's a significant issue for state employees, many of whom live in my district, whose children are in the 4th R program. The city will celebrate on March 26th this year, that's the fourth Monday, and it looks like the state's going to celebrate on March 30th. So as such, the 4th R locations will be closed on the 26th when the state employees, employees are working, and numerous constituents indicate that this requires one of the parents to take the day off. For us to run the sites would be prohibitive, so my direction is this. It makes the most sense to me to direct you to fix this discrepancy with the state so that we can align our holidays and we don't end up expending another $65,000 keeping the 4th R project open, or skunking those constituents with their kids. So let's see if we can work on that. I would appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Good call on 4th R, Councilmember Harris. That's a good one. Mayor, next week on Council's Halloween, and I just need to know if you guys are wearing costumes, or like, what's our strategy? So let me know on that. And also, I'm sure Councilmember Hanson would chime in, except for it's too late, but Boo at the Zoo is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, Boo at the Zoo. That's the funnest, where you put your kids in the costume and go see all the animals. I'm going to dress up as a council member from District 1. Maybe I'll dress up, maybe I'll dress up as the only female council member. It would be a big surprise to everyone. But I also just wanted to give you guys a quick update. We started this meeting with Tiffany and her little one-year-old, and Michelle, Steve sent me an email a few minutes ago. Tiffany will check into the Respite Care Facility tomorrow night at St. John's Women's Shelter and get the help she needs. So good work on our end, and probably a good way to end.
Good meeting, everybody. Thank you all very much, the members of the public and staff and members. We're adjourned.